My name is Jerry Reinerger. I'm co-chairman of the Field of Honor presented by the Exchange Club of Newport Harbor. This is the seventh consecutive year we've had this event here in Castaways Park. We erected 1,776 American flags throughout the park. Each one contains a yellow ribbon and the public is invited to come in and dedicate a flag to anyone who's been in the military service, past or present. We'll put a dedication label on. The flags will fly all weekend and on Monday, the public, whoever donated the flag can come in and claim the flag and take it home and have it for next weekend's Memorial Day celebration. We put this up in honor of all military, the Army, Navy, Marines, Coast Guard, and Air Force, to thank them for the service to the country. This is an ongoing project of the Exchange Club as part of our Americanism Committee. The proceeds from the Field of Honor are used to support military families in their times of need. We donate through the 1-1 Foundation for Marines at Camp Pendleton, also other military organizations throughout California and the nation. We also donate to the Fisher House in Long Beach, which is a facility that people are allowed to stay at, at little or no cost, while they're visiting their relatives that are being taken care of in the VA hospital at Long Beach. So, half of the proceeds go directly to military uses. The other half go into our general donation fund, which includes scholarships for students in the Newport Harbor High School. We grant 18 scholarships each year to graduating seniors. Some come from what we call our Youth of the Year, which are the top students. We also have a program called the ACE Awards, which are for students that have overcome tremendous personal problems, whether they be health, gangs, drugs, family situations, and have somehow managed to pull their life together and graduate from high school. So, we give them a scholarship equal to the direct costs of attending junior college for two years to get them on the ladder, hopefully to success. This, our seventh year of the Field of Honor. We're very proud to include this year a parade for the first time. It's starting at Newport Harbor High School. We'll continue down Irvine Avenue, West Cliff Drive, to Dover Drive, and here to Castaways Park. We're very glad to have the stagecoach from Wells Fargo leading the parade, as well as a number of military vehicles and BMW convertibles donated by Sterling BMW. We also have police and fire vehicles from the city of Newport Beach. They will lead the parade here to the Castaways, arriving at around 11:30, in time for everyone to attend our ceremony at 12 o'clock near the Marine statue at the peak of the park. We will have a ceremony there, which will include the Marine Color Guard from Camp Pendleton. It will include a presentation by the bagpipes and drums from the Orange County Fire Authority, as well as dignitaries, mayors from both Newport and Costa Mesa, police chiefs, fire chiefs, other dignitaries from both cities, as well as a number of military outstanding personnel, veterans, and others who have served our community and our country.
My name is Paul Garcia, and I'm the president of the Newport Beach First Battalion First Marine Foundation. The First Battalion First Marine Foundation...
Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the study session of the Newport Beach City Council, June 28, 2016. We have quite a crowd because we have several very special items of current business this evening. So, the first item, clarification of items on the consent calendar. Any comments to clarify? Council members? Seeing none, aren't Mr. City Attorney? Oh, no? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to study session item number two. So, why don't I encourage everyone to come in and find a seat, because the next two items are very special, and I want to make sure everyone can hear. So, the first item is a recognition of bystanders and fire personnel of an event that took place in Newport Beach, February 15 of this year, 2016. So, I'm going to read a description of this event, and then it will be followed by a number of proclamations that we will be presenting this evening. So, I'll begin. During the mid-morning hours of February 15, 2016, the Fire Department received a call for a medical emergency that was quickly upgraded to a CO3 response for a three-year-old drowning victim, Nixon Minor. Lorna Campbell from Ontario, Canada, was poolside at the Marriott Villas when she heard someone calling for a lifeguard. She rushed in the direction of where a woman was pointing and saw a child who had been pulled out of the pool and was laying on his back. Ralph Davis from Northern California, a visitor from Northern California, was also poolside that day when he heard someone calling for assistance. He too rushed to help. At the lower... He found Ms. Campbell checking the young victim for a pulse and respirations. Ms. Campbell, a paramedic from Canada, found that the child's vital signs were absent, and his color was gray. She immediately began chest compressions with Mr. Davis, a trained EMT, and an ER technician at UC Davis Medical Center, assisting by managing the child's airway. Ms. Campbell continued CPR until her young patient regained a pulse, started gasping for air, and his color returned to normal. The Newport Beach Fire Department's Captain Roman Tegeron, Engineer Brian Frazz, and Paramedic Ryan O'Leary arrived and began advanced life support protocol for respiratory arrest. Ms. Campbell and Mr. Davis gave the Newport Beach Fire Department team a report of their actions and transferred the patient's care as the child was rushed to the hospital. Paramedics Ryan O'Leary, Joe Lasser, and Kevin Gonzalez delivered vital oxygen to the patient's organs and brain on the way to the hospital. They also transmitted crucial information of the patient's acute nature to the hospital while en route. The ER team was standing ready upon the arrival of Medic 65. The patient was later transported to Children's Hospital of Orange County. That evening, the patient was awake and talking, and much to the delight of everyone involved, the patient has made a full neurological recovery, and he paid a surprise visit to the fire station with a special plaque made up for those who worked to save his life. So, let me present a few items. I'm holding up the plaque that Little Nixon Minor presented to the Newport Beach Fire Department, Corona Del Mar Fire Station Number Five. "Thank you for saving my life." Oh, gosh. Nixon Minor, February 15, 2016. So, it is my pleasure, and I now will be reading several proclamations to commend the service of all individuals involved. So, as I read your names, please come forward. Lorna Campbell, Ralph Davis, Captain Roman Tegeron, Engineer Brian Frazz, Paramedic Kevin Gonzalez, Paramedic Joe Lasser, and Paramedic Ryan O'Leary. And Chief Scott Posture, you're here too. Please come forward. So, let me begin to read the proclamations. They're all pretty much the same, so I will not go through every whereas, because I told the story, but I will speak to the individuals on each proclamation. So, regarding Laura Campbell... Due to Ms. Campbell's quick and heroic actions, Little Nixon Minor's life was surely saved on that day in February 15, 2016. Now, therefore, I, Diane Brooks Dixon, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Ms. Lorna Campbell for her heroic actions. Newport Beach Fire Department Heroic Act Award. And I'll keep proceeding here. Similarly, Mr. Ralph Davis. Due to his quick actions and heroic assistance, Little Nixon Minor's life was surely saved on that day. Now, therefore, I, Diane Brooks Dixon, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Mr. Ralph Davis for his heroic actions. Newport Beach Fire Department Heroic Act Award. Mr. Captain Roman Tegeron. The actions of these fire personnel are in the highest traditions of the fire service and affirm our mission of providing outstanding service to the public. Now, therefore, I, Diane Brooks Dixon, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, and on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Captain Roman Tegeron for his heroic actions. Newport Beach Fire Department Heroic Act Award. Engineer Brian Frazz. The actions of these fire personnel are the highest traditions of the fire service and affirm our mission of providing outstanding service to the public. Now, therefore, I, Diane Brooks Dixon, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Engineer Brian Frazz for his heroic actions. Newport Beach Fire Department Heroic Act Award. Paramedic Kevin Gonzalez. The actions of these fire personnel are in the highest traditions of the fire service and affirm our mission of providing outstanding service to the public. Now, therefore, I, Diane Brooks Dixon, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Paramedic Kevin Gonzalez for his heroic actions. Newport Beach Fire Department Heroic Act Award. Paramedic Joe Laser. The actions of these fire personnel are in the highest traditions of the fire service and affirm our mission of providing outstanding service to the public. I, Diane Brooks Dixon, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Paramedic Joe Laser for his heroic actions. Newport Beach Fire Department Heroic Act Award. And Paramedic Ryan O'Leary. The actions of these fire personnel are in the highest traditions of the fire service and affirm our mission of providing outstanding service to the public. Now, therefore, I, Diane Brooks Dixon, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Paramedic Ryan O'Leary for his heroic actions. Newport Beach Fire Department Heroic Act Award. So, Chief Posture, if you would like to say a few words, please.
Mayor Dixon. Members of the council, this is Scott Posture, your fire chief. Just to mention a couple of words about this heroic rescue. We had units out in the district, happened to be fairly nearby, when the call came down for service. They knew exactly where to go, they had trained on where to be, and they jumped into action to make things happen. So, it's a teamwork between the people at the pool, our trained paramedics and first responders, who just happened to be very close to make this happen with a very, very good outcome, but it was a very dramatic rescue. And the things that happened between the time that the paramedic got there to the time he was released at the hospital were pretty dramatic as well that we can't go into tonight. But I'm very thankful to say that Nixon Minor is here. He's here tonight, and I'd like to have, if possible, with your permission, Mayor, the family bring Nixon up here, because the rescuers did make a little gift for him that I think would be appropriate, if that's okay?
Absolutely. Please do.
So, can Little Nixon be brought up? Now, what the firefighters did, and they have met Nixon, and they have a very special outfit for him. He's become a firefighter for tonight. So, he has a Newport Beach fire helmet, and he's got some turnouts that our Fire Association is very pleased to bestow on Nixon. And our people couldn't be happier that we have such a good outcome. It says Minor on the back of his turnout coat. Very, very nice. And Mayor Dixon, there's two more plaques to come down for Ralph and for Lorna. If you can bring those down when we take our picture, that would be wonderful.
These are from the Newport Beach Fire Department Life Saving Award to Lorna Campbell and Ralph Davis. I'll bring these down.
Thank you. And we'll put Nixon in the picture.
Well, that is a wonderful celebration and recognition of service to our fellow man and little people. So, thank you all for your extraordinary roles to save a life in our community, and thank you to our fire department and all that you do. We are grateful. All right, and we have another presentation related to saving a life. This is what we do well on Newport Beach. This is item number three on our study session agenda. Many of you know that on March, excuse me, May 29th, we had a shark attack at Big Corona Beach. On May 29th, a swimmer training for a triathlon in the waters off Corona Del Mar State Beach was bitten by a shark, leaving her seriously injured about 150 yards offshore. Lifeguard Mike Yor and Lifeguard Officer Andy Matsuyama were patrolling the area in a rescue boat when they spotted the swimmer in distress. They immediately responded, and Captain Yor, a seasoned boat captain, was able to position the boat and pull the injured woman onto the back deck. She was severely bleeding and needed immediate medical attention. Lifeguards Yor and Matsuyama surveyed the wounds and took action, providing advanced emergency medical care to her life-threatening injuries to stop the severe bleeding from her arm. They then rushed their patient to a dock located about a mile away, where they were met by a team of Newport Beach Fire Department fire paramedics. En route, Officer Matsuyama continued to care for and comfort the patient, who remained calm. Fire paramedics met the boat and took over the patient's care. They began advanced life support to control bleeding during transport to the trauma center. Physicians at the hospital informed the paramedics that without the emergency care to stop the bleeding, the swimmer would have likely succumbed to her injuries. Teamwork and coordination of our first responders helped to save her life. Today, she is recovering from her wounds. So, Captain Mike Yor and Lifeguard Officer Andy Matsuyama and Lifeguard Chief Williams, would you please come forward while I read the proclamations? Rob Williams. Lifeguards Yor and Matsuyama immediately provided advanced emergency medical care to the swimmer's life-threatening injuries and called for additional assistance from the fire paramedics. Whereas the actions taken by Lifeguard Captain Mike Yor and Lifeguard Officer Andy Matsuyama saved the life of a swimmer with a severe injury from a shark attack, and whereas the actions of these lifeguard personnel are in the highest traditions of the fire service and affirm our mission of providing outstanding service to the public. Now, therefore, I, Diane Brooks Dixon, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Lifeguard Captain Mike Yor for his heroic actions. Newport Beach Fire Department Heroic Act Award. And the actions taken by Lifeguard Mike Yor and Lifeguard Officer Andy Matsuyama saved the life of a swimmer with a severe injury from a shark attack, and whereas the actions of these lifeguard personnel are in the highest tradition of the fire service and affirm our mission of providing outstanding service to the public. Now, therefore, I, Diane Brooks Dixon, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Lifeguard Officer Andy Matsuyama for his heroic actions. Newport Beach Fire Department Heroic Act Award. Chief, or Rob, did you want to speak anymore on these, make some comments?
Mayor Dixon. Members of the council, Scott Posture, your fire chief. Again, on this rescue, it was Memorial Day weekend, we had a boat in the water off Corona Del Mar. These people patrol the waters all the time and normally respond to swimmers in distress. When they arrived on scene, what they saw was something you don't normally see. There was a lady in a pool of blood. They jumped into action, took aggressive care, aggressive medical care to stop the bleeding and get her safely, calming her down safely till she could be turned over to the paramedics who were waiting at a dock. So, good teamwork between our lifeguards, good teamwork between our paramedics, who immediately took the person to the trauma center. And realistically, if the proper bandaging wasn't done by our lifeguards in that boat, they're most likely would have been in different outcomes. So, it's a very, very good rescue for the lifeguards and our fire paramedics.
And the swimmer is recovering?
The swimmer, Maria, is recovering, and she's very thankful for our actions or the actions of the lifeguards and the paramedics.
As we all are, so, thank you. The fire chief just told me that the fire station is cooking dinner for all of these special guests today, so we're very grateful. So, thank you again. A wonderful day for our public safety, fire, and lifeguard services in Newport Beach. Thank you again.
Just for the members of the audience, so we get to roll into the more mundane part of the meeting, so you are welcome to go about your day. Don't feel like it's uncomfortable to leave.
All right. Well, we're now going to shift gears and talk about an important holiday coming up. The Fourth of July, item number four, the Fourth of July activities, and the Police and Recreation Senior Services will give us a report of our community activities and public safety and parades and fun on the Fourth of July. So, between Chief Lewis and Laura, who's going to speak first? Are you right over here? Chief Lewis?
Why don't we give her about maybe 45 more seconds?
Sure. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, John Lewis, Police Chief. And we're here today. I appreciated that introduction in terms of mundane business, because I think, to me, that signals a pretty significant improvement in terms of our planning for the Fourth of July and how we're addressing it. So, I take that as a compliment from Mr. Kiff, and I'm very grateful for that. We're here today to, again, summer's here, and it's time for our annual report on our Fourth of July plan, our operational plan for our holiday deployment on the Fourth. And this is a combined effort between, well, it's a citywide effort, really led by the Police Department in partnership with our friends at Recreation to really build upon the successes we've seen in West Newport over the years, particularly over the Fourth of July weekend. So, this plan is similar to things that you've seen in the past, again, building on successes that we've seen and really focusing on creating that family-friendly Fourth of July and really focused on quality of life in West Newport. So, I'd like to introduce Deputy Chief Dennis Birch. He is our Patrol and Traffic Division Commander, and he will be the incident commander that day with responsibility for Fourth of July operations. He has a brief PowerPoint put together for you here today, and following will be Director Del Oiler with her portion of this presentation, which will focus on Recreation's contribution to the day. So, with that, I will give you Deputy Chief Birch.
Very good.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Dennis Birch with the Police Department, here to give you a high-level overview of what we're doing on the Fourth of July, and like Chief Lewis said, this will be very similar to what you've seen in the last few years down in West Newport and throughout the city in terms of what the Police Department's doing for the Fourth of July. We're going to continue on our multi-year plan that we started in 2010, when we kind of redid our approach to the Fourth of July, and our goals for this year, for 2016, continue to be to normalize activity in the West Newport area. area. And that was our goal back in 2010, is to try to achieve, if it’s possible, a normal West Newport activity level. And by that, I mean, you know, we open up the peninsula to traffic like we’ve done in the past several years. We don’t have barricades, and we’re not hosting, if you will, the party as it was deemed back in the ’08 and prior years. And again, this is a multi-year plan we started in 2010. And in years, as in years past, we expect large crowds and traffic again this year. And so, we want a large police presence to ensure public safety out there and to mitigate the impacts of the crowds and traffic on West Newport and the Newport community in general. So, we want a large police presence out there. We also, we want to normalize the activity by engaging and educating our public. We get out early with our community to talk to them about the parties, what’s acceptable, what’s not acceptable, and try to just engage and educate our folks in how to make this a successful, family-friendly, if you will, Fourth of July. And it’s a preventative effort on our part. We really try to prevent things and issues escalating before they become true problems. And the other half of that is enforcement, if we need to take it, to prevent issues from escalating to a higher level. And we do that through low-level citations and arrests if necessary on the Fourth of July, again, to mitigate any issues before they become higher-level problems. Our mission, as generally it is, not just on the Fourth of July, but just about any time of year, is to protect life and property, to maintain peace and order, and to enforce laws to do those things. We also want to try to gain and maintain a family-friendly environment, and those were our goals back in 2010 when we approached this, is to have a West Newport activity level that is at least family-friendly and fun-for-all, and being safe and ensuring public safety at the same time. And we do that, and we try to achieve that through a professional firm, but fair approach and a very flexible approach, again, educating and engaging the community and enforcing when necessary. The Safety Enhancement Zone is a big focus of our effort in terms of West Newport. While we understand that West Newport encompasses much more than the Safety Enhancement Zone, this is where we had traditionally seen the vast majority of our problems, our problem parties, our problem activity, a lot of the comings and goings of crowds, if you will. And it’s bordered by the oceanfront to the west, 54th Street to the west and north, Coast Highway to the north, and Newport Boulevard, and 32nd Street to the east and south. And a lot of our focus of effort occurs in the Safety Enhancement Zone, although we are well aware that West Newport is heavily impacted beyond just the scope of the Safety Enhancement Zone, so we are patrolling heavily out there. And then the rest of the community as well. We’re pretty heavily deployed throughout the rest of the community, not just in the Safety Enhancement Zone, but for the purposes of your education. The Safety Enhancement Zone is a place where we’ve had heavy impacts before, and fines for municipal code violations are tripled. So, they’re a lot more impactful on violators than the rest of the city of Newport Beach on the Fourth of July. Our deployment for this year includes allied agencies. Orange County Mounted Enforcement, I think, has been a hit over the last few years. They’ll be out there again this year and again on the weekend leading up to the Fourth of July. The Orange County Sheriff’s Department will be assisting us with booking operations. Anaheim, Irvine, Orange, and we just found out today that Brea Police Department will also be helping us. And the California Highway Patrol will be assisting us with traffic operations. In total, we have about 75 allied agency officers coming in to support us on the Fourth of July. And that’s in addition to our 125 or so that’ll be active that particular day.
Is that more than in prior years?
It’s actually just a little bit less than last year, and it’s less than years previous. I think at our height, we had over 100 outside allied agency officers. In 2010, I think that number was 106 outside agency officers. So, we’ve been trending down and de-escalating a little bit. And I’ll show you some statistics here in a little bit that might show that we’re having some success. I hope it does show that.
Very good.
Highlights for this year, some of the things we might be doing a little bit different or engaging in, we’re doing an incident management, a joint incident management with the Fire Department and our folks with Parks and Recs, Municipal Operations, Public Works, and the like. And they’ll be all, we’ll all be up and running at the EOC here at City Hall. We’ll have video feeds and then briefings at 11:00 and 4:00 PM, talking about what’s going on, where we’re at, what the activity level is at those points. We continue to have a temporary booking station at the Police Department. The Orange County Sheriff’s Department will be assisting us with all the arrests that we expect to take that day. So, we’re supplemented by them. And we will continue social media monitoring. A lot of the open-source material in an effort to get in front of any issues that might be presented that we can pick up from social media, if at all possible. And we have enhanced deployment Friday through Sunday leading up to the Fourth of July, a much heavier police patrol deployment than we typically do. We’ll have our Peninsula Enforcement Team out there, Crime Suppression Team, the Mounted Enforcement folks will be out there too, as well as some bolster patrol officers. So, you’ll see a heavy police presence leading into the Fourth of July on the weekend, and we’ve done that traditionally over the years with the extended holiday weekend. You know, we want to try again mitigate things before they become true issues. We’ve enhanced our fireworks teams to eight officers this year, four total cars of two officer teams. We’ve had community feedback that we haven’t, you know, been as responsive to that, so we’re being responsive to that. If we don’t have the fireworks stuff this year, we can redeploy them as necessary. And then finally, we’ll be using the beautiful Marina Park facility for facilities breaks and dinner a little bit later. We’ll have probably a little bit of a difficult time busting some of our officers loose from dinner. It’s a beautiful place, a little bit nicer.
Well, I was going, are you going to be talking anymore about Marina Park?
No, sir.
Well, it’s just that, obviously, this is the first year that Marina Park has been in existence, and it’s beautiful, and the grass, and how do you plan to just support the, I mean, you just don’t know what the kind of visitor activity will be. I mean, are you, do you have special plans for Marina Park?
We will have a presence there just because of the, it’s going to be a facility for us to take breaks and have dinner a little bit later. So, we will have a presence out there. I don’t anticipate any issues out there, but we will be prepared to deal with it if there are.
Okay. Okay, I didn’t know if anybody else was going to say something.
Not as far as I know, ma’am.
All right.
Sir.
Continue, thank you.
A review of last year, and this will talk a little bit about our trend data. We had 635 citations, which is down about 10% from the year previous. 95 arrests last year, down 25 from 120 the year prior. And this is, these next two numbers are sort of indicative of the success, I think, we’ve had. 12 disturbance advisement cards, so that’s the low-level party enforcement that we do. And that’s down 14 from the year prior. And zero Lugo citations. And I think both of those, the party enforcement and the nature of parties, were really big drivers of our activity level in Newport and West Newport in previous Fourth of July. So, I think those numbers are good, and those are a good trend. We hope to continue to see that. I think that message has gotten out that parties need to be enforced like years prior. So, I think we’ve had some successes there.
Good.
This is our citation data from the last 13 years. So, it’s a bit much, and it’s probably a little bit difficult for you to see or read, but you can see the trend line all the way down to 2015 on the far light, far right, excuse me. Citations have come down quite a bit, quite substantially. And like I said, that’s our low-level use in enforcement to head off issues before they become issues. And even on the three-day weekends that we’ve been experiencing the last couple of years, we’re down significantly from where we’ve been traditionally in the past. So, I think that’s a good indication of the issues we’re seeing out there. We’re not seeing them in the same numbers, and we’re seeing them a little bit, you know, less aggressive nature, and that kind of follows with the parties that we’ve been seeing and the fewer parties and the...
So mainly at parking? Used to be municipal code was the highest cost for, now it’s parking?
No, it’s parking. I think that’s probably a good thing.
Good.
And then for arrests, again, the trend over time has come down. If you look there, there’s a big spike in 2008, and I think that was a big driver for the changes that we’ve, that we made starting in 2010, and we had those discussions in 2009. So, that year in 2008, 2009, I think were the big drivers for the change in 2010, and you can see our arrests came down, leveled out, and then even last year came down quite a bit more. So, I think that trend hopefully will continue this year, and we’ll see a lower number. I think we had a total of, what was it, 95 arrests, 94 arrests last year on the Fourth of July holiday. So, that’s down significantly from about the 160 we had in 2008, and I think that’s indicative of some of the successes and how we’re kind of getting this thing back into a manageable level.
Very good.
Information for the community and the public will be available on our website about road closures. We don’t anticipate any, a couple minor ones over in Back Bay for the Fourth, or for the fireworks. There’s one on Orange Street to prevent some of the traffic down onto Summit and down towards the River Jetty. And then a few things around the Old City Hall for our Mounted Enforcement folks to use and deploy from.
I mean, so, in the prior years, you’ve had your kind of a mobile center at the Old City Hall. Obviously, you cannot do that. Is that why you’re now back, you’re here at the EOC?
Correct. Yeah, and it’s, you know, kind of, we’re trying to take, you know, the focus of effort and make it more normalized, if you will. That was our goal back in 2010, to normalize West Newport. And so, getting out of there, I think, adds to that. And then we’ll throw out NICS alerts, we’ll put out NICS alerts as necessary, you know, keep the community updated on the latest things and the trends going on the Fourth of July. And ma’am, that’s all I have. If you have any questions or the council has any questions, I’d be happy to try to answer them.
Mr. Petros.
Yeah, I know you have already thought this through, but I would be remiss if I didn’t mention that while the daytime, the peninsula is your, is your real object, as the sun sets, there’s a lot of other activities around Newport Beach.
Correct.
I’m thinking of Castaways Park, the fireworks display at the Dunes, and the Back Bay Trail. And so, could you just comment on plans that you’ve made to make sure, in particular, the number of pedestrians that are crossing Dover to get over to Castaways is really high? And what are your thoughts and plans to just keep people safe outside of the peninsula?
So, we have, we’ve bolstered our patrol deployment exponentially on the Fourth of July. So, it’s not just the Safety Enhancement Zone in the West Newport, sir. It is all the rest, throughout the rest of the community. Dover Shores area is part of that. We have fireworks teams that are going to be dedicated to each of the four areas in Newport Beach. The Dover Shores Area Two area is part of that. We also have traffic enforcement in the California Highway Patrol that will be monitoring that, and if the need arises, we will take care of those issues as they do arise. Sir.
Any other comments up here? Diane, let’s open it up to the public. Please come forward if you have...
Oh, I’m sorry. Apologize.
That’s okay. We have a couple more slides for you.
I apologize, yes.
And thank you, Dennis, for that. And we’re certainly excited to have the Police Department at Marina Park. I will let you know, Mayor Dixon, that we will also have Recreation staff at Marina Park, as well as our Park Patrol staff will be on hand, and we’ll have a parking attendant in the parking lot there. So, I think we’ll be in good shape on the Fourth of July.
Would you just remind me and the community, will Marina Park offices be open, our facilities be open?
The facilities themselves will not be open. The park will certainly be open for drop-in use.
And what about the Lighthouse Cafe?
It will definitely be open, yes. That will be a very busy day for them.
Okay.
So, while the Police Department is keeping order in Newport Beach, we’re going to make sure that there’s a really good balance of fun for our families as well. And we’ve got two events that our community volunteers and Recreation staff have been working very hard on. The Sixth Annual Fourth of July is for families event, which is on the peninsula. I can’t believe this is the sixth year. They seem to be stacking up pretty quickly. But we’ve got another great event planned. The parade will start off at 9:00 in the morning at 36th Street. We’ll make our way up to Channel Place Park. There’ll be bouncers, food, there’ll be a costume contest, so we recommend everybody dress up and decorate their bikes, also some arts and crafts. There’ll be giant slides there as well, and a whole lot of carnival games. And you can see some of our sponsors there below. We’ve gotten some great support, again, this year to help support the funding of that event. And I can’t say enough about this group of people. They’ve been together since the inception of this event, and I do want to thank them for all of their work. That’s Craig Batley, Sharon Bowles, Mary Bryant, Wendy Collier, Nikolai Glazer, Cindy Kohler, Jim Miller, Lori Morris. They will all be there on the day of the event, helping facilitate it. They’ve done some tremendous work on getting some sponsorship as well, so if you see them, please make sure you thank them for all their efforts. So, a really fun event on the peninsula. We’ll be there till 11:30. That gives families an opportunity to be in the parade, have some family fun, and then get back to their house in time for lunchtime. And then that’ll be followed up, oh, and this is some pictures of last year’s event. The mayor will be there to help lead the parade. The police chief will look a little bit different than that guy up there. We’re going to give John a chance to go at it. And then you can see all the kids, too. There’ll be all kinds of family games, and it’s just a tremendous event that really has brought that community together, and families have a lot to look forward to each year on Fourth of July now.
Thank you for not showing me after the dunk tank.
Right. I will tell you that Mr. Kiff has volunteered to be in the dunk tank once again, one of the many reasons that sets him apart from any other city manager, I think, in the nation. So, thank you, Dave, for doing that. I think maybe once you hit your 10-year anniversary, they may give you a break. I’m not really sure about that, though.
He’s a regular.
No guarantees. And then also, our Mariners Parade and Festival, this is the 44th annual. Again, we have a tremendous community group, the foundation that helps put this on. Our staff works hand-in-hand with them. The parade will start at 10:30, Mariners and Commodore, and followed by a really great family celebration, food, games. They have a great raffle event that goes on as well. So, we’re certainly excited about this event. And we could not put these two events on if it weren’t for the efforts of our Police Department and Municipal Operations Department, helping shut those streets down and making sure these are really good events for the community. So, I want to thank them for that as well. So, we invite you, and we invite the community to come out. You can make both of these events and jam-pack your day with all kinds of fun, and certainly a great way to celebrate this nation. Some pictures of last year’s event. And this is the list of our volunteers. Jen Cox, Sarah Daniel, Jenny Ellis, Jennifer Garcia, Megan Jamison, Lacey Miller, Brandy Ophit, Alice Rochfiver, Rochferger, Karen Stanley, and Shelley White. Tremendous effort. These folks have been working on this event for a very long time, and it’ll be a long day for them as well, working along with our staff to put the event on. And with that, any questions you may have, we’re happy to answer.
I’m looking forward to attending both parades.
Yes.
I’m sure Mr. Petros, I know, will be there as well. Any questions up here? Oh, sure, Mr. Curry.
Well, I just want to commend the volunteers who have worked so tirelessly over the years to put these events on, both on the peninsula and in the Mariners area. It really is a tribute to the community spirit in Newport Beach, and the staff just does a wonderful job in putting these together. And of course, changing the whole tone on the peninsula was one of the great legacies of former Mayor Mike Hinn. And to see how this has transformed through the years is just a tribute to the great staff support we’ve had and the great community leadership we’ve had. So, it’s going to be another great year.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, seeing no other questions up here, let’s open it up to the public. So, please come forward if you have any questions or comments.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is George Schroeder, and I live on 35th Street. That’s actually three blocks within the Special Enhancement Zone. I’ve lived there since 1987, ‘88, so I’ve been down there about 28 years. And I used to feel like I was a hostage in my home, and I just want to say how much it has improved over the years, and in particular, the last five or six years. And I just want to say for the council members who weren’t here and don’t know the long history, this is a tremendous amount of resources that’s being allocated here. I know we’re always concerned about the budget, and we’re always evaluating costs. I just want to tell you how very important this is. And each year, they do ratchet the police enforcement down a bit as we can do this. But back in the ‘80s and ‘90s, there were times when there were crowds of people and there were people being assaulted, and the police could not get to them. We’ve had people stabbed, people shot, you know. I don’t want to go on and on about some other terrible things that have happened. So, there’s a reason we’re doing what we’re doing now. And just recently, in the last two or three years, last two years, they’ve actually allowed us to be able to leave our garages and cars and drive out because they’ve turned it around, okay? So, I just want to say, please don’t think that these resources are being overplanned or overspent because we never want to lose control of this again. We’ve turned a corner, we’re going the right direction. And I just want to say, I am on the West Newport Beach Association, I’m the president now. Every person on that board appreciates so much what the Police Department is doing for us and what Laura and the Recreation Department has done. They’ve turned the atmosphere around that families can stay and come and enjoy everything. And I think it’s about perfect. enjoy everything. And I think it's about perfect, just the way it is right now. So I just want to thank you so much. And then, because this is the last year that Councilman Curry and Ed will be here, I just want to thank them for all their support over the years to help us bring this to where it is at right now. And I also want to spend a special thank you out to Mike Hinn. And of course, there's been good work done over the years. But we've come from kind of managed chaos to something that we've taken control over now. And the one little small thing I would say is the statistics don't tell the whole story. This year, it wouldn't bother me at all if arrests in DAX and lugos were up, because every year I see violations that don't get citations, because the police can't be everywhere. There were lugos last year. You didn't give any, okay? And it probably didn't matter, because it wasn't as bad as it was five years ago. But each time you give a lugo out, those people spread the word. Okay? So there were, you know, a few house parties with 20 or 30 people hanging over the sidewalks, bicycles kind of blocking traffic, you know, standing on walls drinking. And perhaps you just couldn't get to them. But to me, I think it's important that you get to them. Okay? Because that same house, three or four weeks from now, they're going to have a house party on a Saturday night, because it's the kind of people they are. They don't care about the family that lives next door, okay? You know, they just have the kind of behavior they have. So I hope arrests are up this year. But I will say, each year, the atmosphere, the enjoyment for families, everybody just improves each year. I expect it to improve a bit this year. But if the arrests are up, it won't bother me.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please come forward.
I'm Richard Bergstrom, owning multiple properties throughout Newport. I just had one quick question. And I know later on, you're going to be talking about boardwalk problems and so forth. But a while back, there was talk about returning some of the police officers on bicycles that could patrol around the piers and boardwalk. And I'm just wondering if that's still under consideration.
Well, we can answer that right now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bergstrom, we have returned to what we call the Peninsula Enforcement Team, where we have dedicated officers on bicycles that are working the boardwalks, also our beach and our bar districts down there. So that program has returned. We do have our officers out there, and they are paying attention specific to those boardwalk safety concerns.
Great. Kudos for that program.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll come back to council. Any comments? Well, again, let me add my thanks to our fine men and women in blue and our Recreation and Senior Services organization. I mean, this is truly the epitome of what community service on a patriotic day is all about. It makes being in Newport Beach on the Fourth of July just the best it can be. And I, too, want to thank the community, the community planning committees for both Mariners and West Newport, and another shout out to Mike Hinn. He started it all. It's fantastic. And he will be forever remembered for that, among other things. So thank you, and thank you, community members. I see many of you here, too, for your continual support. So we'll have a great Fourth of July in Newport Beach. So thank you very much. All right. Moving on. Speaking of the boardwalk, that's our next item. Boardwalk safety, safety along the Oceanfront Walk regarding surries, segways, speed limits, and more. And we have Ms. Finnegan here to give us an update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm joined by Andy Mariano, Deputy City Attorney, who will also weigh in on some of the issues today. For starters, just for a refresher for those that aren't familiar, the few that might not be familiar with the Oceanfront, the actual name is the Oceanfront, but it's more commonly referred to as Oceanfront Walk or the Boardwalk in Newport Beach. And this spans about three miles between 36th Street and East Street on the peninsula. It's bordered by homes and businesses on one side and by the beach on the other. For a number of years, the city has attempted to regulate boardwalk uses. Boardwalk is a popular place. We see pedestrians and bicyclists and Segway tours and all sorts of uses down there. And over the years, the residents have raised concerns about the safety of all these competing uses in a 12-foot space. Section 12.54 of the municipal code is the main section of the code that refers to the boardwalk. However, there are other areas of the code that also speak to the boardwalk safety. Section 12.54 talks about speed limit, unsafe uses, prohibits motorized scooters, and we'll get into that a bit more later, because we're learning a lot as we look into this issue further. Talks about a walk zone around the Newport Pier, and just gives some general rules of the road. In other areas of the code, 12.56 and 12.57, we see regulations on surry cycles and on skateboards. And at this point, I need to pause and correct something that was in the staff report, and correct something that we believed back in 2010, when we last looked at this issue. It turns out, as Andy's keen eye caught in the code, actually scooters are not allowed on the boardwalk as currently defined in the code. But because of some of the confusion with the code, with different definitions and different uses being prohibited or regulated in different areas, plus we also have resolutions that come into play over the years that further regulate some of the uses, that it's unclear. And this is one of the issues that the police department speaks to when they're out there trying to enforce, that often users themselves, if we get confused, the users are confused, too. So currently, what's allowed, we believe, in addition to pedestrians, bicycles, rollerblades and skates, segways, not allowed surries, skateboards and scooters, and motorized scooters and vehicles. And by motorized, also, we will talk about this. We believe since this was last updated in 2001, they were referring to gasoline-powered motorcycles and scooters, like a moped, not what we see out there today.
What do you mean "they"? In our code or the state vehicle code?
This is in our code. Yeah. This is the NBMC still. We continue to hear, despite the efforts of the past, we had two citizens committees over the past 20 years that have looked at this issue. We've tried to put some things in place. We're still getting concerns from, we're still hearing concerns from the residents. They're concerned about the Segway tours and the tour groups. It's the size of the devices and the potential speed of the devices that they feel, that residents feel, can be intimidating to pedestrians and joggers. They also, the surry cycles, despite the prohibition on the boardwalk, we still see surries up on the boardwalk quite frequently. I believe the NBPD issued about 47 citations for surries over the past year. And there's another, it's complicated in that, in regard to the prohibition, because we're requiring the rental companies to put in writing in the contract and also in the surry itself, that they're not allowed on the boardwalk. Well, with staff changes in time, often one or two of those requirements gets forgotten, and we see visitors from out of town up on the boardwalk in their surries. The problem also with surries, when they're not allowed on the boardwalk, the only place for them to go is onto the street. And the police department has some concerns, safety concerns about the surries peddling down Balboa Boulevard any time of the year, particularly in the summertime, when there's a lot of traffic out there. We're also hearing from residents, they're seeing a lot of the new technology, the new electric devices or motorized devices on the boardwalk. And there's confusion as to what's allowed and what's not allowed. And for years, we've seen people exceeding the eight mile per hour speed limit. We'll break down a few of these in more detail. Segways are considered an electric personal assistive mobility device, EPAMD. And that basically is a group of conveyances that has particular state and federal laws associated to it. This is a fancy way of saying, these could be devices that a person that is disabled can use to improve their mobility. We see them used in Newport Beach by individuals and groups up on the boardwalk and on the sidewalks. We, as I mentioned before, there's concerns related to the size and the speed of the devices. We have tried to work with the tour operators, and they have been receptive to some operating guidelines. We haven't put a regulatory method in place for the segways yet, but we've tried to work with them over the years on some guidelines. And they have tried to do that in terms of containing the groups to six or eight people, regulating their own speeds to no more than eight miles per hour. And Andy will speak to this later, but we often get the question from residents, can't you regulate these? And yes, under the California Vehicle Code, they can be regulated. We can regulate individual Segway users or the tour groups. As I mentioned earlier, surry cycles. Surries are not permitted on the boardwalk, but we do have seven businesses on the peninsula that rent surries. Code enforcement recently gave me a report that said the shops have about, they range from two surries to six surries per shop, with a total of just over 30 available to rent on the peninsula right now. And I mentioned before, there's current challenges with the regulations in terms of making sure the renters understand they can't be used on the boardwalk. And also, if we don't allow them on the boardwalk, they need to be on the street.
Do we know how many were available a year ago, for example?
I don't know that number. I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, that's okay.
The motorized devices I mentioned earlier, our code does not specifically address some of the newer technologies. It doesn't talk about e-bikes, specifically segways or hoverboards. So staff is recommending that we look into updating the Newport Beach Municipal Code to reflect with the California Vehicle Code how it defines these devices. We incorporate those definitions, and then council can tell us to what degree they want those devices regulated or not regulated. But the very least, we should at least address some of these in the code. When we're looking at complaints about excessive speeds and enforcement, we do believe the past year, there's been a big difference. As the chief mentioned previously, we now have the Peninsula Enforcement Team in action. They're doing a great deal of work out there, educating and making visitors and residents aware of the boardwalk regulations. And unfortunately, they're also having to issue some citations. A few years ago, another attempt to improve awareness, we put some new signage up after our 2010 study of the boardwalk. These are just a few of the signs. Some of our beach crossing signs mysteriously disappeared, because they're unique and people seem to like them. So we also think this year, we can put up some new signage, more friendly signage, to make people aware of not just the boardwalk regulations, but also the beach regulations. There are a number of longer-term ideas that have been raised over the years in terms of how we can address some of these issues by fixing, I put that in quotes, the boardwalk's infrastructure. Some of these ideas were incorporated into the 2010 bicycle safety master plan, and they include widening the path, extending the path. There's a particular area, the boardwalk ends at East Street, and there's been concerns from residents in that area that the bicycles exiting the boardwalk tend to come right out into Balboa Boulevard. And they're concerned about the safety with that. So we could extend it to G Street and make a smoother transition. We could extend the path all the way to the Santa Ana River, or we could extend it either through or around the Oceanfront parking lot. This is something that we've heard from particularly students going to Newport L or some of the junior guards, their parents are concerned when they have to cut through that Oceanfront parking lot by the Newport Pier. We've also heard ideas about raising, excuse me, adding a separate bike lane, or extending the path east all the way to the wedge. Any ideas with infrastructure, though, staff understands, would require a great deal of community outreach. We'd also have to study them from an engineering standpoint and a regulatory standpoint. Some of these would require Coastal Commission approval and potentially State Lands Commission approval. So today, staff is really seeking council direction. Before we embark on another Oceanfront safety study, what council would like to see out of this study? Should we look further into regulating the segways, either prohibiting their use on the boardwalk or regulating their use? Should we regulate other uses, such as pedigos? Should we clean up and update the Newport Beach Municipal Code, particularly 12.54, to tie in everything that's regulated on the boardwalk in one place? But also, should we look at the California Vehicle Code definitions for some of the newer devices and make sure those are referenced in our code? And the issue of prohibiting surries on the streets, the police department is concerned about the safety of the surry riders on the streets. And should we look further into prohibiting the surries and, over time, amortizing the devices so that the shop owners don't feel that immediate loss? And also, should we start looking at a study or community outreach on potential changes to the boardwalk's infrastructure? That's it. That concludes my presentation.
You were going to make, were you saying, making any comments? No?
No, not at this time, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments up here?
We can do questions, yeah.
I didn't see your name here. Okay. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. So what is the, is there a legal definition for Segway?
Yes, there is.
What is it?
It's within the California Vehicle Code, yes. It's defined to be a self-balancing, non-tandem, two-wheeled device that's not greater than 20 inches deep and 25 inches wide, can turn in place, designed to transport only one person, with an electric propulsion system averaging less than one horsepower, the maximum speed of which, when powered solely by the propulsion system on a paved level surface, is no more than 12 and 1/2 miles per hour.
Wow, that is incredibly specific.
That's why I had to write it down, yes.
Are there any cases of people using that for handicap use that you're aware of?
Are there instances of people using that? Yes. In studying what other jurisdictions have done nationwide on regulating segways, almost every single one I've looked at create a built-in exception for people with disabilities under the ADA. So yes, it is something that the individual could use to address their disability for getting around.
And while we're sort of in the electronic devices section, how about sitting, scooters that you sit down, sometimes you see them at grocery stores? Is that covered at all under, or do we put that in one category or the other?
So we're talking about a scooter where you sit down?
Yeah, I think they're four-wheel? I've never been out one.
Yeah, I believe those would be under motorized scooter, so.
Okay, so those would not be allowed?
Those are currently prohibited, yes, on the boardwalk.
Except for, yeah, with the exception of eight, unless they had.
Yeah, any, it's not the device that leads to whether a disabled person can use it, it's the disability of the person themselves. So if they need to use any device for their disability, that would be an exception to the rule.
So we have to be concerned about that at all? With the hoverboard, which is similar to a Segway but without a handle, those would go, how fast do those go? Do we know?
I don't have that information offhand.
I almost fell on one. They do not go very fast. I would be okay with those being allowed. This time, they're a pretty slow device. I'm just giving you a pulse of how I feel. The e-bike, something that I'd have to look more into. So if you were to present this to me, I'd want to see more facts about technology, how quickly it moves, and if there's any injury or collision statistics we have on it. And are there any other, those are two gray areas. Are there any other areas you're looking for opinions on?
Thank you, Council, Mayor Protem. I also want to draw to your attention, to the audience's attention, a handout that Andy prepared. And that is in the back of the room, and it's also at each of your places. It lists all of the allowed uses currently on the boardwalk, those prohibited, and potential uses that Andy saw in the California Vehicle Code. So there's a whole list of devices here that we could potentially talk about today, or we could come back to you with more information on each of these.
Yes, so everything in that bottom group is something that's defined in state law and not particularly mentioned in our code.
So perceivably, someone could ride a golf cart in the area, because it's gray area.
Yeah, right now, we have a general prohibition on other motor vehicles, but we don't define what those are.
Thank you.
Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know a little bit about electric bikes, so I'll forgive you my two cents. They're in two classifications. You probably already know all this, but there's an electric assist, so that you have to pedal it to make it work. It doesn't, it's not like a motorcycle. However, there are electric bikes that have a throttle, like a motorcycle. And my two cents is, because I'm a bike rider, I would say that the, I don't know how you would separate these, because they look exactly alike, and this is the problem. But an electric assist bike essentially is a lot less, can, you know, suddenly speed off versus the other type that has a throttle on it. So since they look the same, and they almost do the same thing, I don't know if that's ever going to work out. But I have an electric assist bike, and you have to pedal it. It doesn't just go. And, but the electric bikes with a throttle, they go up to 30 miles an hour, some go even 70. So that's a different animal. That's more like a motorcycle to me.
All right. Any other questions up here? All right, let's turn it over to the public. Please come forward. Put your, you could put the yellow. Please come forward. Put your, you could put the yellow piece of paper in that little box right there. Thank you. And please state your name.
Hello, Mayor Dixon and council members. My name is Kent McNauton. I've been a resident of Newport Beach for 51 years. My son and I are owners of 20th Street Beach and Bikes, which is on the corner of 20th Street and Balboa Boulevard in Newport Beach. I wanted to come here today to offer our information that we can give you to help you make a decision in going forward as regarding the boardwalk and the rental programs and so forth. Stepping back and looking at the whole picture, there is about 5,000 actual houses that rent for a week or more every year on Balboa Peninsula. So that's the volume base. We currently, at our store, and I don't know exactly what our market share is, we do approximately 20,000 bike rentals a year. So if, in the estimate of how many residents have bikes and other bike shops that are in the area, you're probably dealing with about 40,000 bicycles on the Balboa Peninsula. And with the four accidents, that's four too many, but it's there, it's actually working out fairly well with what you have. But in the long term, I think the only solution is to either widen the existing boardwalk or to build an adjacent boardwalk. The second thing I wanted to talk about was, there really isn't any bike lanes on Balboa Peninsula. So I think with that problem you have, it's dangerous for people to really ride on the street on Balboa Peninsula. So that's one of the reasons that you're getting the influx of people that are coming, that are on the boardwalk. The next thing that I wanted to discuss was segways. We don't carry segways strictly because in, we feel there is a safety problem. Now, there is other company, I think there's only one other company on Balboa Peninsula that does Segway rentals. I don't know, they're nice guys, they seem to do a good job, but I can't speak to the Segway business at all and how that affects the boardwalk or, or what have you. The Suris are kind of an interesting subject. We have two Suris, and there's probably, I think the estimated 31 Suris that are on the, on the, with the total rental companies that are on the Balboa Peninsula. The Suris provide a very unique experience for the tourists because basically, they can put all the family together into one Surrey. And a lot of the family members that ride these Suris are older people. They're disabled. The older mother and father will sit in the back, and the son and the daughter will sit in the front. So I think the, and really, I don't know of any beachfront community, really, of the size of Newport Beach in the United States that doesn't have Surrey operations taking place. So, I'm sorry about that. So I'll wrap it up. Okay. So as far as the Suris goes, one of the considerations that you might want to explore are: limit the number of Suris to the Surrey operators. You can't have more than two, you can't have more than three, what have you. Two, give the Surrey operators a designated route or a pathway that they take. Maybe they only go two or three blocks on the, on the boardwalk, and then they take a certain path on a certain street area to avoid any type of problems that, that you would have with, with safety issues. Maybe you limit the time during the peak hours of the boardwalk, you don't allow the Surrey operations.
Okay, could you please wrap it up?
Okay. Anyway, well, I just, I'll just wrap it up very simply. We're here available anytime. If the staff or you want to call us and talk to us, we're more than happy to help in any way we can to provide the information.
Thank you very much. Another speaker, please. Come forward.
Mayor, Council, Fred Levine. I've been a resident of Newport Beach for over 20-some-odd years. I want to say thank you for the study that was done. It's kind of refreshing to see that I'm not the only one for the past five years approaching, to see the danger of what's happening on the boardwalk. I'll address a couple of things. As far as segways, in all the years I've been down here, I've never seen one disabled person, never. And I don't know what type of disabilities to get on one of these things. I tried, it's very difficult. In reference to Suris, when you have two Suris going down a boardwalk of that size, it's impossible for anyone to walk. And I wanted to talk a little bit about, I'll just make it quickly, as far as the motorized vehicles, it's really like the 405 freeway. I've said that to the Daily Pilot, and there are literally hundreds of people that are surprised with the amount of traffic that goes up and down the boardwalk. And I really believe with this type of study, that we should take an aggressive approach to it. One, enforcement, the signs are up. I know we have extra additional police, and I thank the council and the mayor for that. However, it doesn't seem to be working. Every single weekend, there's almost accidents. Some are being reported, some aren't. And it needs to be addressed. I've never seen, I don't know the mentality of what's happening, but to have motorized vehicles on a path where there's children, infants, dogs, and so many near accidents, speed is definitely an issue. There's no one driving at 8 miles an hour, nobody. When these motor vehicles go, and I've seen them going 15, 20 miles an hour, whizzing by. I even say, "Slow down," and of course, they give me the magic finger. It takes an approach for the city council and the mayor, come down and take a look during the holiday, during, on the weekend, not during the week when there's not much traffic. I don't understand why we're still having this dialogue. I think this survey actually opens up a lot of doors that we could do something about it. And now's really the time to do it. Whether we have gas vehicles or bike vehicles, get rid of them, the battery-operated vehicles go as fast or faster. I've seen every type of motorized vehicle. In reference to the hover, there's been many accidents, there's fires, they're very, very dangerous, especially if you fall off, and many people are. To round it up, I just would like to go to the council and the mayor and ask a question. To approach, and we want visitors down here, we want to have an open, beautiful facility for everyone to enjoy, let's not blame the visitor. It's the operators. I've been to these operators and asked them specifically, "Where can I go?" Have fun. It's a money issue. I think we have to take an approach and look at the boardwalk and say, "Does it make common sense to have motorized vehicles up and down the boardwalk?" In my opinion, it does not. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Denise Oberman. I would like to commend the staff. I think that was an excellent report, and you've covered most, if not all, of the major issues. I just wanted to bring up to the council and staff's attention a couple of things that maybe weren't explicitly stated. One is, the word confusion was used. And as somebody that's lived on the oceanfront, that regularly has until recently used the boardwalk, there is an unnecessary amount of confusion around what to use, how to use it, what's permitted, what's not permitted. And what I'm hearing is, let's make it a little bit more complicated. What if we just make it simple? This oceanfront walk cannot accommodate for residents or visitors the, the amount of traffic that exists. And what is really happening is that there are accidents, actual, not just near misses, that are not reported, and they happen on a frequent and regular basis. They happen to both residents and visitors. What many of the residents are doing is, they are ceasing to walk along the boardwalk. And what's happening with residents is, they are experiencing the boardwalk, and then the boardwalk is something they don't want to experience again, because it's a situation where it's not pleasant to walk, jog, or ride a bicycle along the boardwalk. And it's dangerous. They have to jump off the boardwalk to avoid getting hit. You have people that live or rent along the boardwalk or nearby, where they have little kids that are going back and forth on a frequent basis, and particularly, obviously, in the weekends, holidays, and season, back and forth from the boardwalk to the beach. And we have a preponderance of vehicles. So, going back to the issue of confusion, how can we make this not a more complex issue, but a simpler issue to address to both residents and visitors, and obviously, a city's satisfaction? One thing is, to make a very clear, harmonized ordinance. What will we allow on the boardwalk? We will allow pedestrians, just as an example. We will allow non-assisted bicycles. We will allow skaters and rollerbladers. We will, and I know some people may disagree with me on this, but I'm saying, maybe that's a mode that we will allow. We will allow legitimately demonstrated vehicles used for the purpose of handicapped assistance. How do we do that? The people that are operating the vehicle have to have something that shows that they are in fact handicapped. They have to do that to drive a car. They have to do that to park. So, right now, what's the reality on the segways? The reality on the segways is that they're not being used, as a former resident suggested, for a purpose to accommodate the disabled. Disabled people can't not stand a balance on a Segway, they can't operate a Segway. So, why split all the hairs about motorized vehicles? We don't need to. Just a couple of quick points, please. So that's one. I totally support the idea of simplifying and clarifying, harmonizing the ordinance as relate to this. Number two is, clarify the signage. I think that was a very attractive sign, but it wasn't very easy to read, and I couldn't really see what it said. I apologize. But with all of our signage, why can't we use a universal signage with what is or isn't permitted, with a line through it, like everywhere else in the world does? And then lastly, as to enforcement. We, as, as a city, we need to commit to enforcement. We've gotten to the point where we don't just have a few people, we have hundreds of thousands of people going up and down. And if we don't get the message out there, and we don't have a clear, feasible program, it is going to impact the quality and safety and the risk of this for residents, visitors in the city. So I encourage you to make the issue simple, address it, and I know it can be. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Yes, Mayor, and council members. My name is George Schroeder, and I lived on the Peninsula for about 28 years now, and I own a bicycle, and I ride the bicycle year-round. You know, just something to keep in mind, what is your responsibility and your obligation? Your obligation is to do the best thing for the most amount of people, and you should think about the residents first, then of course, the business owners. We all like the business owners down here, we all support them, and I'm happy they're here. But the first obligation is public safety and the residents. The beach area, on any given day when it's summertime, our population goes from 85,000 to 185,000. 100,000 people come down and they, you know, use our beachfront. Okay? And again, you know, I do ride my bicycle a lot, and I ride it all the way down to the point. The electric bikes, and, you know, I'm trying to understand them also. Like, I saw one, I was going to turn left onto a street, and there was a bike about a block away. As I turned left, it was almost in front of me. It was an electric bike going 30 miles an hour. It had pedals on it. You know, I didn't realize, you know, because it was, you know, where a bicycle would be. So since then, because I drive down there a lot, through alleys and things, I'm just going, I drive very slow. Okay? So these bicycles, any electric bicycle, goes faster than 8 miles an hour. They just do. Because you want to go fast. So I think they should not be on the boardwalk. And as for the segways, again, the Segway, it's the type of a device that if somebody bumps into you when they're walking, that's one thing, and they bump into you with a Segway, you know, that can do a lot of damage. Again, they're just not safe. That boardwalk has all kinds of people walking on it. The bicycles go by, there's a line, if you go this way, you're on this side, that way, that side. If you're on a bicycle, your thumb's on your bell, you're saying, "On, on your left," when you try and go around slowly. The higher-speed vehicles, like, and the segways, it's just, you're asking that small amount of area to do too much. It's not practical or reasonable. So I would support removing the segways. As for the Suris, they can't be on the boardwalk when the boardwalk's busy. Okay? And the fact that there are a few business owners that have them, to try and worry about how much money they can make, rent a few more bicycles, rent tandem bicycles. Okay? And when they're on a public street, if you're behind them on a narrow street, they're going 3 or 4 miles an hour. They can't have old people in them, okay, who probably don't want to be there, but their younger members of the family talk them into doing it, okay? And the point is, you know, I don't know what good is being accomplished by putting a device like that. It's almost like, it should have a right triangle, like it's an Amish horse carriage going like 5 miles an hour. Okay? But, but in a densely populated area, with people coming in, doesn't make sense. And then, I do not support skaters or rollerbladers on the boardwalk, because people who use those devices in landscapes, they tend to go fast, and they cut in and out. So there's all kinds of young families there. I've watched kids run across the boardwalk to get to the waves. Bikes going too fast almost take kids out. So it's a public safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon, members of the council. I'm Paul Watkins. I'm a resident of Newport. I think Tara did a great job on the staff report. Unfortunately, in the beginning, she says that the boardwalk is about 3 miles long, but when I jog on the weekends, I'll swear it's 20 miles long. Unbelievable. She, she does say near the end of her report, that some would argue that a wider boardwalk would simply spread the problems out and enable other users to exceed the 8 miles per hour speed limit. We're, we're just not in favor, my wife is here with me, we're, we're not in favor of extending the boardwalk. As you can clearly see, I'm an old geezer. When I was a young geezer, I enjoyed the youthful exuberance of the boardwalk. But now that I'm really old, I think there's an opportunity for all of us to enjoy a, a different beach experience, a pristine experience, a quiet, tranquil experience, a family picnic experience, not unlike what Dennis indicated when he was describing the 4th of July, a family-friendly environment. So, on behalf of Ronnie and myself, we would ask that there not be an infrastructure change that would extend the boardwalk beyond 36th Street, westerly to the, to the River Jetty. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name's Martin Derrick. I own Seaside Bicycle Company. It's located in the Balboa Inn Hotel. I was actually the first person to have electric bikes in Newport Beach six years ago. I introduced them. I have in front of me a document from the Supreme Court of the United States, and I want to leave a copy with the city council, which states and has gone through Congress that electric bikes are considered bicycles and not a motorized vehicle. I have a copy for, for you, and I have also a copy for the lady over there. And also, this document supersedes any state laws, any county laws, and city laws. Any place a bicycle can go, an electric bike is licensed to go. It's from the Supreme Court and the Congress of the United States. This is the decision. It's right here in black and white. I brought a copy so I can maybe clear all this up, because everybody's kind of hearsayer, this, that, and the other. They talk about speed on the bike path, the speed of the freeway, people go 100 miles an hour. I tell every person who rents my bike, "Do not exceed 8 miles an hour on the bike path." I'm riding my electric bike on the bike path. I had people zip by me on these racing bikes, going about 30 miles an hour on the bike path. So to blame electric bikes and have them take the hit for everybody's inconsistency of, which the law is not allowed, here's a document right here that's documented. It states exactly what an electric bike is. It is not a motorized vehicle, it is a bicycle. And I'd like to leave this with the city council, and I've got a copy for you also. And again, I guess I'm the bad guy, because I was the first guy to have electric bikes in Newport Beach. And I am a resident, and also, now we go back to motorized scooters. We have scooters that we rent. I'm the only person in Newport Beach that has those. They're mobility scooters. We have them for our hotel guests. They're not able to allow bikes. I state to them, "Do not take these scooters over 8 miles an hour." They're mobility scooters. They can go in supermarkets, they have a turn-down mode, they can go in any supermarket, they can go on the pier, any place they want. Their American Disability Act approved, and they are... Their American Disability Act approved, and they are legal by the state and the federal government. I have both instances here for the city council. And hopefully, we can clear all those electric bikes up. Kent and I are the only two electric bikers on the peninsula. We're very good friends, and I think, have I spoken? I rest my case. I have the paperwork here to prove it.
All right. Thank you so much. Any other speakers, please come forward.
Here, Dixon and council members, I'm Brian Ozonian. I agree Tara did a great job. I want to address traffic mixing with everything that rolls. And I call everything that rolls the rolling public, because there's too many things that roll. So, the rolling public has built itself up like a tsunami wave. I'm talking about over 40 years of my experience in Newport Beach has gone from what used to be a nice, family-friendly bicycle ride on the boardwalk to mass chaos. If you were there, you'd know it. You wouldn't question that it's a problem. I think it's an underestimated, unaddressed issue in a big sense. Now, Councilmember Petros remembers when I attended the master bicycle circulation plan meetings. I think there's a provision there, correct me if I'm wrong, that bicycle circulation on the peninsula is left open as a to-do item. It needs to be amended, this master plan. And it needs to be amended in a far different way than I think I was thinking about it during the time of the master bike plan. We need a circulation plan for the rolling public. Maybe there has to be a depot over at Hope where people park their bikes and then get to ride through the peninsula. But we have it impacting traffic, because we have this three-foot law. Bicycles here, I've got to be three feet away in my car. Balboa Boulevard has rendered one lane each direction with bicycles on the roadway, whether it's a surry or a bicycle or whatever, you have to stay three feet away. It's impossible to pass a cyclist with the two lanes and stay in that right lane. It's overtaken. Combine that with the incursions from Marina Park, where now, no one gets off their, I mean, the only reason they get off their bike is because they're little ones and they have strollers, but they're stopping traffic, and they're darting through the median, and it's become a real problem for residents to enter and leave our homes with traffic problems. So, you have a rolling public that is growing in numbers, they're finding different ways to bring their devices to Newport Beach. First, they find a place to park, and then they're all going to go on a bike ride. And this gets huge, and it becomes everyone's interest, because there's a whole menu. It's like ordering coffee now. There's 15 ways you order coffee. Well, there's 15 ways you can roll in Newport Beach. And they're finding ways to do it more and more, and it's interesting, I'm not saying I'm against it, but I think the master plan study has to be more 10,000 feet, looking at this thing, saying, how do we do this as a city for visitor enjoyment, for resident protection and enhancement? And our residents, you know, have some rights too, I believe. I'm walking at 10 o'clock at night, because it's the only time I can do a walk. I do two and a half miles, but it gets lighter and later, because it's not safe. And if you've ever been walking later at night and seen an electric bike come about 15, 20 miles an hour behind you, it's really scary. And I don't want to, you know, impose this on anyone, but they're not all sober. So, they're coming from the bars. One last thing, there is a radar sign, I think it's around 12th Street in the boardwalk, and it reads out the speed you're going. It's solar-powered. We need more of those so that people can see and get a conscience of how fast they're going.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other speakers? Any others, if you want to come forward, just to kind of save a few seconds?
Oh, okay. Thank you. My name is Ken Rossen, and I live on the boardwalk. I walk daily on the boardwalk. And as a number of my residents here that I know that also live on the boardwalk, let me just support what they're saying. We have an issue as far as traffic on the boardwalk. Let me state the obvious, I know all you council members know this. The boardwalk is a tremendous asset for Newport Beach, and we need to support that asset, and I believe you're trying to do that. You're trying to find rules that'll help us do that. I have the opportunity to come in contact with guests every summer, and many of them come back here, summer after summer. And as one gentleman said with the bicycle business, you hear his numbers, they're renting bikes and they're using them, and that's part of their enjoyment experience of coming to Newport Beach. I watch them, the families come, they rent the bikes, the kids go out on a bike ride down to the wedge. They love that opportunity. So, it's something that we need to have, that continues to be safe for them to do on the boardwalk. I support what Councilman Duffield said, that my understanding is the California Vehicle Code differentiates on electric bicycles between pedal assist and throttle only. And throttle-only are not allowed in numerous locations. So, I would just, I'll leave that to the city staff to look into that. I've not heard about this. Federal regulation allows all motorized vehicles, bicycles, excuse me, to be the same. I truly believe if the state of California differentiates between throttle and pedal assist, we can do that here. What I see in my daily walking on the boardwalk, the people that are exceeding the bicycle speed limit on the boardwalk are typically those on throttle assists, and they're not going by me at eight miles an hour, they're going by me at 20 miles an hour. And it's actually scary how fast they pass. If I'm walking and I step out to pass somebody, and I make the mistake of not checking, but they go by me on my left at 20, I step right into them, and they can't react in time. The one other thing I would suggest on the hoverboards, I've had the experience with young kids on hoverboards on the boardwalk, having what I believe is the same issue, that the reason is that we passed a law that there's no skateboards allowed. Skateboards get kicked out, and people have accidents on the skateboards, and they hit somebody in the ankle, break an ankle, or cause injury to another person on the boardwalk. That's the same thing I've seen on the hoverboards, is young people get out there and they're using the hoverboards, they're not experienced with them, and they kick the boards out, and I've actually been hit by a hoverboard by somebody that was riding it. So, to me, I think a little more study needs to go into understanding exactly how safe a hoverboard is, if it's more like a skateboard or if it's not. I'd like to understand if the city staff has looked at that, or maybe we can look a little deeper into that. But I, in closing, I'd just like to say, the peninsula during the summer has a real parking issue. And you have a number of residents and a number of guests that come, park their car, and don't use it for the week that they're coming to stay. They use bicycles to get around. I use bicycles during the summer to get around. So, I just ask you, please, think very seriously about how important this boardwalk is for us. It is a main artery for us. I would say, other than Balboa Boulevard, there's no through-street that has more traffic than the boardwalk has during the day during the summer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other public comments?
Hi, good evening. My name is Carol Ita. I am the new owner at Segway Orange County. I'm a little bit nervous, if you can excuse me. We've only been, my husband and I have only been owners since May 1st. My father and his partner started Segway Orange County in 2004. We are proud that we have never had an accident on the boardwalk. We are the only Segway authorized tour facility on the peninsula, and with that comes stringent guidelines from Segway, such as that our guide-to-ratio limit is a lot less than our competitors who also do a lot of rentals, and we choose to not do rentals. If we do, we have to be very confident in the people we rent to. Okay, so, we are happy to continue to honor the agreements that we have been jointly agreed to in 2010. And as part of the training protocol, our tour guides are trained with established procedures, and our personal transports, our units themselves are set at what's called the turtle mode, which is eight miles an hour. So, our units with Segway Orange County are not capable to go any faster than eight miles an hour. The large tours that you see on the boardwalk, they are not us. We do not participate in the large tours. We know of a couple of other tour facilities that do the large tours, and we choose not to. We do not go on the boardwalk on weekends or holidays, we do not operate tours on holidays. It's just too crowded and too much of a risk. We would like to ask that the council would consider regulating and coming up with permits, permitting and regulating the Segway tours in Newport Beach. We are all for safety, and we would like to continue our record of being injury-free. The hoverboards are in no way affiliated with Segway. They are very dangerous, and it's our recommendation that they are not allowed on the boardwalk. And we do not go into some of the other areas that other complaints have resulted from, such as schools and private residences. We're very particular with our route, and we appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak, and we very much value our relationship with the city of Newport Beach and look forward to continuing it, and we thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Any other speakers, please come forward. Seeing none. All right, let's bring it back up here. I don't see any council members wanting to speak. Does anybody want to speak? Yes, please. Mr. Currie.
Well, thank you all for the testimony. This is one of those issues where the council needs to strive to seek balance between our visitors, between the residents, between public safety, between the visitor experience. I think as it relates to bicycles, on the boardwalk, the issue is speed. I have an electric bike, I get passed all the time by some guy in spandex who's pedaling. So, the issue is speed, and whether it's an electric assist bike or whether it's a racing bike, that needs to be the focus of our enforcement. I think as people get older, we're going to have more and more electric bikes, I think we should encourage that. And I think the key is making sure that all of them operate through the speed limit. I particularly appreciate the comments from the operator from one of the surry places, because frankly, surries are not safe on the street, in my opinion. I think we need to limit them in terms of time of operation, in terms of the number of them, but let them be on the boardwalk where that makes sense for slow-moving people in a four-person surry, where they're trying to do some tourism while they're here on their vacation. And it makes sure that by keeping the number and time down, that it becomes less of a problem. Segways, I'm glad to hear that we have a path. I think the key there is maybe taking them on a route through the alleys or through non-busy streets, so that that becomes part of their experience, because I can see where that is a problem, and I, for one, am not comfortable at all with hoverboards and skateboards and that kind of thing. So, I hope that's helpful in terms of advice, but those would be my comments.
Very good. Mr. Peter?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I guess I'm a little bit of a loss, because we spend a lot of time and energy on traffic studies, and we're constantly looking at our roadway systems, and we're adding lanes, synchronizing lights, and doing all of these things for traffic, and yet, it seems like we've ignored the boardwalk for 50 years. We haven't widened it, we haven't improved it, we haven't extended it, we now have multiple modes of transportation that are using it. And my suggestion is, is that we do like other cities have done, and let's look at an improvement plan, let's go out into the community and get, you know, community feedback on it. I would be in favor of both widening the boardwalk and adding a bicycle lane that would be separate, like other cities have done. I have no problem phasing those kinds of things, maybe putting the bicycle lane in the busy areas, maybe around the piers, and then maybe gradually extend it throughout the entire length of the beach. Having all of these modes on the boardwalk is better than having them on the streets, because our streets function more poorly as a result of all of these different modes on them as well. So, I agree there's a safety issue, and thank you very much for those that have come down and spoken tonight, because I think you do reiterate a lot of the concerns that we all have in addressing this issue. And I think it is a public safety issue, but I think the solution is, is, you know, let's provide a better avenue for both visitors and residents to enjoy it, and let's put it on the beach where it's much more enjoyable, and let's alleviate the conflicts that we have on the roadways, so the roadways move better. As I understand the process, if we decided that we wanted to add a parallel bike lane on this, we'd have to go prepare the plans, we'd go through the community process and getting feedback as far as how wide, where, how far away, all of those details would be determined, then we have to go to the coastal commission for approval, and then we'd have to go out to bid and actually do the construction. The construction work may be the fastest timeline in that whole process. You know, if we wanted to put a bicycle lane out in just a portion of this, let's say around Newport Pier, I suspect that the soonest we'd be able to get it out there would be not before this next summer in 2017, but probably the summer of 2018. So, my recommendation too is that we get the ball rolling on this now, because it is a multi-year process. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just wondering about the enforcement of this, is it feasible? Chief Lewis could help me out with this, maybe in terms of, it's pretty, it seems like the boardwalk, you could identify the high-peak use of it. Now, I go there on weekends, you know, summer, February, it's freezing, I don't go. So, there's times I notice when there's just a ton of people, and I'm wondering if those hours are condensed, and could we enforce during those hours more, with more officers? Or is that, is it just all the time, every day, every minute? To me, it seems like there's, we could identify the peak times and then send more of your folks there to help out enforcing it.
Mr. Duffield, that's an interesting concept to look at, and we do regulate that now with the piers, with the beach as well. I mean, our beach closes at 10 o'clock. I mean, so if we're talking about doing something where we allow certain modes of transportation on the bike or on the boardwalk between certain hours, it's an interesting concept. I think it's something to look at. And all these things that we've, that our residents have expressed here today are things that we're very well acquainted with in terms of the issues out there. So, I think options like that are absolutely something to take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments up here? Okay, so, staff, you're looking for some direction. Let me just see if I can summarize a couple of things. I think just teeing off that last comment, I think, maybe before we get into structural changes, we could look to seeing if some of these use improvements, usage improvements, number one, looking at the definitions, trying to synchronize our definitions with the state vehicle code, number one. I'd like more clarity. We certainly want to allow whatever mode of transportation that's permitted on the boardwalk to accommodate handicap people, ADA restrictions. I think, I want some, I do feel we need some clarity around that. One of the speakers identified, maybe just like your license plate, has a handicap signal or symbol on it. Is there any kind of designation we can make for handicap? Now, I know that there are all kinds of real rules about that, but if you could come back to us and clarify that, that looking at days of the week, hours of the day, in terms of usage on the boardwalk, to reduce the high-period usage, speed, signage, segway use. I do hear this from residents a lot, that the, kind of the snake of eight or nine or 10 segways, so maybe there's an opportunity to look at what is the safest number. I know there are two operators, front and back, so maybe two or four, or I'm not going to suggest, but that needs to be looked at. The surries, now, Mr. Currie just said, maybe they could come back. We prohibit them now, maybe they could come back in low usage to keep them off the street. But if they, if we cannot find a solution for the surries, they really, I mean, we don't want to put people on the street unless it's between 6:00 and 8:00 a.m. to put them on the boardwalk. I don't know what would be a reasonable hour to put the surries, because they are now double-wide. So, perhaps some ideas around surries. And I would support restricting and prohibiting the hoverboards. Did I, anybody want to add anything that I may have missed? Oh, and the electric bikes, to differentiate between the throttle bikes and the pedal assist, I think that was an excellent idea. You could outline the path that it would take to structurally change. I think that's a huge undertaking, coastal commission, community, it would, just as Mr. Peter said, it would take a long time. You could point out that there are some built-in obstacles to that, and I know it's been talked about for decades. Mr. Petros, any bicyc- Mr. Petros, any bicycle plan, master plan thoughts to, okay. Mr. Muldoon.
I just don't think we should go too far in ban fun. Some of these kids that come down to the boardwalk and they should have fun. I think skateboarding is fun for them. I think rollerblading is fun for them. I think hoverboards are fun for them. And the notion that they slip off and hit someone and hurt them is laughable because that's not the way they work. They're very slow-moving. I've been on one, ma'am, shaking your head. They're very slow-moving. You may get injured yourself if you're on it, but hey, welcome to America. Welcome to liberty and having fun. So, you know, it's kind of disturbing to hear people come in with the whole litany, like they want everything banned. There's some reasonable things that I think we should be worried about, like the surries or electrical bikes going too quickly. But at some point, that's why I appreciated Mrs. Oberman's opinion on sort of a tiered system. Not everything has to be banned. For whatever reason, maybe it's a Back to the Future movie, I'm going to the mat for hoverboards. But I hope that my colleagues consider talking to some younger people who use these hoverboards, skateboards or other items before just deciding to ban fun on the peninsula.
Now, skateboards are currently prohibited, you know, in our ordinance.
Well, I think maybe we should overturn that, but I know I won't win that one.
Oh, my.
Skating is not a crime, but thank you.
Well, skateboards, roller skates are okay, but skateboards are prohibited. Okay. Any other comments? So staff, I think you've got a long list and to come back with a report or what would you suggest?
Can I clarify the direction?
Sure.
Just to make sure that staff understands clearly, rather than prohibiting any use at this time, council is looking for us to come back with some ways to perhaps regulate the use of surries and segways on the boardwalk, perhaps through a permitting system to investigate.
Or days of the week. Surries are a problem, I think. See if there's any way to accommodate, but I really think it's difficult when they can't go on the streets.
Okay, so this is investigating if there's any way that can be done. If not, we would come back with a recommendation to prohibit them, but again, that would be phased out over a certain period of time. Is that correct?
Yes.
And rather than prohibiting other rolling devices such as hoverboards and e-bikes, to come back also with some direction of, excuse me, with some opinions on how perhaps those can fit into the boardwalk uses and how we can also incorporate the codes from the CVC, the definitions, excuse me, from the California Vehicle Code into our municipal codes so they can be actually enforced.
I'd like to have some experiential data on the hoverboards. They're a new device, new vehicle. How other coastal cities with bike paths are dealing with them might be helpful.
And therefore, we are looking at a cleanup of Newport Beach Municipal Code.
Yes.
We'll bring that forward and some of these will be incorporated into that effort. Also, in terms of infrastructure, I'm hearing some mixed opinions on that. Should we come back with a proposal to do a study of the infrastructure of the boardwalk, maybe not necessarily widening it or lengthening it right away, maybe phasing it in, perhaps looking at the E to G Street extension or addressing the oceanfront parking lot issue?
I personally like that idea to look at the Newport Pier area and the E Street. That's been a continuous issue. To look at that, yes, I would recommend.
And then to come back at a later time.
What's involved with that, yes.
Okay, okay.
Well, I want to thank you, Tara. I know you've worked a long time on this and I know that we've had several town hall meetings on this, so I appreciate staff's good work and the work of prior citizens committees have been working on this for a long time and hopefully we can get our arms around this now. So thank you and Andy, thank you so much for your help. Moving on to the next item, Mr. Kiff. I think we're running out of time. What would you suggest we do concerning, how many people are here for the?
Besides our good friends from the county, did anybody come for the sand discussion? Had a couple of folks. Let me ask, is there ever a possibility we could move that to the nighttime presentation because the nighttime's kind of quiet? I don't know if it works for these guys' schedule though.
Could we put it on the first item on this evening?
Can you guys stay a little longer? Understood, Mr. Petros. Sorry, yeah.
So the first.
Onto presentations after 7:00, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, why don't we just put it, if that is all right with folks that could stay? How many people would stay? Raise your hand. The county people and any residents? All right. Why don't we just put that, if that's okay with you? All right. All right. Madam Clerk.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Do we have public comments? Please come forward. Seeing none. Going once, twice. All right, we are in recess for about 10 minutes and we'll reconvene at 7:00 p.m. for our regular meeting. What? We'll reconvene our meeting, the regular meeting of the Newport Beach City Council, June 28th, 2016. Madam Clerk.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Protem Muldoon and remain standing for the invocation, Dr. Stan Smith of the Harbor Christian Church.
Just grab any mic. Is that, thank you for allowing me to be here to share this with you this evening. Let's at least be in an attitude of reverence and prayer. Loving and luminous spirit, you who are the source of all of life, help us tonight to remember that you are the foundation of every living being, of every part of this creation, that you are present in every faith and nationality and race, economic level, social status and even political persuasion. Remind us that everyone is welcome at the table. And we ask tonight your blessing upon the work and the will of our elected council members and the city officials. May their intentions be noble and trustworthy and may their unique contributions to our city be valued and appreciated. Give them a spirit of adventure, allowing them to serve with faithful abandon. We ask that all those here be gentle movers toward a beautiful city of which we all can be proud. We know that your spirit invites us all to the dance and may we not be timid or retiring, but bold in vision and gracefulness. Bring light to our days and peace to our
Madam Clerk.
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn your cell phones off or set them in silent mode. Now's the time for city council announcements.
Mr. Petros.
Actually, Madam Mayor, I don't know if, sorry, we're a little bit backed up.
Oh, of course.
If now would be the time for the, for the members at home, audience members at home, we didn't get to one study session item and in honor of the people that attended that, indeed our county friends, if that's okay with the council, we were going to do that presentation right now.
Yes, so let me announce, it was actually study session item number six, the Orange County Public Works Lower Santa Ana River dredging sand management project. So, Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Please and sorry about the rush tonight and getting into your time to have dinner. This is a very important project and we did want to have you and the public here tonight. What we're talking about tonight, we talked a little bit about in our capital improvement project as we went through that, about a large county project coming forward. What this project involves is the removal of about a million yards of beach-quality sand out of the Santa Ana River and placement on our beaches. And for the sake of the audience, how important this project is, this sand is vital to maintaining the viability of our beaches, keeping them safe, keeping a white enough beach that we don't have storm damage when we have winter storms and coming up on the houses. So we've been working hand-in-hand with the county on this project for almost a year and a half now. There's already been some public outreach going on. Deputy Director Mark Vkojevich and Assistant City Engineer Mike Sinekory have been working county staff and gone out to several HOAs, already started the discussion. Tomorrow night, they're going to be going to the West Newport Association to talk more about that. But we also wanted to have the county down tonight to talk to you about the project, get any feedback and let the public hear about the project. So with that, I'm going to introduce Nardi Khan. She's the acting deputy director with the County of Orange Public Works Department. She's got her project staff with her tonight and she'll introduce them as needed.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor Dixon and members of the city council. I wanted to thank you first of all for inviting us here. Thank you, Dave, for the introduction. We have been working with the city on this very important project and it's my pleasure to introduce it. As Dave said, my name is Nardi Khan. I'm the interim deputy director for our Infrastructure Program Service Area and we've been working on this project for a little bit of time here and we've done a lot of analysis and we wanted to present to you what our plans are. So objectives of our project, first is to maintain conveyance of the flood control channel. Through inspections that we've done of the Santa Ana River, it has come to our attention that the facility has been impacted by a lot of sand deposits. Some are coming in from the tidal action and we need to restore that capacity. So we are removing that sand from the channel and we would like to restore that sand. Again, as Dave had explained, very important for us to nourish our beaches and keep that sand where it belongs to protect the properties that have those beachfront amenities. We also, and I would list this probably as our most important goal here, is to maintain public safety both during the project activities and during any storm event. The reason why we do maintenance on our flood control channels is to protect the public from flood events. Our potential contractor on this project is CJW Construction. We are working on this project on what's called a construction manager at risk method, which means we made a solicitation and we've identified contractors that are qualified and CJW is the one that we had selected for the first phase of the project, which is to support us during design. So what they do with that is they come in and they look at our plans and specifications and they give us their opinion on what's doable, what's not doable, what they may have learned from other projects perhaps that can be implemented here for any other dredging project that they have done, how they've communicated with the public and they also have a PR firm to help us, again, communicate all of that with the members of the public. So the project location is on this slide here and this identifies the source of the sand material that is going to be removed from the Santa Ana River, which is just upstream of Adams Avenue and goes all the way down to the ocean outlet mouth. Through those stretches, there are some areas that have dry sand material and there are others that are submerged. And this was one of the great advantages for us on having this construction manager process because we were able to bring the contractor in early to help us identify how we would remove this material, being that it's in different zones. And I also show here some of the city boundaries. Most of the project is an unincorporated area and there are a few patches in Newport Beach. However, the, this is mostly the site where we find the sand and then the deposit area is shown on the next exhibit, which is basically what we propose to do is take a pipe from the dredge material and bring it out to the offshore area. So just some numbers for you. The project reach where we are removing the sand is about three and a half miles and material, we are cutting some material, about 400,000 cubic yards and we do have some areas that are scoured where we need to fill. So we need some fill material, about 30,000 cubic yards, which gives us a net of about 400,000 cubic yards that the project is going to generate. And that number can vary. Field conditions do change. We may have to do a little bit of overdredge. Overall, somewhere between 400,000 and 600,000 cubic yards will be generated from the project and placed at the deposit site. Our deepest cut within the channel is seven feet, deepest fill is 17 and the 17 feet is at the deposit site. We do have regulatory approvals from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. They look at what we're generating, the quality and how we protect water quality. We also have 1600 agreement with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to make sure that all species are protected during the project activities. And we've been working also with the California Coastal Commission. They have indicated that they will tentatively hear our project and consider it for a coastal approval in July of 2016. So we're working on that with the Coastal Commission.
Madam Mayor, a quick question.
Yes.
These red lines that you had on the previous exhibit, maybe it's the same as here, are these just pipelines or are they going to be actual tracks where you've got equipment moving?
So these lines here, and yes, there's a better depiction on this slide here, is more of the piping layout. This is how we would take the material and where it would be deposited. So you can see the proposed discharge piping location is labeled in red and we propose to start with at least three pipelines going out into the ocean, but we may have to add more depending on the production rates. But yes, these are pipelines. These are not vehicle tracks. And the advantage of the pipeline is that you do reduce trucking. You don't have to truck the material. It just conveys through the pipeline.
So they'll be above the sand or do they get, are they submerged?
This area here is submerged. The area in the dark crosshatch here, I don't know if this point or what.
I mean, the pipes, are they above the sand?
So the pipes on the beach are installed in a V ditch and there's a small area that would be exposed. We can't bury them completely because otherwise they would be damaged, but it shouldn't be an impediment to foot movement or anything like that.
Nardi, your next slide shows that.
Yeah, so this right here was just kind of showing where the pipes would take you to in the ocean. And then the next one, thank you, Dave, shows a cross-section of the piping. So if you look at the lower left, you can see the pipeline and you can see how we create a V ditch. We put the pipeline in and then we put some sand on both sides so that it's protected, but then the top is exposed.
So back to your previous slide, so will there be sand burms created or is all this going out into the water?
All of the sand is going into the water.
Maybe just to clarify on that, they're going to be working in the growing field mainly between 26th Street and 46th Street, placing the sand in the near shore. So you won't have it directly on the beach. It'll be put into the water. There's a large hole, as Nardi said, it's about 17 feet deep there. They're also using that manifold system because they'll be opening and closing different pipes so they can place it and let it move around. Sorry to interrupt.
No problem. And then tidal action will be bringing some of the sand back onto the shore, but we won't be placing it directly on the beach, no. Here's just another depiction of the, where the pipeline would go and it would be placed behind the lifeguard towers. Again, what you will see from the ground is just the top of the pipe in those areas. Anticipated schedule for the project, we're currently working with our contractor to iron out the details of our start date, but we anticipate setup in the next few months and operations beginning in early fall of 2016 with operations concluding in May of 2017. So those are the big milestones on the project. So, those are the big milestones on the project. Preparation for the project, there's some general information for you, is we would be working 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. And the equipment in the channel, however, the dredge will be operating 24/7. Signs and fencing would be, will be installed for public safety, both in staging areas and any work zones, to keep the public out of those areas. But like I say, they are minimal, they're still full beach access. As we lay the pipeline, it will be partially visible, we talked about that. And the beaches will remain open, we may have to do some spot closures as we install pipeline in some areas, and then we'll be working with the city on that. We also anticipate a closure of the river bike trail on the east side. The west side will remain open, and we will have a detour. And large vehicles that are not bringing the sand in, but as they're working in the river, will yield to public traffic and emergency responders. Here's an exhibit of the bike closure area. It's on the east side, it goes basically from PCH over to Hamilton, and we will have detours bringing bicyclists from the east side over to Hamilton, to the west side of the bike path, and then back down on PCH. So, outreach efforts, it's very important to the county that the public remains informed. That's one of the purposes of our attendance at the meeting today. We will have other public meetings as well. We've identified our stakeholders, and we are working on presentations, working with the city, and Dave mentioned it a little bit too, we've been going to HOAs to talk about the project, answer questions. We'll be having open houses and informing the public, you know, as widespread media as we can, using social media. And we have our Public Information Officer here, Shannon Widor, who's going to be leading a lot of those efforts. If you have any questions about how we're approaching that, we'll be glad to answer them. And with that, I'll try to wrap it up. I know we were running a little bit behind, so I'll answer any questions you may have.
And before your questions, just one other point I wanted, the benefit of this project, as you can see, is great for our public beaches on the oceanfront. We've also been working with the county to take up to 50,000 yards of this material and bring it over to some of our bay beaches. So, we're planning a nourishing Baobab Island, China Cove, and some others. In your capital improvement project you recently passed, the council put a half million dollars in there to help bring this material over. I'm not sure what the final quantity for Baobab Island is, it could be 20,000, 30,000 yards, but it's a great benefit. It's the same material that we put in the Grand Canal recently, which is really nice sand, the people are really loving that. So, that's just a side benefit out of this project. There may be also some beach grooming involved, staff's working with the county now because we've got some beach areas that need to be groomed out there, maybe we can do it as part of the project and even move some sand maybe further down past the pier to some areas that are deficient.
Have you inquired of some of the other beach areas to make sure if they are interested in having any of the sand delivered?
We have, we'd have to work with the county. Where we need sand is down by 15th Street, we've had a big erosion problem down there. However, the permitting through coastal and the environmental only takes it into the growing field right now. So, if we could work out a deal, we'd also need some budgetary authority too if we get to that point where council have to maybe contribute to move that sand further down the beach.
Okay, Mr. Curry.
Thank you. So, the area where you're working at the mouth of the channel has generally been referred to as Dog Beach. People come down there with their dogs. Supervisor Steele had a press conference there recently. What will be the impact of this project on the use of that spot by dog owners and going forward?
So, the project is not changing the use of the area in any way, but we would be removing sand, any sandbar that has formed in that area. We do expect that the tides will be bringing some of that sand back in, so it should be a temporary impact. But yeah, we're looking at the removal of some of that material.
So, I think your answer is, is that you're going to basically eliminate what's now the sandbar really, that people use for Dog Beach?
It is part of the project that some of that area would be removed.
We want to be clear about that, I just want to make sure I understand what's going on. Thank you.
Any other questions up here? Nope, all right, let's, thank you very much, appreciate it. Mr. Webb, any other comments that you want to make before we go to the public?
No open for questions.
Okay. Yes, members of the public, please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I also was going to ask about the impact on the Dog Beach, but that's been answered, so the only other comment I would make is to clarify that this matter will indeed be item 27P on the Coastal Commission's agenda in San Diego on July 14th, and it comes just before the City of Newport Beach's own request for habitat restoration at Big Canyon Creek.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, I'll come back to the council. Mayor Potem?
Just, would you mind, I have one question for me? So, you're familiar with Dog Beach?
Yes, yes I am.
Do you have a baseball cap at Dog Beach, baseball cap yet?
No, I don't.
Okay. The area in question, when your project is complete, how much of Dog Beach will still exist?
Immediately after, that area would be removed, but again, we've seen the tidal action bring that sand back in, so we expect it to restore. To what extent, it will just depend on the tidal action. But we are not recontouring or adding any material there with the project.
Do you know how long the tidal action will take?
I couldn't predict, we've had some really high tide. I'll tell you, we did a removal between the jetty and the levee not too long ago, about five months ago, and within three days, it was all full again. So, it really does depend on how quickly the sand moves, and it just depends on the tide. So, it's difficult to predict, but we've seen it move fairly quickly.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none. Well, thank you very much, appreciate it, and we look forward to your successful project completion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Thank you for the opportunity to bring this up forward.
Yes, and thank you for staying over, appreciate it. All right, now we will do city council announcements. Mr. Petros.
For the last three and a half years, I have served on this Newport Beach City Council, and I believe I've done so with honor and distinction. It has been my pleasure and a blessing to represent the people of Newport Beach. I have come at this honestly and with a great deal of integrity. When I have said something, I follow through and I do it. You know what you get when it comes from Tony Petros. And that's why it's with a heavy heart that I have to make an announcement, that I have suspended my election campaign, and will not be seeking reelection to the Newport Beach City Council. As recently as last week, I have had opportunities through my work to gain more responsibilities and greater roles. I'm also the only son of an ailing mother, and I have neglected her and the care and treatment that she really needs. So, this doesn't come easy for me, but for reasons of my family and my career, I will serve out the remainder of my term, and then I will leave the Newport Beach City Council. That's the announcement I make tonight. I will make no other comments about that tonight, and I, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Curry.
Well, before I go into my announcement, I just want to note for the record, what a tremendous public servant that Tony Petros has been to the City of Newport Beach, and how sacrificially he's given to make this a better community. We have all benefited from his wisdom, we are going to miss him significantly, and his leadership going forward on this council is a great loss for our city. And we should all, I think, be disappointed that we'll not have his continued leadership here. I, however, have little choice in the matter. Under the term limit law, I will be leaving in November, and for a variety of reasons, some of us up here are counting those days off as quickly as they can come, and I'm one of them. But I am going to host a community forum in my district, District 7, on July the 8th, Thursday, and I have invited all of the candidates running for District 7, recalling in a job interview, to come and have some conversation about the issues confronting our city and their vision for the city going forward. And I look forward to inviting each and every one of you to come to the Newport Coast Community Center, 5:30 on July 28th, to participate in that. I think it'll be informative and interesting. Thank you.
Mr. Souchen. Mr. Pieter. Mr. Duffield.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to announce that the Castaways has a newest amenity, excited about it. It now is having the Newport Outrigger Canoe Club, which is the oldest canoe club in the harbor, started in 1962. It is the largest children's program in the county, excuse me, in the harbor, and in has, well, as adult competitive and recreational programs. And in February of 2015, I got a call from their vice president, I can't pronounce his last name, Peter Ting, saying they had nowhere to go and they were going to be kicked out, and they were going to, would be the end of the Newport Outrigger Canoe Club as we knew it. And so, he was asking for my help, and we tried to get him over to Marina Park, and I told Laura Detwolder about it, and she was, she told me the reasons why they couldn't go there, and I understood that, and very sad. But we came up with the Castaways, and she and her staff, which I commend, worked hard to figure out a way to get them there, they're now there. And their great outfit, they're very, very devoted to teaching and working with, as I said, kids and adults to enjoy outrigger paddling in our harbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potem?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Petros for his service, and it's going to be a real loss to the city because it's very apparent, those who are going to serve with Tony and who know him, that he cares very much about the city. So, thank you, Tony.
And I will make a few comments, and I too join the chorus of disappointed council members and members of the public that we will no, not be serving with Mr. Petros after this year, and it's going to be a loss, and I appreciate it. We'll have many more opportunities to commend your service and public service, and you and your family's commitment and dedication to serving the people of Newport Beach. So, this was the first of many thank yous to Tony. Just a couple of announcements I want to make. I had the pleasure last weekend to be in Indianapolis, Indiana, for the 84th Annual Meeting of the U.S. Conference of Mayors. 200 mayors across the country were there, and three, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, three full days of meetings, there's, it's no R and R, it's three full days, so it was very productive. One specific transportation-related resolution, there are dozens of resolutions that the mayors work on throughout the year, does gain our support. It's a resolution that was passed to direct the FAA to work with communities as they plan their RNAV flight paths to require notification and consultation with airport operators and the community, and this fits right in with our, under Mr. Petros's leadership, our aviation committee's desire to make sure that the FAA listens to communities. So, mayors across the country are experiencing the same kind of FAA issues that we are in Newport Beach, so we are not alone. Also, I had several highly productive discussions with some of the online vacation rental companies that were there meeting with the mayors, and I believe it was productive and will help inform our path forward because, as we've had a number of community meetings on this subject, Airbnb and VRBO and other online rental companies, I think we can come up with some solutions that work for our businesses and our neighborhoods. And also, interestingly enough, at a mayor's conference, it was highly, it was just a very interesting and rewarding experience to sit within six feet of His Holiness the Dalai Lama, who spoke on kindness and compassion in our communities, as well as, surprisingly, this was an interesting panel with Lady Gaga, who did not perform but spoke on kindness, and her key message was, "It's free, it does not cost anything, and we should all be kinder," and that's a very serious topic. And that was in, supported by a very meaningful discussion led by the mayor of Orlando, Florida. And he had debated coming to the conference because his city's been going through tremendous turmoil and strife and sadness, but felt it was important to be part of the kindness and compassion discussion, as well as also sharing, for all of us, the, from the moment he received the phone call from his police chief about the situation that was occurring at the dance club, and his confidence, which was critical to the success of that several-hour battle in his police chief and the agencies that supported Orlando, and he continues to be grateful. So, there was a lot of important early lessons learned. Earlier today, the study session, we had a presentation on avoidance of and rescue of a young toddler from drowning, and I just want to mention that last year, the Orange County Task Force on Drowning Prevention wants the communities to be aware that last year, there were 118 drowning accidents and 50, 5-0 fatalities reported in Orange County. Drowning remains the number one cause of accidental death for children between the ages of one to four. Last August, the Orange County Task Force on Drowning Prevention was formed to develop recommendations for strategies to reduce drowning incidents and fatalities in Orange County. And Newport Beach is proud to be a part of this task force and is showing support in two key ways. First, through the involvement of our staff members, lifeguard chief Rob Williams, fire captain Adam Novak, seasonal lifeguard Aaron Pierceall, and EMS division chief Kristin Thompson are participating in the task force's efforts. And second, as a city, the City of Newport Beach is committing $5,000 to support this effort. And to learn more, go to ocdrowningprevention.com, and together, we can prevent drowning, a very important message to the community. And that concludes my message, so Madam Clerk.
Public comments on consent calendar. This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion, items 1 through 18. Public comments are invited on consent calendar for members of the audience. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Members of the public, any comments on the consent calendar, please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I was actually going to comment on several of the consent calendar items at the end of your study session, but I sensed and I think correctly that you would much more appreciate a 10-minute break than hearing from me. So, I'm actually not going to talk about those, because I was going to talk about some then and some then. Now, I have no idea, I have no way to anticipate what you might be pulling from the consent calendar, so this seems to be the only opportunity that I know of to speak on item number 13, which is a special event support program funding recommendations. What I wanted to say about this, this program we have now of special event funding was an initiative, I think started about six years ago from our then-new city manager, Dave Kiff, trying to bring better transparency to the system by which certain deserving private organizations could have, be relieved of the burden of having to pay the city's special event fees. That was the original intention of it. And it still seems appropriate for new events that are of broad public interest, and especially for organizations that are struggling trying to get a foothold in the city, doing something that many of us would enjoy. However, organizations can become dependent on the city, so I'm very strongly in support of the recommendation I see in here, that as organizations keep coming back to the city, year after year, for funding the same thing, that we try to reduce their dependence on city funding. And I think we have an excellent example of that, and for those of you who have not been here that long, of the Orange County Marathon. It was not that many years ago that the city council, with different members on it, would donate to that organization $50,000 a year, I believe it was. And the council was told they could not survive without that. But the marathon has managed to wean themselves from that Newport Beach support, and are still taking place in Newport Beach and seem to be doing as well or better than ever before. taking place in Newport Beach and seem to be doing as well or better than ever before. So, I really question something like the Film Festival, whether they need massive support or whether they can wean themselves from, from that dependence on the city taxpayers. And while I think that's a good direction, the other comment I wanted to make about this is the extent we seem to be perhaps moving back into the murky world where with high transparency here, we're approving essentially a waiver of fees for certain organizations, but there seem to be other ones that are just not having to pay the fees. Like at the Corona del Mar bid meeting last week, I heard that this weekend, they're going to have a sidewalk sale. City staff decided to waive the fee for that special event. It's not something we see here. It's not part of the transparency. Botheres me a little bit. And I think you're going to soon be looking at a recommendation about the fee setting for the friends room at the library. I was surprised to hear at a, a recent library board meeting that Councilman Curry and his organization from Concordia University is perhaps the only group that's ever been charged to actually use that room. All the others are waived because of some connection with the city in some obscure way. I'm really wondering if we're moving back into that non-transparent system. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on the consent calendar? Please come forward and identify yourself.
Good evening. John DeFrenza. I live here in Newport Beach. And as similarly, not knowing what the council members will be pulling from the consent calendar, I have interest in item four. Wanted to get some clarification and just a more public discussion about that, those three, those three resolutions that are being a part of that consent calendar.
All right. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, while Mr. DeFrenza is here, that was a very eloquent presentation and I would be remiss if I didn't also say that this gentleman makes the finest hot dog on Balboa Island. Crocker's Hot Dogs, if you haven't been there, please go visit top-notch, over-the-top, best hot dog in, in Orange County, I will go so far as to say.
Frank Crocker thanks you. He's a first-paid fire chief at City Newport Beach dating back to 1927, 25 years of service.
Well, thank you for sharing that, both of you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I have a PowerPoint. Are you going to advance the slides for me?
Could you please identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Suzanne Forster, Newport Beach resident. I just wanted to clear up the PowerPoint slide. Okay. So, I'm speaking on item number five, the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. And at my request, David Coffin, who evaluated the Banning Ranch Water Supply Assessment and the Urban Water Management Plan, also reviewed the 2015 IRWMP. And here are some of his conclusions. The 2015 IRWMP dramatically reduces supply projections from previous IRWMPs. It also clearly shows that there is really no surplus water for growth outside of the projected population figures found in table 2-1. Figure one is Mr. Coffin's graph. It's up there now. It contrasts the average actual historical water supply with the projected water supply. The broken yellow line is average supply since 2000 and it shows how tight water supplies will be going forward. Mr. Coffin's review of the 2010 IRWMP found that actual growth, meaning development, far exceeded projected growth with no thought to water supply because a water supply assessment wasn't required for the vast majority of projects. He asked the question, "How many dwelling units were built in the city since 2005 that did not trigger a WSA?" The answer was stunning. In just five years, the city's rise in housing exceeded the IRWMP's 20-year projected growth by 380% or 5,017 units. This is a quote, "I didn't expect that growth could be so under-projected in an IRWMP that it would decidedly tip the scale towards insufficient water supplies in just five years. Not surprisingly, the WSA didn't acknowledge this new housing, which meant the water could be viewed as unused surplus. The project's WSA simply ignored the new housing. An acknowledgement that it was growing would have created pressure on the developer to find new water supplies." So, 517 units is five times as big as the proposed Banning Ranch project, which is going to take 200 million gallons of water a year. And if my math is correct, five times 200 million gallons is a billion gallons of water. Now, this is not a direct comparison. The Banning Ranch project has a hotel, amenities and commercial space. That takes a lot of water, but 517 units is a lot of unreported water. So, figure six, next slide. And here we see a 21% drop in water supply projections from the 2005 to the 2010 IRWMP and a 7.9% drop from 2010 to the 2015 IRWMP. And that's a cumulative drop of nearly, nearly 30%. In his October 2015 report to the Coastal Commission on the Banning Ranch WSA, Mr. Coffin found that 21% of the projected water supply was in fact paper water, which is water that is being used to support development, but in reality is not available. The cumulative drop of nearly 30% in figure six further confirms that the 2005 projections on which the Banning Ranch WSA was based were significantly over-inflated with paper water. In a recent editorial by Susan Skinner, she states that 4,069 new homes were proposed by the city just this year. The estimated water demand for these homes... Is that it?
Yeah, that's it. If you just conclude your sentence, please.
Okay. The estimated water demand for these homes is 550 million gallons of water per year. How much of this demand will go unreported because it's not part of a WSA? Probably most of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next comment, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Jim Walker, President of the Newport Beach Restaurant Association. I wanted to comment on item number four on the consent calendar. First of all, what we're asking for the city to consider, the city council, is a change in our bid fee structure. For the past two years, the Restaurant Association has spent a lot of time, sent out surveys and accumulated information to look at the best way to assess our members. Currently, our fee structure is such that some members don't pay enough, some members pay too much. What we're trying to do is level the playing field and make it a simpler system. Currently, it's based on number of employees. Some people don't report all their employees. Some people like markets. It's unfair to charge them based on number of employees because they pay too much. So, what we've done and what we're looking at doing is doing it by classification. And in doing that, it really makes it a fairer system and we feel that it would be a lot easier rather than having to put an onus on accounting and put the onus on the city to try and count employees. The other thing that's in question is we are looking to waive all the past due fees. The reason that we're doing that is because probably for the past 15 years that I've been part of the Restaurant Association, collecting fees has been an ongoing problem. When Scott Palmer was our bid administrator, he went out and tried collections. As you know, I also set on the CDM bid, we tried amnesty. Unfortunately, collecting those fees, in terms of the content, right now, it's approximately 60,000 in past due fees. Out of that 60,000, there's approximately 30% of those fees that are businesses that are out of business. Secondly, the fee structure itself is a 25% penalty per quarter, which means it's a 100% penalty per year. Part of the other problem is in the billing system through the city, the stakeholders were not informed of the past due amount, so consequently, it was a surprise to them. We have one restaurant in particular that owes about $8,000 that's never paid their bid fees. The other problem is there's no ramification for paying the bid, for not paying the bid fee. If you don't pay your bid fee, what happens? There's nothing that has been done or tried that the teeth, there's any teeth in the city to go out and make some type of a ramification for not paying your bid fee. So, our feeling is, as we move forward and we try and, and implement this new program to forgive the bid fees that are past due and start fresh and start with the new city program, which is a little bit more of a modification of bid fee penalty. The other thing that we feel, we will do a better job of collecting. For one, we've already done that. Our collections are better this year, but we are looking, as we move, to have Visit Newport do our accounting, to have an opportunity to collect these via credit card. Plus, I think having it in-house will have a better opportunity to be more effective on collecting those good fees. So, I would encourage you to please take a look and consider this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please come forward.
That's fine. All right. Hi. I'm Victoria Crocker DeFrenza. So, I'm a crocker. Great hot dogs. I'm here to speak on number four. I'm seriously concerned as a restaurant owner. We've just expanded our restaurant, so now we, we're kind of a larger restaurant. And I didn't know anything about this program, this Restaurant Association, when I opened my restaurant. And my concern is, I, I receive zero benefit from this. In my first year, I paid $90 for this program and I've received nothing. When I go online to look it up, my name shows up with my logo and nothing else. And now they want to assess us at $500 for the year. So, that is a 500% increase. And I've, I've received nothing. So, I'm just asking you to consider that small little businesses on Balboa Island who are forced to pay $500 for just a logo that shows up on a website, which I already have and Yelp already does for me, which is why we're so busy. Every single person who comes to my eatery shows me where they found us on Yelp. Not one person has ever showed me they found me because of this Restaurant Association. So, I'd, I'd either like to receive something for the $500 they're going to assess us if it goes through, or I'd like to be, I'd like you guys to seriously reconsider some other program and actually let me know what I'm getting for it. Because right now, if you look me up, there's one logo, which is sort of our logo, and it says, "We serve hot dogs." That's it. Well, we serve a lot more and we are really busy. So, you know, I mean, I just like my, my value for what I'm spending. Restaurants are expensive to operate. Everyone who owns one knows that. So, that's my thought.
Thank you very much.
My name is Marcel Ford, President of the Balboa Village Merchant Association. Talking about item 13, I believe, the events contribution from the city. Is that correct? Just want to say thank you very much for all your past support. In November, we had the Balboa Craft Beer Festival. It cost us about 35,000 to do. We made 45,000. In April, we did the Balboa Craft Beer Festival again. We bumped the tickets up from 500 to 750. Think we made about 12,000 on that event. And we're looking forward to doing our Balboa Chili Cookoff and Chalk Walk in October. And again in November, the another Balboa Craft Beer Festival. So, I took Diane's, excuse me, Mayor Dixon's suggestion to start charging. This time of last year, we had zero in our account. I think we owed $2,500 in payables. This year, we have about $11,000 in the account. It's the first time it's ever happened in 15 years. Scott Palmer will testify to that. So, every little bit that you guys give us helps with the seed money, the Christmas tree lighting ceremony that we're going to be doing in December, et cetera. So, we're just here to ask for your support, continued support and flexibility and all our permits and everything else that goes on and on and on. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Please come forward. All right. Seeing none, we'll come back to council. So, we'll start Mr. Petros. Mr. Curry. Mr. Salich.
16.
Mr. Piattar.
13.
Mr. Duffield.
I have to recuse myself on item 13. I have to do business with visitor Newport Beach.
Mr. Mary Portem Maldun. And I would like to poll number four, please. All right. So, we'll take the first item, I guess, number four and...
We need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
It's okay. Move the balance consent calendar, items one through 18. Clarifications provided by staff on item 14. Recuse on item 13 by Councilmember Duffield. And items four, 13 and 16 pulled by Mayor Dixon, Councilmember Piattar and Councilmember Salich, respectively.
Second.
Okay. Let's vote. All right. Now, we'll deal with the items removed from the consent calendar in order, number four, which is the resolution of the intention to amend the stakeholder business structure, the restaurant bids that we just heard discussed. The reason I'm pulling it is I did want to question, the term was used in the staff report waiving of the 61,000 in uncollected dues. I just would not like to waive that. I understand, Mr. Walker, I don't know if he's still here, mentioned that some of those businesses may no longer be in business, so maybe it's not all 61, but it's just didn't sit right with me that we would just wipe off 61,000. So, I would like to see if staff and the Restaurant Association can work together on another collection effort. And number two, with the last speaker's comment, maybe it's an opportunity to, to reemphasize the value that the Restaurant Association does provide to the restaurant businesses in our community. And I do want to compliment the Restaurant Association for its new fee structure. I hope that that will be a successful structural change, so my compliments to you on that. So, that is the reason that I am pulling it. Are there any comments that anyone would like to make? Are there any? Oh, excuse me. Mr. Piattar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Maybe staff can clarify. This is a notice of an intention to, to do these items and I see that on our draft agenda for next meeting, we're going to decide that. So, is it appropriate to go into the detail today or is that something we can deal with in two weeks?
Both of the items require multiple steps for the amendment. It's a three-step process, so there's two public meetings. Tonight is the first one and a public hearing. And for the forgiveness, it would be one public meeting, which is tonight, and a public hearing at the next meeting. So, we'll be coming back multiple times on both issues.
It's fine for giving the details. If that's what you'd like to do.
Okay. Mr. Curry.
In that regard, I act as the council's liaison to the Restaurant Association. I've had a chance to participate with the board as they've discussed these issues. And I think it's important to see sort of the forgiveness of the uncollectible fees and the change into the new fee structure that's designed to be more equitable and to, and to address people more fairly, to be sort of hand and glove. They go together as part of a comprehensive approach. And I'm hopeful when this comes back, perhaps Mr. Walker or staff can sit down with you, Mayor, and address your concerns and issues on this. I think if you look at that, that way, you see that it makes sense to do it the way it's been proposed.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments up here? All right. Should we take, do we have a motion? Oh, public, thank you. Public comments? Do we have any public comments?
Chair Dixon, Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. And as we just heard, there are going to be another couple of opportunities to comment on it. I don't know if you're locked in with your resolution of intention to the particular program that's specified in it. I think not, but if, if you were, I did want to comment on it because, first of all, I wanted to remind the council that under the state law that allows the business improvement districts, the assessments have to be based on, as we just heard from the audience complain about, the amount of benefit that the particular business is receiving from, from the district. The assessments are supposed to be proportional to the benefit for the individual businesses. And the current system is flawed, so I applaud Mr. Walker and his organization for trying to improve it, but I think the program that is announced in the resolution of intention is not quite ready for prime time. In, in particular, groceries and markets are being charged one of the highest rates, maybe lower than they're being charged now if you're a big market. However, I really have trouble seeing what benefit groceries and markets get from the Restaurant Improvement District. It is, it is promoting dining out, which is taking business away from them rather than bringing it to them, at least in my view. I think that's a problem. And there's many, many others that I don't see fit into these categories. The bid includes all businesses that serve food to the public. The bid includes all businesses that serve food to the public. But the list here is very specific of what the charges are. So if you're not on the list, I don't know if that means that you're not supposed to be charged. I would take, for example, a McDonald's. McDonald's is what we call a fast-food restaurant. It's not a full-service. It's not a fast casual. It's not any of the categories here. Is the intention that they're not going to be charged? If you were a bar serving food, I think they're exempted currently. I don't know if they're supposed to fall into the one categories now. If you're an AMPM market, is that one of the $500 ones? And then there's a whole series of categories all charged the same. One of them is specialty shop, and many of the things listed under there that seem to be specialty shops. I really think this needs some more work before you actually are planning to adopt something. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments on item number four? Please come forward.
Hi again. I'm Victoria Crocker de Frenza. And I'd just like--
Hold the mic down. Maybe just we could hear you a little bit better. Good, thank you.
Hi.
Next, good.
Okay, sorry. I'm Victoria Crocker de Frenza. And I'm not sure if you received this note. Did anybody receive this Dine Newport Beach letter? Any of you guys? That's how I knew about your meeting tonight. But I think this is very important for maybe the city attorney or somebody else to really look at and read, because this letter is letting us know how this organization is trying to stay in business. And the benefits of raising the price, to me, allow this business to thrive and actually make more money without providing us any benefits. So I'm proposing that you actually allow restaurants to choose to participate. If we receive a benefit and you want to participate and pay the money, go for it. I think it's a great plan, and it's a great idea for somebody to come along and try to help you market yourself. But I've been approached by probably 50 people who want to help me market my little eatery. And all I have to do is open the doors and put a sign up with 3 million visitors a year to the island. I don't need this. So I'm just asking you to consider perhaps allowing us to choose to participate if there is a benefit.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on item number four?
John de Frenza again. I take a different approach than my wife does. I've been councils, and I thank you for your volunteer time and the efforts that you do for a community. I've spoken to many different communities all across California as an architect. Here, I saw a situation, and I involved myself by asking to be part of the BID, so I'm one of the board of directors now, with an effort and an intent to understand what it is and the motivation that's going on here. I think that the BID is a tremendous opportunity to improve and present on an international level what opportunities there are in the restaurant world in Newport Beach. Just today, I had a family from Italy come in. I speak fluent Italian. We talked for a few minutes. They got on the Internet and posted a, "Wow, thank you, great event. Thank you so much for the experience we had." Where did they go? They didn't go to Yelp. They didn't go to Dine Newport Beach. They went to TripAdvisor. That's the international forum. Now, I applaud everything Jim Walker and Polly have done, all the years in donation and time and effort that's involved here. And I want to participate and move forward with whatever is valid and viable that grows the city of Newport Beach's image in the community. I requested to be able to speak about this issue because it is a forum discussion that starts a whole restructuring as we see forward. And it should have this type of discussion in public. What does this do for the restaurateurs? Because those are the people we're asking to tax them without management or vocal representation. 15 years of this? Great. What is it doing? How does Dine Newport Beach actually get into the Internet and the world, as my wife has said? Since March 29, 2014, we get Yelp calling us every two or three months. "We can do something for you." Really? We're already at five stars. What is it you're going to do for us? "Oh, we'll charge you a monthly fee, and we'll be able to go through and really advertise for you." We don't want it. We're okay. And there's a lot of businesses like that that perceive this. You go into the city, you get your planning entitlement to do a restaurant, you get your building permit, you get yourself built out, you open your doors, you buy your food, you get out there, and then a letter shows up. "Oh, by the way, you're supposed to pay this group, which is endorsed by the city of Newport Beach, an amount." All right, the first bill was 90 bucks. Let's live with it. We're staring at something that is a 500% increase. More discussion has to occur here. More understanding, and more complete presentation involving the restaurants needs to be understood. And a very good point, I'm sure the grocery stores are not happy about this approach, yet it seems to be slipping under the radar, unless I'm completely clueless and everybody else knows something that I don't. I thank you for your time, and I look forward to the July 12 date. This resolution moving forward is opening these discussions, and I'm very thankful for that time.
Thank you. Any further comments on item number four? Back up to the council. Any comments? Mary Staff, I'd like to just clarify, so what happens at the next meeting and how much more public discussion are we going to allow or can we allow?
The next meeting for the amendment portion will be separate from the forgiveness. So they'll be separated at that point. So for the amendment, it will be another public meeting. We'll take comments.
All right.
For the forgiveness, it will be the public hearing and to adopt an ordinance.
All right, so we'll have another opportunity. Okay, very good. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Curry has put a motion to support item four. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? All right, shall we vote?
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, item number 16, Mr. Selig.
13.
Oh, I can't count. Excuse me, thank you.
Mr. Duffield will need to recuse himself.
And Mr. Duffield will step aside. Mr. Piattar.
I asked for this to be pulled. I was looking at, as Mr. Mosher had commented, maybe weaning some of our guys off the list. And in particular, I was looking at the film festival. And staff has already recommended weaning them down a little bit from 150, 135. But they're asking not just for this year, they're asking for a three-year commitment here, so that they can make three-year or long-term commitments. And so we're not approving just the 135. We're also approving 135 for next year and the year after, if I'm correct. Tara? So I would propose that we reduce the second year to 115 and the third year to 90. That would, basically, we drop 15, and we'll drop 20, and then we'll drop 25.
Okay, Mr. Curry.
Well, the Film Festival is a premier event in Newport Beach. It brings thousands of people to the city every year. It's growing in its attendance. I think everybody who's participated in it over the years, and not all of you have, but I know the mayor has, this year has been very active in it. It's a premier event for the city. I actually believe we should have added the other 15,000. I mean, we make these knuckle-and-dime changes, and I really don't think they help. I think we ought to go, I support the multi-year agreement, and I support it at the, I think it's 151 level. So I would make a substitute motion that we fund it at that level for the three years.
Second.
I'll second that.
All right, Mr. Petros, do you want to speak?
I just, the, well, Mr. Curry has basically--
No, I'm done.
Yeah, no, you've said what I would like to say, so I'll, no, I have nothing to say.
Okay, any other comments on Mr. Piattar?
So staff's recommending 135, and you're recommending restoring the 150 for all three years. That's your motion. You know, I've attended their events. You're right, there are a lot of people there. I don't know that we're bringing a lot of business to the city. I don't think we're seeing a lot of hotel nights. I haven't seen any statistics that show that we're adding to that. I presume that we're getting some restaurants because we're getting visitors, at least for the evenings of those films. But this is a lot of subsidy for legitimately a signature event, and it's been going on now since, I think, 2012. Is that when we started subsidizing them?
We have been assisting the festival since its founding 15, 16 years ago.
Okay, so for 16 years, we've been funding them. And if they can't survive without us funding them, I'm not sure. I mean, you could take the 150,000 and put it right into our treasury as far as the tax dollars on the businesses and probably have more money if you're really looking at a return on our investment. And just like the Orange County Marathon, if they're forced to look for other alternatives, they'll be creative and come up with other alternatives. And if they can't support itself, I'm not sure it's worth supporting. I certainly don't want to support it at a higher level, but I think weaning them off is a reasonable way to do it. And I'm open to a different schedule of weaning them off, but I think they ought to be reduced in the second and third year for the proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Petros, did you ask?
Yes, I do. That very same logic would mean that we would stop funding the boat parade. We've been doing the boat parade for a little more than 16 years, correct? Just a couple, a couple of years more than that. And we've been supporting them for a long time as well. Yet, boat parade people come on buses, they don't stay, they don't have, you know, they may be there for a quick meal and they're gone, but most of them come and clog our streets, create police overtime, cost more than it does. So we should wean the boat parade as well. That logic is flawed. The Film Festival, in fact, from the last report that they did provide, did show nights and hotels, did provide multipliers for the restaurants, and did show a net benefit. It is something that Mr. Schwenk and his team, though, need to have a reliable source of some funding so they can go out and leverage that to the other supporters. And we've all been to the films. You see the list of supporters they have. It's not as though he's relying on the city as his sole benefactor. There are numerous others that are supporting that as well. So for three years, to give that Film Festival the opportunity to know in the future that they will be weaned, sets him up to be able to start that process and negotiate the deals he has now for that term to be able to roll them into something else. I think it's very appropriate for us, just for the remainder of this term, to fund them at that level. And I agree with Mr. Curry's, and I would call the question.
Okay, let me just clarify what you just said, but to keep, your recommendation, the motion, is to keep it at the same level, three-year, but you would be willing to look at a slight reduction at some point? Is that what you, yeah? Okay, but that's not your motion.
No, no, I keep it at three years. I support Mr. Curry's motion. And after the three--
All right, okay. I will support that. I actually was commending staff for looking at ways to allow organizations to wean themselves. But to be put on record now, I will support this in three years, at this, keep the level at the flat level, and then we've served notice to start looking at ways to reduce at the three-year mark. So, okay. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. I liked the number that staff proposed because it's trending the right way, but it's not extreme. I can already count the votes, though, so it doesn't really matter. So I support the original staff-recommended amount.
I'll make a substitute motion to go with the staff's original recommendation with the proviso that Mr. Petros had, that after these three years, that we'll start to wean them off.
Okay, but we have, we have to vote on this one first.
No, I'm sorry. I asked for a substitute motion that's been made and seconded. That substitute motion gets voted on first.
No, the original, the original motion.
No, actually, my original motion was never seconded, so Mr. Curry's is now the
I can't hear you. What?
So if, I'm just making sure I understand correctly. Your original motion that Councilmember Piattar made was never seconded, so there was no, it wasn't a valid motion. So then Keith, Councilmember Curry's motion becomes the original motion. Now he's making a substitute motion. You'd vote on the substitute motion first.
Okay, and repeat your--
Substitute motion is staff recommendation, 135,000 for the next three years.
And a second. All right, let's vote on that.
Can I just make one comment? I'm not sure Mr. Piattar was actually living in the city. The last time, we had a significant report about the impact on hotels, on our restaurants, and on our sales tax from the Film Festival. Though we have generated substantial data that shows it is an important economic generator. It brings in people internationally. It raises the profile of the city internationally, and it drives a reverberation effect of tourism down the line from what it does. But the data is quite clear and convincing and voluminous, frankly, that's been produced about the economic impact of the Film Festival.
Okay, so the motion on the table is Mr. Piattar's motion.
With councilmembers Curry, Mayor Dixon, councilmembers Petro, and Selig voting no, the motion fails 2-4.
Okay, now we'll go back to Mr. Curry's motion.
And to clarify, his motion is to raise back up to 150,000 over the staff recommendation.
And freeze it at three years, and at which time in year four, we will be reducing it. And we'll obviously have a discussion about this at that time, but we'll start trending downward at that point.
Hold on. Councilmember Duffield, we're not done yet, sir. No, sir.
We're done discussing it.
With Mayor Portemoldun and Councilmember Piattar voting no, the motion carries 4-2.
All right, now, item number 16, Mr.--
No, actually, you'd stay on 13. I apologize, Madam Mayor.
I will move the approval of the rest of item number 13.
Oh.
And we have, just staff clarification. Tara, would you--
And council, I apologize. The total on your spreadsheet is incorrect. We had an Excel formula problem. The pre-change total was 292,968, not 282, as the spreadsheet reflected. So now with the additional 15,000, I believe, we're at 307,968. I looked to Mr. Kip to confirm my math.
That seems to be it, yeah.
Is there--
So do we have budget authorization for that?
We do.
Oh, okay.
We were actually under budget when we came before you this evening.
So we're under budget still?
By about $7,000.
Don't let that change your motion.
I will second, I'll second Mr. Piattar's motion.
Mr. Curry? Oh, okay. All right.
We're just clarifying that that motion would allow us to change the budget amendment to reflect the new number instead of the 8968, but it's still all within the budget amount that you approved previously.
All right, let's call for the vote. We have a second?
Yes.
Oh, public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon and members of the council. My name again is Jim Mosher. I did want to clarify, there is an obvious difference, I think apparent to most of you, between the Film Festival and the Boat Parade. People going to the Film Festival, like those who participate in the marathon, are paying a fee for everything except a very small component of that, which is subsidized separately from this by the City Arts Commission. There are some free events, but for the most part, it's a for-pay event, which in theory should be able to generate the same hotel use and so forth on its own. But the comment I wanted to make before you move the balance of this item, I was surprised to see it on the consent calendar, because if you look at item G at the end of the recommendations that you're about to approve, it says you're approving changes to the special event support program as detailed in the staff report. But the staff report appears to be asking for you to discuss those items. And then somehow, staff is going to work out something with councilmembers Petro and Piattar. Not sure how well they're going to work that out together to make some recommendations. So it's not clear to me what you're approving. It's, what changes are you approving? Thank you.
Staff, do you want to address that question?
There were two items toward the end of the staff report in terms of changing the program. The first was to actually formalize permanently waiving the fees up to two times a year for city support groups. The two foundations have been applying for this program simply to get their permit fees waived, and staff and the manager agrees that it seems silly to charge our own support groups a fee that they then give back to us in the proceeds from their events. So, actually, Finance will bring back something in its fee schedule next month that would incorporate that recommendation for council. The second question we had was whether we should, just as you did with the film festival, work with the two council members that have been helping us with this program to look at ways to, over time, either reduce the amount that our repeat recipients receive, or perhaps time them out after so many years. And if you'd like, we can actually come back with a recommendation to councils before the program is open again next spring.
Okay, all right. Any other, bring it back, any more public comments? Seeing none, come back up here. Any more comments up here? Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Yes, okay.
The motion carries unanimously 6-0.
Mr. Duffield can return. Are you prepared to speak? Mr. Selich, item number 16.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to refer this item back to the Arts Commission for consideration for another possible location other than Civic Center Park. The park area north of the Civic Center entrance is supposed to be for the rotating sculpture exhibition and not permanent sculptures, and I don't believe this proposal was very well thought out. We already have a program for 20 sculptures, 10 rotated in and out each year. This keeps people coming back to the park because each year, there are 10 new sculptures to view. The master plan for art in the park by the Civic Center landscape architect has more than 20 locations for sculptures. However, the master plan was meant to show all possible locations for sculptures, but was not intended to put a sculpture at every location at the same time. It was expected by the architect that reasonable discretion would be used in determining the number of sculptures to place in the park. Our Civic Center Park is primarily a park and not primarily a place to exhibit sculptures. The sculptures are meant to enhance the park and not dominate it. And from what I can see, 20 is just about the right number. I think any more would be overbearing. So, I'd like to see the Arts Commission evaluate other locations and other parks or public spaces that can accommodate a sculpture of this size before we make a decision on it. I'm not opposed to the sculpture per se, but I'd like to see more consideration given to the location, and so I would move that we refer this back to the Arts Commission to make some recommendations on other possible locations.
I'll second that.
Okay, any comments up here? Mr. Piattar?
I don't necessarily have a problem with it being in the park here, and I don't have a problem referring it back to the Arts Commission, but I'd like to have the Arts Commission include its current location as far as consideration.
Sure.
Any other comments? Let's take it to the public. Any public comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it back here. So, oh, I'm so sorry, Mrs., not too fast.
Hi, my name is Carmen Smith. I'm president of the Newport Beach Arts Foundation. We're the group that has been trying for the past almost two years to give you this piece of sculpture. I do understand that the sculpture program in the park is meant to be a rotating program. We're not recommending that every piece that comes through there be considered as something that should be purchased. It was, however, the first piece that was chosen by the public as their favorite piece. We did raise the funds to buy it. Yes, we could, I'm sure, have it moved, which at a cost to the city. It has been reinstalled, however, by the artist with a more permanent base, so now it is firmly affixed. It's not going to, you know, be pushed over by some wild and crazy teenage child that decides they want to be on it instead of looking at it. And the idea that Peter Walker had picked more than 20 sites, yes, he did pick over 30 sites on the, on the property where you could put sculpture, and that is a very large piece of property. Our feeling is that this is a very special piece. It shows that the city's had a commitment to have sculpture in the park, and this is an anchor for it. And we would like very much to give it to the city. We had it completely reconstructed at the cost, not to the city, not even to us, but at the sole cost of the, of the artist. He brought another one down, he made it theirs on a very much more substantial base so that it would be here. It's not that easy to just take a piece of sculpture and say, "Oh, where do we want to put it? Let's put it, oh, I don't know, let's put it in Marine Park. Oh, no, let's put it in Castaways Park." It is a piece that was thoughtfully placed there by the committee that chose the pieces that were actually put on display. The fact that you would only be rotating out 19 this year, well, actually, you're going to rotate out more than that because one of them fell apart and it's not going to be replaced. The point is, you're going to have your 20 new sculptures. That one just is going to be like, "That was here first." That shows what the city will do when the city has the support of the community, and we're the community. And we offered to purchase this for you, we'd like you to take it. It was unanimously approved by the Arts Commission in its position, and they discussed the fact that, you know, "Are you sure we're willing to do it?" I was there, they did discuss it, and they decided, no, this is where they would leave it. It was unanimously approved by the Parks and Recs. I was at that meeting as well. They had questions about it, but they said, "No, we think this is a good enough place for it to be, and it should go here." I don't know that the program will even continue forever and ever. We don't know that it will. We don't have a Phase 3 on board right now, all right? That may be the only piece of sculpture in the park. And so, to say, "Oh, well, we can't have it here because there's no room, there's no room on a practically two-acre piece of park that goes whoop, that long." I think that, I'm prejudiced because we're the ones that are making the donation, I understand, but I do think that it would be nice if the city would consider accepting the piece. I'm not going to offer you another piece, not next year, not going to come back and say, "Well, why don't we keep another piece?" No, not going to do that, because you do want the pieces to rotate. But right now, face it, you don't even have a third phase coming on board. So, you, this may be it. So, thank you for your time. I hope you consider, reconsider, and decide to let us donate the piece and leave it where it is, because I don't know that we have the money to move it, and then that would be a cost to the city.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments on this item? All right, seeing none. I have a question of staff. Did I understand that there'll be a total of 21 pieces if this stays in the park?
As of August, the first 10 will be deinstalled, so there would be the 10 in Phase 2 remaining for another year, and then if this is approved, the permanent addition is Sphere 112. So, a total of, for, a total of 11.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Selich?
Yeah. Well, those are, those are good comments. I just don't think that it's going to hurt to refer this back to the Arts Commission, have them take another look at it. The sculpture's not going anywhere, particularly if it's got a more permanent base than it had before, so why don't we have them take another look at it, and if they come back and say it stays there, then so be it.
Okay, any other comments up here? Call for the vote? Do we have a second? We had a second, Mr. Petros. Okay, let's call for the vote.
Motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Any public comments? Come on up.
I am a resident of Newport Beach. Government grants are not free. The money comes from taxpayers. It comes from this wallet and the wallet of all the other taxpayers in this room. Grants from the Department of Housing and Urban Development will result in having to follow the new 377-page rule entitled "Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing." The rule requires communities to collect personal and private data detailing income levels, religion, color, and national origin of every single person living in every neighborhood of the community. HUD will then determine any imbalances, and if necessary, force a massive shift of people into such neighborhoods to achieve the desired balance. One example of this is that Baltimore, Maryland has been forced to spend $30 million to target affluent neighborhoods and force low-income subsidized housing into them. We may be forced into having public housing in the Newport Center neighborhood or the Big Canyon neighborhood. If you're not familiar with public housing, you can look at Cabrini-Green on Wikipedia. They have a good article about that. Residents and voters want local control of our community. Resist the lure of free taxpayer money and stop the social engineering coming from Washington, DC, and Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Please come forward.
I have some items copied from the Orange County Register for you. Who would I give that to?
Mr. City Attorney. Thank you very much. Seeing no other public comments on non-agenda items? Okay. Oral reports from City Council on Committee Activities. Mr. Petros? Mr. Currie? Mr. Selich? Mr. Piattar? Mr. Duffield? Mayor Protam? Okay, well, move into current business. Number, item number 19, Newport Heights Sewer Improvements Award of a Contract. Mr. Webb? Mr. Mark?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. Real quickly, we have an award of a project tonight. This is a prelude to our Newport Heights Alley Project. When we are going to do a permanent alley project, for instance, replacing the asphalt alleys with concrete, we usually go in and look at all utilities first to make sure we take care of any deficiencies and things we found. We've gone through Newport Heights, basically bounded by Old Newport Road over to Irvine from 15th down to Cliff, and we found some deficiencies in the sewer system, so we want to correct that ahead of time. So, we've gone out to bid with this project, we're looking to award this project tonight, and can answer any questions for you.
All right, any comments?
I'd like to move that we install the sewer and correct the sewer line after we repave the alleys. No, I'm just kidding.
With a magic wand?
Mr. Petros?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I just want to say, this day has finally come. This was a discussion that I had with my friends in the Heights back two, three years ago, and I know you've had the discussion with them before that. So, I am so pleased that we are on the threshold of doing this project and making the Heights a beautiful place back in their alleys so that the kids can play back there. This is something that they've wanted for a very long time, and I've just, I am grateful that we are right here, and with that, I will move the item.
We have a second? All right, public comment?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I just wanted to point out on page three of the staff report, the first line mentions the contract you're about to approve will involve reconstructing sewer laterals. For the, for those of you who don't know, the sewer lateral is the name for the plumbing that connects the fixtures within a house to the sewer main that's in the street. And Newport Beach is somewhat unique in taking some responsibility for that, which in most cities, that's a private matter. So, I wonder if it could be clarified if the contract is just for reconstructing the part of the sewer lateral that is within the public right-of-way of the alley, or it is extending to repairing the entire lateral?
It is, it is just the public right-of-way. We own the sewer lateral. Like I said, most cities don't, but we do from the main line all the way to the right-of-way line, so we'll just be working in the public right-of-way.
Okay, any other public comments on item number 19? Seeing none, we'll come back up. We have a motion in a second. Any other comments? Mr. Petros, are you still there? Okay, shall we vote?
Motion carries unanimously 7-0.
All right, now we move to appointments to boards and commissions, and I'll turn this over to the city clerk just to kind of walk us through what's going to happen. I also want to make one procedural order change. I would like to move up, what is it, the Civil Service Board election, move it first so it gives the candidate, it's a couple of the candidates on both the library and the civil service are on their double, so let's take, I recommend we take care of the civil service first, and then we'll proceed. So, having just said that, if you'd like to explain the process.
Council will be voting by paper ballot after we receive public comments. If there are any changes to any of the nominations, they would do that so at this time, and would need to do a request, a motion for waiver of a portion of A2 that regarding the nominations are provided two weeks before the actual appointment.
Do we do the A2 waiver for each board or commission, or is it a blanket waiver?
You can do it all at one time or individually. It's entirely up to you. You can waive it at one time if, if that's your desire.
So, do we proceed, help me here, do we go right to public comment?
I would recommend that.
Okay, all right, so the first, Civil Service Board appointments, so I ask for public comments.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, are you taking public comments individually by each job or A2?
Well, what would you, public comments for the whole item, item 20.
Thank you for clarifying, yes, for all of the appointments, yes.
Yeah, Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher, and I had a general comment about this A2 waiver business. What you have before you, I think, is, as I have said in previous council meetings and previous years, a result of a rather flawed process, I think, of the nominations going through this nominating committee, and I know that Councilman Currie said he was going to add some, some names to this, which I applaud him for doing that. But I did want to point out at a previous meeting, and unfortunately, he just left, our city manager, when you were talking, there was some discussion at an earlier meeting about Policy A6, which is the one about how things get on the council agenda, and the city manager at that time was saying, "Yes, you could waive it, but if it had been a resolution that you were waiving, it would be a different matter." And I wanted to point out that all these council policies are actually enacted by resolution, and nothing on the agenda says that you're proposing, planning to waive something, so I'm wondering how that can happen, but I do hope that names can be added in some way. But another thing that you would have to be waiving here about the Policy A2 is if you go forward and you nominated, if these two people actually got appointed to the Civil Service Board, then you don't have the required number of nominees left for the Board of Trustees, for the library. And I, I wonder why, knowing that, the nominating committee didn't provide sufficient names here. You had a big pool of candidates, and if you make these nominations to the Civil Service Board, then the two people here get nominated by default, and you're kind of stiffing a whole lot of people that would have had their names in. So... whole lot of people that would have had their names in. So I don't know what you're going to do to correct that, but I hope you do. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Which one of you would like to comment on some of those points?
Council policy A2 indicates that the nomination committee only is required to nominate two people per vacant seat, and that is what the nomination committee did. The fire and police safety associations nominated separately. The appointments committee did not make those nominations, so all the nominations were done pursuant to council policy A2.
Mr. City Attorney, did you want to say something?
Yes, it is appropriate to go ahead and waive council policy A2 if you'd like to do so.
Do we need to take a vote on that?
I don't know if, it hasn't been proposed by anybody, so it would have to be a motion to do that.
All right. Okay. Mr. Selich. Are there any more public comments? Excuse me.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon and council members. My name is Dorothy Kraus, and I'm going to speak to the Planning Commission appointments. And I want to thank the nomination committee for advancing Eric Wigan to the next step in the Planning Commission appointment process. I wholeheartedly support Mr. Wigan and do hope that you vote to reappoint him tonight. But I do wish to share my concern and surprise that the nomination committee overlooked Debbie Stevens for a Planning Commission appointment. Ms. Stevens is a longtime respected Newport Beach resident who has worked very hard over the years to make Corona del Mar the community that it is today, and when combined with her professional experience and her role on EQAC, to name only a few of her accomplishments, she stands out as a very qualified candidate. I also wish to thank Councilmember Curry for stating at the June 14 council meeting that he'd be adding Debbie Stevens' name along with Tim Stokes and Tim Brown to the list of nominees tonight. I respectfully request that you take this opportunity to reconsider the candidate list for planning commissioners, and that you vote for Ms. Stevens to fill the second Planning Commission seat. Your action will go a long way to strengthen the residents' trust and support of our city's planning process, and I can safely say that you will not regret Ms. Stevens' appointment. So thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Any more public comments on any of the nominees? Seeing none. Mr. Selich.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to suggest a name to be added to the Arts Commission appointees, so I'll make a motion to waive policy A2 first.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do you want to identify that person?
You'd have to take the vote on it first.
Oh, let's vote. Okay. Do we have to have public comment on waiving?
You already took it.
All right. Okay, let's call for the vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
I'd like to place a nomination for Arts Commission, Jennifer Van Berg. She was an applicant last year and ranked very high in the committee's rankings, and for some reason, I think there was somewhat of a miscommunication gap this year, and her application wasn't filed, but she did not respond to being considered this time, but she is interested in being on the Arts Commission. I'd like to place her name and nomination.
Okay. Any other names to be added? Mr. Pieter. Oh, you didn't have any more, Mr. Selich?
No, that was it.
All right, Mr. Pieter.
I just have a point of clarification. The Civil Service Board is made up of five people. Two of them, is it? Time up, I can't talk anymore.
Time is up?
They're made up of five people, two that are recommended by the police and fire unions, associations. That's what we're seeing here tonight. Two that are appointed directly by the city council.
Correct.
And those seats are not up.
Correct. Only the safety seats.
So is, two safety seats, so both safety seats are up at the same time?
Correct.
Okay. And these are, I think in the staff report, it said that they're placed in the order of preference by the associations?
Yes. Yes, they provide, they rank them one through five.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Curry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me first begin by stating that one of the most difficult jobs on the city council is to serve on the nominating committee, because every year we have more good candidates than we have positions to fill. And we have many people who are returning in their second term on the commission, and we generally honor those. And so every year, the nominating committee has to make difficult decisions about who's put forward and who is held over. That's why so many people come back a year after year in the nominations process. Having said that, I think this year, and I want to say, by the way, I think the candidates that were put forward for Planning Commission were excellent candidates. They were good people with good qualifications, capable of doing the job. But I think the committee either was not aware of some of the longtime community service of some people in our community, and I think it would be appropriate for us to add to the list to vote on three names. Tim Brown, who is the incumbent, who has served with distinction, he runs the Lobster Fest, that's a great fundraising vehicle in the city. Tim Stokes, who I was privileged to serve with at Oasis, he was key on the fundraising committee for the Oasis Center, a person with a deep planning background. And Debbie Stevens, whom you've heard spoken of before, who has been a longtime chair of EQAC. I think all three of these people demonstrated tremendous community service and commitment to our community. Now, you may not want to vote on them, or vote for them. Three of them, I can't vote for all three of them myself, but I think we would recognize and honor our community if we added them to the list so that they can be considered. This is precisely the process we followed when we went with Mr. Engelbrecht a year ago, so I would recommend them for nomination to the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or adds onto the list? Nope? All right. Do we need to go to public for these?
Just curious, you don't need to go back to the public for anything on this one. I'm just curious, is there, when someone places names and back on the list or on the list, are you asking for a second or a vote to put them on the list?
We can just all at one time.
I just caught, when someone seconded the first motion about Jennifer, nobody's seconded.
I did, but I'm not sure it was necessary.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Are we doing it?
The names just get put on there, it sounds like. Names are on there.
And you will be voting on Civil Service Board first.
All right. Any other comments? Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yeah, so just so that I understand the process correctly, and those who are watching, for the Civil Service Board, we vote for two, and then how does that adjust, if at all, the library trustees?
If either Robin Grant or Douglas Coulter are selected to Civil Service Board, then you will cross their names off of the Board of Library Trustees and then vote for the remaining.
And we're bifurcating, we're doing Civil Service Board first?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Correct. They indicated they would withdraw from, Robin Grant, as stated in my staff report, prefers Civil Service Board, as Douglas Coulter prefers Library Board of Trustees, but they are willing to drop from whichever one they are chosen from the list.
Okay. Ms. City Clerk, would you like to just restate where the ballots are so we can all be sure that we have them correctly? What names are on?
Okay, for Civil Service Board, ranking one through five, number one is Robin Grant, number two is Jane Delagrada, number three is Douglas Coulter, number four is Douglas Wood, and number five is Sharon Wood, and they are not related. I've been asked that.
Okay, good. So we're voting first on, and we fill them out in paper and give them to you. Okay.
Councilmember Pieter votes for Doug Coulter and Doug Wood. Councilmember Duffield, Douglas Coulter and Douglas Wood. Councilmember Curry, Robin Grant and Douglas Wood. I must clarify, they must receive four votes in order to be appointed. Councilmember Selich, Robin Grant and Sharon Wood. Councilmember Petros, Jane Delagrada and Douglas Coulter. Mayor Protem Muldoon, Robin Grant and Jane Delagrada. Mayor Dixon, Robin Grant and Jane Delagrada. So Robin Grant is appointed to Civil Service Board. We'll need to do a second vote between Jane Delagrada, Douglas Coulter, and Douglas Wood, since they all received three votes. Correct. Vote for one place.
Boy, what's he messing with? There we go.
Okay, for vote number two, Councilmember Pieter votes for Douglas Wood. Councilmember Duffield, Douglas Wood. Councilmember Selich, Douglas Wood. Councilmember Petros, Jane Delagrada. Councilmember Curry, Douglas Wood. Councilmember Muldoon, Doug Wood. And Mayor Dixon, Doug Wood. He received six votes. Jane Delagrada received one vote, so Douglas Wood is the newest appointee, including Robin Grant. So for your next votes, please, for Board of Library Trustees, cross out Robin Grant's name.
Okay, and everyone remains the same? I mean, so it's Mr. Coulter, Mr. Scheffner, Mr. Watkins, correct?
Correct, and you vote for two.
All right. No, that's Art.
Art.
Correct. Add Jennifer Van Berg on City Arts Commission, and then Planning Commission, add Tim Brown, Tim Stokes, and Debbie Stevens.
So we're voting on library next?
Voting on all of them at one time.
Oh, all of them. Oh, you're right, they're all here.
Board of Library Trustees, Building and Fire Board of Appeals, City Arts, civil, not civil service, Harbor Commission, PB and R, and Planning. Councilmember Pieter votes for Doug Coulter and Paul Watkins. Councilmember Curry votes for Doug Coulter and Paul Watkins. Councilmember Petros, David Sheffield, Scheffner, and Paul Watkins. Councilmember Selich votes for Doug Coulter and Paul Watkins. Councilmember Duffield, Doug Coulter, Paul Watkins. Mayor Protem Muldoon, David Scheffner and Paul Watkins. And Mayor Dixon, David Scheffner and Paul Watkins. With Paul Watkins receiving seven votes and Doug Coulter receiving four votes, they are both appointed to the Board of Library Trustees, and Doug Coulter will get the shorter term, which expires next year, and he will be eligible to reapply again. Now, for the Building and Fire Board of Appeals, I'm just going to look real quick, since there are only two seats and two nominees, the vote is unanimous for both. Although, wait, Councilmember Muldoon, you only voted for one? You've wanted to vote for two. So it's unanimous for both Sam Noor and Raleigh Pulaski. City Arts Commission. Councilmember Pieter votes for Michelle Bendetti and Lee Donaldson. Councilmember Curry, Michelle Bendetti and Jennifer Van Berg. Councilmember Petros, Michelle Bendetti and Jennifer Van Berg. Councilmember Selich, Michelle Bendetti, Jennifer Van Berg. Councilmember Duffield, Michelle Bendetti and Lee Donaldson. Mayor Protem Muldoon, Michelle Bendetti and Jennifer Van Berg. Mayor Dixon, Michelle Bendetti and Leslie Miller. With Michelle Bendetti receiving seven votes and Jennifer Van Berg receiving the four votes, they are both appointed to the City Arts Commission. For Harbor Commission, Councilmember Pieter, Paul Blank. Councilmember Curry, Paul Blank. Councilmember Petros, Paul Blank. Councilmember Selich, Paul Blank. Councilmember Duffield, Paul Blank. Mayor Protem Muldoon, Paul Blank. And Mayor Dixon, Paul Blank. He is reappointed to the Harbor Commission for Parks, Beaches, and Recreation. Councilmember Pieter votes for David Granoff. Councilmember Curry, Shelley Traynor. Councilmember Petros, David Granoff. Councilmember Selich, you didn't vote for one. Shelley Traynor. Councilmember Duffield, David Granoff. Mayor Protem Muldoon, David Granoff. Mayor Dixon, David Granoff. David Granoff received five votes, Shelley Traynor received two votes. David Granoff is appointed to the PB and R Commission. Now for Planning Commission, there are two seats. Councilmember Pieter, Bill Dunlap and Eric Wigan. Councilmember Curry, Eric Wigan and Tim Stokes. Councilmember Petros, Eric Wigan and Tim Brown. Councilmember Selich, Eric Wigan and Tim Brown. Councilmember Duffield, Bill Dunlap and Eric Wigan. Mayor Protem Muldoon, Bill Dunlap and Eric Wigan. And Mayor Dixon, Bill Dunlap and Eric Wigan. With Bill Dunlap receiving four votes and Eric Wigan receiving seven votes, they are the two appointed to Planning Commission.
Good. Only had to do one second ballot.
What?
Only had to do one second ballot.
All right. Let me just move over here. Let me just thank, express a sincere thank you to all the citizens who submitted their applications and applied to serve our city. Those of you know that your applications will remain active for two years. As Mr. Curry mentioned earlier, we are very fortunate to receive the interest of our citizens. A great many citizens are applying because we are talking a lot about this, so I want to encourage people to continue to make application, and it is a difficult process. We are blessed to have a large number of citizens in our community who have the interest, time, and talent to provide leadership to our city, and by serving on our boards and commissions. And I thank those whose applications were considered, and I thank our new board and commission members who will now serve the city in these important roles, so thank you very much, and look forward to continued involvement and interest by all in our city boards and commissions. Okay, moving now to item S21, Civic Center Audit Status Report. I just want to open this section and make just a brief comment. This next item is a review of the preliminary report of the Civic Center Audit. I am pleased that my colleagues had the wisdom to commission this close-out audit of the Civic Center construction project. This important, independent audit is standard business practice and obligatory of good government. To report to taxpayers, our residents, on how their money was spent to build the Civic Center is not only the right thing to do, it is our duty. I believe that there are a number of important lessons to be learned from this I believe that there are a number of important lessons to be learned from this audit. It is my intention to use this report as a roadmap for future capital projects in our city. And Mr. City Attorney.
Yeah, just briefly as an introduction, in September 2015, the city council solicited responses, so requests or qualifications to audit the Civic Center project. RW Block was chosen to actually conduct the audit, and Ms. Gibson was hired to manage that process. So this is an independent audit that wasn't directed by our office, and they basically did everything associated with that. So I'll turn things over to Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Good evening, Mayor Dixon and city council members. Thank you for the opportunity to give you this update on the status of the audit. This is a preliminary result, in that we're still finalizing information and waiting for your feedback before there's a final report. I'm Allison Gibson, I'm the Vice President of Harrison Associates, and I'm gonna be walking you through a little bit of a recap, and then taking you through the detail of the audit as we move forward. So to give you a brief outline of this evening's presentation, I'm gonna be walking through a recap, the process of the audit, what took place, what the challenges were as we went through the process, the preliminary findings, and then recommendations to move forward. The RFQ for the audit was released in September 2015. We had 12 submittals at that time, and RW Block was approved, and the contract approved November of 2015. Their contract was signed in December of 2015, and we had our kickoff meeting in January of 2016. The focus of the audit was based on the board, the council's recommendations and requests for 11 specific points of interest. Essentially looking at how the project grew in cost, time, and scope throughout the process, looking at the contracts and amendments in terms of compliance with California law, looking at compliance with industry standards, the effectiveness of the value engineering process, and also the quality of the city's management of the process. And then the, looking at the merits of construction manager at risk as a delivery method, the parking structure cost overall, the change order process, cost impacts of the change orders, analyzing the cost and time impacts, and reviewing the total project cost compared to similar works. So the audit process itself really had the intense review of all the documents that we could pull together related to the project. So they were from the city's files, from the program manager, and from the architect. And reviewing that information, RW Block was able to do a determination by reviewing all the available documentation. They did independent estimates on certain portions of the work, and compared independent analysis to the documentation. The challenges with that came in a couple of areas. Uh-oh. So as we were looking for the documentation to review the project, it was hard to pull together a complete set of documentation, in that there were some places where we couldn't get responses back, we didn't get information, or information did not exist. And so there were no records that the city maintained, so all of the information we were able to review came from the program manager, from the CM at risk, from the architect. And so pulling together that information from multiple sources is a challenge for the audit process. And this is just a timeline of when those documents were made available. So regard to the documents themselves, there are really three areas where documents were a challenge. One was there were some places where documentation just was missing, just didn't exist at all. For example, monthly reports are typically available throughout an entire project. Only one-third of the total project length monthly reports were able to be found. So two-thirds of the project, no detail of monthly reports. And monthly reports typically will give you information such as issues that are encountered month by month on a project, where the budget stands, change order issues. It's a narrative that can be used to track the development of a project. So when there's missing information related to monthly reports, it's very challenging to really follow a project all the way through and determine the course of a project. Payment applications that were provided by the CM at risk, in the background, didn't have supporting information in some cases. We don't know if the supporting information existed and we just didn't receive it, or if it never existed at all, but it wasn't in the files that were received. The second challenge was incomplete documentation. There were cases where we had documentation for many components of an issue, like a change order, but then there might be some components of that information that were not there. Whether those components had ever been produced, or whether they just never existed, is unknown, because we had to work with the information that was provided, and so the auditors were challenged by incomplete documentation. And with regard to schedule review, for example, there was minimal schedule information prepared, so the analysis of the timeline was very difficult for the auditors to review. And finally, there was conflicting documentation. Determining which version of something was the final, or the original, or the correct version of the document was difficult, because there was nothing that was stamped, signed, and everybody agreed this is the working set, that this is the final. It was some confusion between those issues. So between the city attorney's office, Harrison Associates, and RW Block, all of us were making requests to try to pull the information together, and the information that came from driver, from BCJ Architects, and from city departments pulled together everything that everyone said they had. So everything we were working with through this process, that RW Block was working with, was as a result of everyone saying, this is all we've got, this is the whole set, to make up for the fact that the city did not have its own separate file. So a little bit on the preliminary findings of those first 11 items. There were a couple areas where we found no issues as part of the audit. The form of the contracts and amendments were in line with the standard contract documents, and there may have been some issues related to procurement, we'll cover that later, but the actual documents themselves seemed fine. Construction manager at risk as a delivery method makes absolute sense in this type of project. The parking structure was delivered for a very good value, and it was, it came in a little below what the original budget was for the parking structure, so it was really well done. And the cost impact of the change orders was in line with similar projects of size and scale. We also found that the city's decision to hire a program manager was a well-advised decision. A project of the size and scope of this, having an independent expert working with the city was a great idea, to provide that expertise to deliver a project. The challenge, however, was that having the PM come from the same firm as the construction manager at risk is an inherent conflict of interest. A PM is to serve in the role of the trusted advisor for the client, and a CM at risk in the risk role has the responsibility to work independently to build the project and to also protect their profit. So they're conflicting areas, and it's kind of like the fox and hen house situation. You want them to be completely separate and independent of each other. So that was a concern in working through this process. Of the areas where the program manager should have really maintained control of the project, there were a couple areas that really stood out. The project status reporting that I mentioned earlier, where two-thirds of the reports were not there, would be something that the program manager would really be looking for to track the progress of the CM at risk. The design documents had a lot of errors, and going through and looking at how many requests for information, and how many changes to those documents were made, typically is something that could be resolved by the program manager in a constructibility review or document review. We don't see any record that that has taken place. There's a significant number of requests for information and revisions to the documents that took place during the project. Invoices that did not have the typical supporting documentation. We're receiving invoices in the program management role, the expectation is that there's going to be substantiation for all of the costs, so you can verify that everything that's being paid is substantiated by invoicing in records. There were many cases where that information was not completely provided with the payment Estimated costs appeared to have been invoiced without actual cost information associated with that. And in the CMAR subcontracts, there was 1.2 million of contingencies and allowances that were not generally incorporated into change orders with the city. So there was no actual change to the documentation between the CMAR and the city to acknowledge that $1.2 million of cost. Change order control is really critical for a program manager. That's the key to cost control, is making sure that you're really monitoring changes that take place throughout the course of a project. In the review of the change orders, unallowable costs were present in a number of the change orders that were tested, and again, it wasn't all of the change orders across the board, it was a test sample. The unallowable costs identified less than 2% of the sample's totals. Supporting documentation for material costs was typically not there. One of the important factors is over 60% of the change orders' total number, and 71% of the change order value were approved after construction was complete. The standard practice in the industry is that change orders are negotiated and approved as the project moves on, because it lessens the client's ability to leverage negotiating time and control if you wait till the end. One of the critical issues with waiting to approve change orders at the end of a job, over the course of a job, people leave the project. People have forgotten a lot of information. So you really, as a practice, want to approve and discuss, approve, and contract with change orders as they come about. It leaves no question at the end of the job what was approved, what was available to be approved. A lot of times you're doing guesswork. The result of the lack of document and cost control has resulted in potentially $1.2 million in overbilling by the CM at risk. And that's based on the sampling that we've done. So a couple issues about budget control. You asked how the project had grown in cost, time, and scope over the course of the project. One of the key factors was, at the very beginning of the job, at conceptual design, the project was out of budget. So if you look at the City Hall project with the original budget between $400 million and, I mean, $400 a square foot and $450 a square foot, the final permitted set, based on RW Block's analysis and estimate, came to $640 a square foot as the built price. It's a significant increase over the original budget. So right out of the gate, when you look at the conceptual design, and then moving on from that point, it started off at conceptual design, way over budget, and then kept going. The Parks and Site work was similar, in that, you know, immediately out the gate in conceptual design, the $15 to $20 a square foot budget was way exceeded at $56 per square foot at conceptual design, eventually tapering back down to 47, but still in excess of budget. But you can see the parking garage, from conceptual design to the final cost, came down to a very reasonable price, and below the original budget for the parking structure. One factor was the design competition that recommended an independent review of the cost estimates that were prepared for the competition, and that doesn't appear to have been done. The major scope elements of the City Hall building were exceeded at the design phase. And primarily in bold, you'll see the square footage cost. When you look at the total square footage for the building, and you look at where the final design quantities were, from 80,000 square feet to 102,000 square feet, is a 28% plus variance, and so that equals dollars over the course of a project. And then finally, the reporting of the total cost of the project and the budget was a little bit skewed by the fact that there were $3.6 million of costs that were funded from other sources, but they're actually project costs. So when you look at the two areas in bold, and the total of $3.6 million, those items came from different funding sources, which ended up being reported outside of the project. But that's $3.6 million of additional funds that were expenditures for the project. So the, based on the initial budget, the final design estimates for the City Hall and Park areas resulted in a $10.5 million increase over the budget from the design competition's construction budget. And then the unit price overruns for the construction itself of the City Hall and Park resulted in $29.3 million in extra costs. The procurement practices was another area we found a challenge. When you look at the cost evaluation from the design competition in the notes to the far right of the slide, there's a total price that each one of the firms provided a cost on for their effort, but each of the firms took a different interpretation of what was included in the cost and what wasn't. So it's very difficult to be able to compare and evaluate all the firms across the board and compare their price. Now, this is not a low bid procurement, when you're looking at the design competition, but it was a factor in the scoring, was scoring on the overall cost. And so points allotted to the cost estimate for the work would have been one of the factors, and impossible to determine apples to apples when you have apples, oranges, bananas, and The procurement of the CMAR, we were unable to determine if there was an RFQ that was issued for the construction manager at risk. And from what we've been able to find, it appears that the construction manager at risk was added on to the procurement of the program manager. So without having a separate competition for the construction manager at risk, it looks like the program management RFQ was utilized to add to the contract of the PM, the CMAR work. That is not how typically it's done in industry practice. Those are usually separate procurements, and particularly in light of the concern of the conflict of interest. There are a couple contracts that RW Block found that it seems they may have been sole-sourced. There were no RFQ information or data for two contracts, the sole source limit being 75,000. These two consultants are two areas, one contract was $1.3 million, and the other $214,000, including all the amendments. So from a procurement standpoint, they should have been fully vetted and competed to get to those contracts. The procurement of subcontractor bids raised a few concerns. Information was provided for 42 of the 62 subcontracts, but there were 20 subcontracts where procurement data and information was not available. Six of the bid packages had less than three bidders. On a project of this size, there's typically a lot of interest that's generated. Why there would be so few bidders on something of this volume is unusual. And then there was a large number of bids that had normalization values, where post-bid there was some negotiation between the CM at risk and certain subcontractors to add scope, change scope, but money was added or taken away after the bids were received. And so it's very difficult to compare the different bids when they were adjusted after they were received. Couple other comments. There was a question about value engineering, and it was very difficult to evaluate this, because there wasn't enough information on what measures were taken to value engineer, and what those results were, just didn't exist in the documentation. The cost impact of delays and plan alterations, because of the limitations on the schedules, it wasn't really determinable how the cost impacts would apply to the schedule. And then even though the project exceeded the original budget, the final cost of the project was ultimately designed, as it was ultimately designed, was a fair value. The question is, you know, how much within that fair value could have been even better had the other costs not been incurred? So recommendations would include, in preparation for future construction projects, particularly capital projects of large scale, there needs to be a comprehensive policy and procedures for how projects will be documented, what files will be maintained, how the records will be kept, and a control over those documents. The city should always have a set of files for everything, in case there's a, you know, a question that comes up later, you have your own set, and you won't have to try to pull from other entities. Determining the roles and levels of authority of different people involved in the project is really critical, so that people won't approve something beyond the scope of their level of authority. level of authority, and then it's too far down the road, people act on that approval, thinking someone does have that authority, you need to establish that at the outset. The separate oversight role of a project manager or program manager from any other project participant, i.e. from the same firm, again, that's the conflict of interest. The procurement processes within industry standards, making sure that all of the public contract code processes that are standard in the industry are followed. Contract terms for all the project participants that clearly delineate which firm is responsible for which component, and there isn't overlap or gaps between the contracts. And the contract also includes, by the way, the design documents and specifications. Managing the design firms to the budget is a big role of the program manager, as if there's a budget, the program manager is supposed to make sure that the design firm is complying with the budget. If they're not, then you take measures to roll it back, or you get authorization to change the budget through a formal process. Fiscal controls to direct the level of detail required on payment of invoices, so that every invoice that's paid has the same standard documentation to back that up. This allowing the use of estimates and allowances as a basis for payment. There should never be an allowance at the time someone's getting paid, there should be a contract in place, so it needs to be confirmed, what's the actual contract that's being paid against, not based on an estimate that was established early in the project. By the time you're building, all those estimates and guesses should be gone. Closing out change orders as they occur, again, for the reasons that were stated earlier. And then conducting periodic performance audits throughout the course of a project, is just a check-in on major building programs. Many agencies do this, Los Angeles Community College District does this, San Diego Unified School District does this, where periodically they come in and audit the status of a project or a program, to just make sure that everything is on track, so when you get to the end, the closeout audit is really clean, because you've already checked things before it gets all the way to the end of the project. And then finally, maintaining a complete set of documents on a project, so that at the end of the day, you can go to your own files and find everything you need to track the status of a project. So that's a quick summary of a lot of effort that's taken place over the past several months, and I'll open it to you for questions.
Mr. Petros.
A couple of things, thank you, that was a very thorough walk, I would have preferred a jog, but that's okay. We received a staff report on this, it says City Council Staff Report, and Mr. Harp, this was prepared by Ms. Gibson. In my short time here, this is the first time that a consultant has provided a city staff report. In the future, I would like to see staff provide the staff report and give a, I don't know what Ms. Gibson's bias may be, or maybe she has one or not, but I would like to see your opinion of this, not from the consultant. Second, I did appreciate seeing that there were 11 items that you were addressing, and in the final report, if there is some way to summarize the 11 items themselves, you in fact touched on four of them and said four or five of them were fine, but then you kind of took a departure away from the 11, if we could please continue to categorize them as such. I was surprised, you mentioned it in your presentation, but once again, in the staff report, it's missing, and it's the last sentence, the last paragraph of the RW Block Consulting that basically says, "Not forgiving the procurement issues and the documentation issues, the project came in at a fair and reasonable cost." The project came in at a fair and reasonable cost. As it relates to the actual summary, I appreciate that you are, and RW Block are, an auditing firm, looking at the accuracy and temerity of other people's information, and that's why I was surprised at the number of typos and improper words in this document. When it comes out as a final, let's clean that up. You had mentioned that there was a problem with the cost of the parks, yet on the final page, it says, "Fortunately, the 381 impact of the park issue using the budget unit cost is fairly insignificant on a project of this size." So maybe some clarification, is it significant, or is it insignificant? I am led to believe that, again, the project came in at a fair price, and when we're talking about something of this magnitude, these costs, while they are overruns, when you look at as a percentage of the total costs, are well within engineer estimates for what one would have as contingency on these. So our procurement, I have talked to Mr. Webb about this a number of times, we need to get sharper on that, and I thank you, Madam Mayor, for those, you know, the look here, can't wait till we do this on Marina Park. But I do think that if we provided a project that the community is using and is coming here frequently, and it is a fair value, then let's make sure we say that as loudly as we are also talking about the issues. Because that's all I have for now, thank you.
Mr. Curry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have some questions for Mr. Block, if you could come to the podium, please. Hennessy, okay, fine, I'm sorry, you were promoted, I think, in the introduction, it's good to see you. Mr. Hennessy, drawing your attention to the last page of the report, it begins, "The cost of the project does not appear unreasonable, with the exception of 1.234 construction manager at risk overbillings discussed above. And additionally, RWBC's independent cost and estimates for the project and the garage aspects of the project confirm that the price paid for these aspects of the project is reasonable." Is that basically the bottom line of the report?
Yes.
So the big issue from your perspective, in terms of this report, is the $1.2 million?
Yes, and I would add to that also, you know, there's some process flaws.
Process flaws, right, we understand that, but money-wise, it's 1.2 million.
Assuming, with the process flaws, it's difficult to say that with a better process, that number might have been lower, but it's, you know, after the fact, you can't really assess that.
Right.
Is what everything says today, yes.
1.2 million. So, and just to put that number in perspective, 1.2 million is about 8 tenths of 1% of the total cost of the project.
Correct.
Okay. So your report is marked draft, and walk me through the process. Typically, when you do a draft report, what happens is, as I understand it, it gets circulated, and people like Driver and the city, and Bolin-Zowinski would have a chance to look at that number and say, "Well, here's the answer to the 1.2 million dollars," and then that gets incorporated in the report, is that more or less how it goes?
That's typically the process that is followed, yes.
Right, so we're just sort of seeing this before anybody's had an opportunity to sort of react to this draft.
That is correct.
For example. So it's really sort of a work in progress, is that really, well, let me ask this, how long does it typically take for people to respond to a draft and get back to you with substantive comments in a situation like this?
I've had processes that have gone in four to six weeks, I've had processes that have gone over a year.
So if I go back and look at the schedule that was shown earlier, it looks like you presented us this draft on the 10th of June, and we put it on the agenda on the 17th of June, so that was seven days, so there was really no time at all for anybody to react to or respond to the data that you found, right?
We followed the process that was being asked.
Right, right, you gave us the draft, and then we put it on the agenda and said, "Here it is."
Correct.
Okay. There were aspects of this project, for example, the discovery that the windows in the library were flawed, and needed to be replaced as part of the process as we got into the construction. In your report, finding that aspect of the project would show up as a cost overrun, and that's how it would be characterized, is that more or less correct? It was not in the original scope, so it was...
So let me just step back.
Right.
On a normal project, when you run into a situation like that, usually the project team comes in with a budget amendment, says, "We found this additional scope, we need to add X number of dollars of funds to the project to cover those costs." We didn't, in this project, it looks like they were just drawing down the project contingency, as opposed to going back for additional budget funds.
All right, so you would necessarily differentiate that that's what caused what would be commonly characterized as an overrun, but it was things like that?
Yes, but that specific example is something that was unknown, and a lot of entities would go back and seek additional budget for that, as opposed to drawing on project contingency.
Right, here, they just drew on, but it was really, if they'd done it the other way, you'd call it an overrun.
Correct.
Right. So when we saw that halfway through this process, that the Irvine Company made a dedication of the north of San Miguel portion for the park that increased the park size by more than a third, that was not in the original design, that was not in the original aspect of the project, so that was added on to as well, so again, we would characterize that as an overrun, even though it was something that was a benefit to the community, and it was not perceived at the time the project was fit.
In the situation you just described, if, you know, adding additional scope to the project, that additional square footage, we saw the budget, we saw the estimates increase by square footage, but there was no explanation as to what the driver of that square footage increase was, whether it's an incorrect estimate on the original takeoff, or whether, it sounds like from what you've just stated, there may have been additional land added to the scope.
Right, in fact, the park grew by, you know, almost by more than a third, in terms of its land, and it required a bridge to connect the two, so those were things that you probably didn't see or didn't have the historical knowledge for, but those are things that drove these price increases, right?
Yeah, as you add quantity, typically, the unit price isn't going to change significantly, so you'll be adding budget to the project, yes.
And so, and I pick up on Mr. Petros's comments, there was a lot of effort to move this project quickly, to take advantage of the construction costs and the rising construction cost, materials cost during the time, and it was being designed sort of on the fly. So the option, as I understand it, or what you've suggested to us, would have been the way to address the concerns that you found, would be to, A, add an additional layer of oversight, that would have brought in an additional consulting firm, and B, slow the project down, basically, so that we were not doing these things sort of on the fly.
I'm not sure I'd agree with that statement.
Okay.
You had project participants that should have been doing, that could have been doing more potentially for design reviews and constructability reviews, there's not a lot of information for us to look at to tell who is doing what at that point in time, but looking at the number of design bulletins, you know, before construction even started on aspects of the project, and then the number of RFIs during construction, that'd be an indication that there were some issues with the drawings. What I think, and I'm not sure it was in the executive summary, but, and one of the other issues would be, the drawings are probably no more than 75% complete when you went out to bid on the City Hall. Going to bid with a 3% contingency on 75% construction documents is going to lead you most likely into trouble.
Well, that was my point, is that the primary issue here is that we were moving faster than our designers could design, and, well, that gave us some benefits in terms of where the market was for materials, it created the plethora of change orders that you've identified here. I mean, that's, I think, a fair analysis, right?
That is a fair analysis, and the only thing I would add to that is, you know, that would drive a higher contingency percentage, would be applicable in those estimates, to give you a true representation of what your cost exposure may be.
But then, and just to close out, thank you very much, it's very helpful, I want to go back to your, again, final sentence, we're all clear, that the project costs were not unreasonable, in your opinion, and the City Hall and Garage aspects, the cost was reasonable.
Correct, and again, the only thing I would say is, it's not to say they couldn't have been lower, but they weren't unreasonable based on the analysis that my estimator did for the project.
Okay, and then the total cost of the unidentified change orders here, the 1.2 million dollars, and they very well could be, I think you'd agree, could be identified, we simply haven't asked Driver, you know, what's the story on the million, too?
Yes, the conversation with Driver is definitely required on the 1.2. What we, I will say that we have done significant amount of cost review of CW Driver's accounts payable files, and that analysis is what drove us to that 1.2 million dollar number. It wasn't just looking at, you know, this document was missing or that document was missing, it was looking at their accounts payable register, doing some analysis, adding in certain costs that were missing, particularly the labor costs, and we could identify that from certain other documents that we had, and as well as applying the applicable markups and fees that CW Driver was due. When we came to the end of that detailed analysis, that's when we identified the 1.2 million.
Fair enough, but it's a conversation that, for this to move from being a draft, it probably should have had more review, frankly, before it came to us to look at these questions, I think.
Can't comment on that.
That's probably not your fault. Thank you very much.
Mr. Muldoon.
Ms. Gibson, did you want to respond to that last question?
The question about...
The one that was just asked of you right now, you're nodding your head, or shaking your head.
About whether the change order amount, or whether it should have come to you at this point?
That one, yeah.
Well, again, you know, when, it depends on what a client wants to see and when they want to see it, so if you want to see a draft report, and that's why we, you know, marked it draft and showed it as a draft, is to give you the progress. So a completed report, yes, we'd want to do all of the conversations and background back and forth, but to get a status check, it's very common to do a draft report as well.
I'm glad we did this, by the way, and this is why you have audits, find the errors, find the oversight, see where you can change it, and find potentially if there's been fraud or overpayments, which looks like there may be overpayments. When you conduct an audit like this, what do you use as your original sources?
Well, the first thing that you look for are the contract documents that are in place, any documentation in terms of what budgets were established, you're looking at original schedules, the guidelines that are provided by the client. So in this case, it started with the process through the design competition, and the budget that was provided through the design competition as a starting point, but then from that point, as the design develops, you're looking at what was the original scope of work, how many square feet were originally called for in the buildings, and then as it grows, you're looking at change from that original starting point. And it really is based on whatever documentation that we can obtain, which is a challenge, because the documentation wasn't completely there.
When you say it wasn't completely there, what do you mean?
Well, there were just gaps, as I talked about earlier, about incomplete documentation or documentation that was missing, who was involved in which processes, for example, there were just gaps in the project files. As we go through construction, and there's missing monthly reports, we can't tell what was happening on a project during that time period, if there were monthly reports that were prepared. We requested all of the monthly reports, and what we have is one-third of the monthly reports, so we don't know if they, you know, got lost, we don't know if they were never prepared, but there are gaps in the knowledge, so we can only go, from an audit standpoint, you can only go from the record that you receive, you know, just like if you're, you know, in appeals court, you have to go by the record of the lower court, you can't go back and interview witnesses and start all over again, you get the record, and then you go forward from the appeal. So it's similar to that in an audit, in that you're working with the data that is part of the project record, and then because you're at, you know, arm's length from it, you can just evaluate from the documentation, what is the typical process and procedure, what should you normally see, are there places where there's typically information and things are not there, or things aren't matching up, and so you're doing it from the documentation and the record of the job, and that's why the project records are so important.
Yeah, I tend to agree with you. There was, before you were, or while you were being brought on, a debate as to whether or not we should actually have an audit, and there's an infamous two feet of documents, and those two feet of documents I have here, it's printed double-sided, and I read it all, it was a lot of fun, and...
It's a short two feet.
Yeah, and there is, you know, PowerPoint presentations, city staff reports, visions, couple of spreadsheets, some notes, but we could never get the information he provided to us with these documents, could we?
We didn't ever get a full set of documentation for the job, and we reached out to all the different sources involved in the project, and everyone said, "We're giving you everything that we have," and still, there was documentation that we had gaps in the documentation. And typically, you know, I can tell you from managing large-scale projects, a project of this size, I would typically have a five drawer file cabinet full.
And how many file drawers did you have for this one?
Say we have for this.
Yeah.
Yeah?
But it's significantly less than I would have expected, particularly the way it was presented, as the sources of documents. Biggest source deficiency that I saw was when we requested copies of the payment applications, those came from the construction, they weren't available from the city. So by getting them from the construction manager, you don't know what was actually presented to the city, you don't know whether the city was presented a payment application that was this thick, or a payment... was presented a payment application that was this thick, or a payment application that was this thick with a lot of support, and whether the construction manager's just giving you, you know, their record copy of the, of the, what I'd call the cover sheets.
So the city did not have documents responsive to that request?
No, as far as I know.
Oh. But, well, the reason why, and I may have not asked that question correctly, the reason why is because this, the documents that we were told to look at for the two-feet of document information, is it's efficient to even get much of a background, let alone do a forensic audit or not audit of this size? So, you know, we directed the city attorney to obviously manage the process, that's why the staff report was written as is, because the city attorney is not an expert in this by any means. So I appreciate your hard work on the staff report. And what I would like to do is instruct our city attorney to pursue the $1.2 million, or non-forged credible documentation showing that that number can be allocate, can be shown correlation or support. And so I would like to make that a motion, combined with receiving this, receiving file for the document. And I don't know if anyone wants to amend, add a couple other things as well, but you may want to, and you may want to as well, Mayor.
Mr. Pieter, you want a comment?
Are you done, Mr. Muldoon? Uh, yes, please. So Ms. Gibson, as far as the staff report goes, I mean, we specifically asked that staff not write a report, so I have no problem with the fact that you wrote it. It's identified that you wrote it. And item number nine, you said that, a comparison of cost impacts of change orders issued in the project, similar projects, I'm sorry, number 11, where we talk about project costs as associated, as compared to other similar projects, I didn't see a comparison. I didn't see where you said, hey, here's six city halls that were built in the same timeframe across California, and here's, you know, their cost per square foot for the buildings, for the parking, for the, you know, they may not have had a park, there may not have been apples to apples, but it'd be nice if there was some sort of a comparison that we could look at. I, I understand your conclusion that it appears as though we got what we paid for. Now, we had this, you know, not even a Mercedes, we had a, you know, Ferrari, and it was sloppily put together as far as the documentation, the construction, although the end product may have ended up being a very nice product. And it's hard to tell whether or not we could have gotten a better deal, as you've identified through the process. But I would love to see a comparison to other cities, other projects. You know, I understand that we got a lot more for our money, or we got a lot more and we paid for it. So that's one thing I'd like to see in the report, and I'm going to just buzz through your report as we do it, and I'll try to be quick.
Can I just make one quick comment on that?
Sure.
One of the challenges with the comparison of similar projects is finding a similar project to this. You know, there are a lot of components and special features of this building that are unique from, you know, from looking at just city halls. There are very few city halls that have the kind of components and, and elements of this building. When you look at private buildings that may have some of the elements, or a lot of the elements here, they're not constricted by public contract code. So we will take a deeper dive, but I just want to, you know, establish some expectations that this is very unique complex, and so finding something that's comparable, we'll look for that for you.
And in some senses, I understand it's unique because of the way that it was designed. But there are a lot of other city halls that had a, you know, a civic center with an office building for the city staff, and, you know, council chambers, you know, conference rooms, things like that. Now, we have a community room, which may have made it a little different, and we have a emergency operations communication center that could also be different. But on a general per square foot, and some people surface parks, some people do parking structures, and that's going to affect the price, too. And obviously, you know, a park and things like that are going to be more of a separate analysis. The documentation, you know, I'm, I'm a licensed architect, and I've spent almost 40 years in the, in the field. And when it comes to documentation, you know, that's, those are your contracts, that's your contract documents. So we would put out bid sets, we would even go to the trouble of, you know, painting the edges of the, of the bid sets a certain color, and then when a construction set came out, we painted a different color. When a permit set came out, we painted a different color, so that we could identify on in the field, if someone was using the wrong set of drawings, we, we could catch them. You know, not only from a contract standpoint, but just being able to not screw up the building, or having to have to build something twice because you screwed it up. Was there any of that, that you could tell? And who was responsible for it?
There was, there was a distinction between different phases of the design, design documents, but there were other areas where there was a conflict between what were final documents or correct documents to be used. Derek, did you want to mention?
You know, we didn't focus a lot on the drawings, but from what we, from the documents that were provided, it seemed to be that the bulletins were very clearly identified. You know, we, I don't think that I have a copy of the original set of documents, and that may be just because, and when the information was right by the architect, we didn't ask for that original set, because it, for what we were doing, it didn't, it wouldn't have mattered that much. But we do have the record set, and we do have copies of all the bulletins, and they were all clearly identified. So I'd say
So, so the record set was the bid set that the contract was based on?
No, the record set is the final, you know, the final sealed, the as-built drawings.
As-built drawings?
Yes.
Okay, so we did have a actual project closeout, and there are actual record drawings at the end. But you have no idea what we, where we started anywhere along the way?
I have, we, like I said, we have all the bulletins. We didn't, we didn't specifically request the original documents, again, because of what we were doing, we were looking at the cost at completion.
Okay, so you, you did, you came up with this $1.2 million figure that looks like the city overpaid CW driver. And that was done based on a sampling of the change orders? You didn't actually review every eight, all 800 change orders?
No, that's not correct.
Okay.
The $1.2 million was identified by going through CW driver's accounts payable records. Has nothing to do with change orders.
So we don't know what the contract amount was, the final contract amount?
We do know what the final contract amount was.
Based on the last change order, basically?
Based on the own, the executed change orders between the owner and CW driver. We have copies of all those.
And the amount paid was 1.2 million higher?
No. No. The contract is, the GMP is a cost reimbursable, essentially a cost reimbursable contract with a cap. So the final contract value between
GMP is a guaranteed maximum price.
Correct, sorry. The final contract between the city and CW driver with all the change orders, I believe, is 116.8 million, more or less. But when we went through the accounts payable records to see the amounts that were actually paid out, when we added in CW driver's construction management, staff, labor, and applied the various markups and fees that are, that they're due, that's when we came up with the million-two shortfall.
Million-two had been paid more than?
More, yeah, so, so essentially
More than the contract value, 1.2 million paid.
So, so essentially
Make it plain.
Yeah, essentially by adding up all those costs, I think CW driver's allowable costs on the project were roughly 115.6 million, if they've been paid 116.8. And again, those are round numbers.
So these are costs that they paid to subcontractors? That does not include CW driver's fees?
No, the 115.6 does include all their fees. That's all in what, like allowable costs at the end of the day.
And, and
1.2 million was paid beyond
Okay, and so you have a, a pretty good handle that 1.2 is the, is the total amount due, or that the overage, unless they come up with some labor figures that are different than yours?
Exactly. But the labor figures we use were the labor figures directly off their payment applications. So if anything, I'd expect that number to go down potentially, but not sure. And there might be some discussion on allowable costs. What is an allowable cost, what's not allowable cost?
Okay, using your GMP, that GMP was arrived how? We had an original contract and a certain number of change orders, and so it was increased through that process?
Yeah, an original contract, you had, I believe, six amendments to that contract, and then you had two additional additions to that contract that weren't given amendment numbers. One was for their extended general conditions cost, and one was for the
Probably need to hold the mic or move the mic so the people at home can hear you better.
And one was, and the last one was for the subcontractor claims settlement. So the, so essentially, you know, we went through the original contract value, which was when you awarded the construction management services and the site work to CW driver. Then we added in all the amendments that were applicable to come up with the 116.8.
Okay, and amendments are literally, contract amendments plus the change orders are in effect amending the contract?
Exactly.
And that's how you come up with the GMP?
Exactly, to the GMP value.
You'll have to help me on the process here, too, because I wasn't here. CW driver was hired first as the program manager.
Correct.
And how did that procurement happen? Was that RFP, RFQ?
RFQ.
So out of the list of potential program managers, city staff ranked or whatever, and then somehow the council selected CW driver?
Correct.
So when they transitioned from program manager to construction manager at risk, what was that process?
Well, first of all, they, they never
We don't know.
Well, first of all, no, the program management contract overlapped the construction management contract. So they, they were first hired as the program manager, and that program manager contract ran through, I want to say it was December, December of, I get my years wrong.
But the timeline's overlapped.
They overlapped substantially.
The simple thing is, we don't know. We don't know how the CM at risk contract was procured.
Exactly.
So typically, you would have a program manager that's onboard, he brings that expertise for a project of this size and nature into the city, which we did not have in-house. And then he would shepherd you through maybe the design process, and then as you're in the early phases of the design process, you want to get construction numbers, so that you can actually do value engineering. And that's when you would bring in a construction manager, or a construction manager at risk, or it's unlikely you would have drawings suitable for bidding, so it would still be the construction manager.
The program manager could do that service, too. It just depends on whose contract it's in.
And in this, and in this case, the construction manager was not hired until, the construction manager contract was not awarded until the site work contracts, that initial site work contract. So the program manager would have been fulfilling some of the, a lot of those roles, at least up until that point.
And he would have been providing value engineering and that kind of input into the process?
It's in the contract.
I'd have to review the contract, but if it was in this contract scope, yes.
We, at what stage were the working drawings in when the site contract was released?
Site drawings were, it's hard to say, because I know there was, there was, there were at least, there were a number of addendums or bulletins to the site drawings, and I have to look at my notes to figure out exactly how many. But there were a number of, of bulletins added to the site work, but the site work was advanced. The other, the other scopes of work were not as advanced when the CM at risk was brought onboard.
So when you bring on a construction manager, when you don't have complete contract documents, how do you establish contract price?
That's why it was done in phases with the various contract amendments, I believe.
And that's not uncommon.
Yes.
And you would, and, and correct, and you would negotiate a fee. So you would say, here's how you're going, and I presume this is what happened, that CW driver said, hey, we're going to markup whatever the subcontract costs are by this percentage. We're going to provide you supervision, et cetera, general condition type overhead, and we're going to charge you these rates.
Right. That's typically how CM
And that, in effect, makes up the contract.
Right. CM at risk, typically, you negotiate an amount for a percentage of general conditions, for oversight, for, for all of that, and markup on the subs. And then you, you award contracts for the trades as you move forward, but it's a set amount, a percentage of markup on each one of those trades, to cover the general conditions, the insurance, the bonds, and the, and the CM at risk staff. And then you have the cost of the subcontracts that are underneath that, there's a markup on top of that. So that's, that's the typical process of how a CM at risk is brought onboard.
And normally, you would have a, program manager would stay involved separately, representing the owner, in our, in this case, the city, to look over the shoulder of the construction manager at risk.
Correct.
And make sure that costs are contained and contracts are issued properly and in accordance with their agreements.
Correct.
But we didn't have that. Did the program manager go away at that point?
It was the same company, so it, you know
So he didn't actually go away, we just had the same company doing it.
It's like commingling funds. It's like commingling people.
Right, you had no expertise in-house to handle it, and now you've just disincentivized your program manager to be your eyes and ears. Because he, he loses money if he protects you, he makes money if he protects his company. So, big huge flaw, you get an F on the project, nothing happens. I mean, I'm embarrassed that that's what happened. Can you explain what the difference is for everybody? What's the difference between a construction manager and a construction manager at risk?
Sure. So CM at risk is essentially like a general contractor, where they're holding the contracts with all the different trades, they're procured separately, but the, the CM at risk is actually soliciting those bids, and their insurance is kind of an umbrella over all of those trades. A CM agency, which is the owner's representative CM, typically would be working as an oversight agent for a city or entity with a general contractor under one contract underneath them. Then there's CM multiple prime, where the trades are bid separately, but the public entity owns, holds all the contracts. So each one of those trades has contracted with the city, the CM multi-prime has a contract with the city. So the CM multi-prime has a responsibility to the owner, and all of those contracts with the trades, the owner holds those contracts, not the CM.
But the CM versus CM at risk, there's really not a lot of difference, right?
There's a lot of difference between the two, because the CM at risk holds all the contracts and holds all the risk for delivering the job at the GMP, where the CM, the CM agency is typically billing on an hourly basis, and the CM multiple prime is typically working on a percentage of overall, uh, general conditions, but all those trades work independently.
So the CM situation, really, the contracts are also held by the, by the owner?
And CM multiple prime, the contracts are held by the owner. And CM at risk, the CM at risk holds all the contracts.
Okay, I, I would refer to that as CM and CM at risk, and not CM multiple prime.
Yeah.
But in, in effect
The, the owner holds the contracts.
But the risk for CW driver was, yes, he had insurance risks that he, that he had, but every subcontractor has their own insurance, and he basically just backs up their insurance. Also, every subcontractor had a contract to perform, and if they didn't perform, then they were at risk. And the, the only way that a CM would be at risk would be is if a subcontractor couldn't perform, and it costs more to get a new subcontractor in to finish the job.
Or if they make a mistake in, in pricing out something, because the risk part is they're guaranteeing that maximum price.
Well, it's only a, a problem for the CM if the, if the sub doesn't back it up, right? So if
Or if they're self-performing and they make a mistake.
Right, so as long as you've got quality subs, your risk is pretty minimal, and you're being paid a profit to, for your firm, you're being paid a profit or an amount of money for assuming that risk. And since there was no contract documents, that was floating for CW driver. They basically had, I, I, it's not a true blank check, but it's very close to it. I'll go out and bid three subcontractors, which they didn't do on every sub, but, okay, you go out and bid three, you take the lowest one, after you compare apples to apples and normalize, or however you want to look at it, and then you hire them, and then you mark it up your agreed-upon percentage. And if the number for the sub is higher, then what the estimates or the budget are, it's not CM, it's not CW driver's fault, you've got to raise the budget, right? So there isn't a guaranteed max that they have to comply that guaranteed max, especially because of the way we did it in phases, they were on with an assumed percentage, and there really was no price that they had to guarantee that they could bring it in under. It was, as they went, they established the GMP and adjusted it accordingly.
They did adjust it as the project went forward, yes.
So it, it's flawed in, from that sense. Is it unusual, I mean, normally the program manager would take care of all the documentation. He'd take care of those sets, he'd take care, he'd work with the architect, obviously, but he would, all the document sets, the bid sets, the permit sets, the construction sets, did CW driver do any of that? Or
We don't have the documentation to really show.
So we don't know that they did or they didn't do?
Yeah.
And you wouldn't expect the city, when they've hired a, a project manager like CW driver, to take care of all those sets. You would presume that the program manager would do that work for the city?
That's typically part of a program manager's contract scope.
Right, and like Marina Park, we did in-house, and our public works department has those five file drawers electronically, probably, with all that documentation. But CW driver was the paid guy for us to do that, and he didn't have it, or didn't produce it, or couldn't produce it.
One of those three.
Okay. As I go through here, so we did not have the expertise in-house, and apparently we didn't have the expertise outside, because they had divided interests. Go through this report a little bit. On Table 1, you have your total project cost summary. And your total project cost summary shows the 1.2 for the overpay. It also shows 2.399 million hard cost subtotal that was left out of the project budget. And that was explained in your report, that that was settlement cost at the end of the project. But the settlement cost, you know, typically, at the end of the project, you try to avoid having this discussion at the end of the project. You like to have it during the course, as you made clear in your presentation. But over 70% of the value of the project change orders had not been finalized by the end. So the city sat down with C.W. Driver, and maybe a lot of the subcontractors and whoever else was involved, and came up with this number of, I'll call it $2.4 million. Whether or not that's a good deal or a bad deal, those were all hard costs, those were construction costs, they're not legal fees. Yet the city put it into, to our legal budget item and didn't include it in the overall project cost. I presume that's not typical, and that's why you pointed it out?
It's, well, it depends on the nature of what was settled, whether it's something that would be settled out of a legal fund, or if it'd be settled out of a particular grant.
Could you tell by the change orders that whether they were hard costs, or whether they were damages, or some other item?
Was there a breakdown of that 2.3?
Yes, the 2.3 were hard costs.
You need to move the microphone.
The 2.3 were hard costs.
Okay, so typically, that would be shown in a construction budget, not in a legal defense budget. I don't know, Dave, if you've got any comments on that or not?
No, in the lessons learned, we included that amount in the cost of the project.
Okay, not in the original budget, but in the lessons learned.
We didn't know what it was in the original budget, it was the settlement at the end. But in the end of our reconciliation that we put in our lessons learned, we included the settlement costs as a cost of the project, not a legal cost, the cost of the project.
Okay. So they found it in the legal cost, but you're saying that it was moved from legal cost to project cost?
I've never talked, I didn't talk to these folks at all during the process.
I understand.
So I just know that the document that we provided at the end to you, we included the claims cost. We always said that was a cost of the project.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, the published cost of the project was 142.5 million, and they're showing it as 152.5 million. Is, you know, because they're adding, they're adding the 2.4 million for this, the 1.2 in the discrepancy, and the 4.8 in financing costs, which are usually part of a project cost.
I don't know, I very much respect what they came to in that with the financing costs, but remember, the financing, even though we called them the Civic Center COPs, that was a tool to do a whole bunch of projects. It was a tool to say that most of the debt would be incurred by this project, and we would then cash fund Marina Park, we would cash fund Sunset Ridge Park, we'd cash fund the other one. So I understand what is recommended, I don't know that I would agree with that.
The decision-making process at the time was using this as a vehicle to be able to fund future projects and not...
Exactly, that's why we call it the facilities financing plan. It was a plan to spread out a certain amount of debt over time.
So you might prorate the number differently than, rather than having 100%.
Exactly. And I take a little bit of an issue with, you know, they added in the IT stuff. So what we had done, and this is neither here nor there, but I'll say it anyway, we stopped buying new IT purchases probably three years before, knowing that we were going to move. So to me, these were costs we would have incurred anyway, had we not moved. And in fact, I think we saved money, because we didn't actually have to move the whole IT infrastructure. We installed the new infrastructure that, you know, arguably, we're going to buy anyway. So I hope my thinking wasn't that jaded.
And the new computers, you're saying, were in the FFNE for the project, but a lot of it would have been just normal replacement costs as a course of business.
That we stopped, we stopped doing that with furniture, obviously, and hopefully, you would have expected us to do that. Stop buying furniture, stop buying IT, stop buying AV equipment, because we're going to move to a new building, and we'll have it installed right in there. So it's fair to include it in the cost, but I don't think it's unfair the way I looked at it, that this was...
That there were other costs associated, or that you could have put them into other columns, especially AFFNE.
Exactly.
Okay. Let's see here. You guys never then reviewed the GMP for accuracy. You didn't sit there and compare the different bid sets that happened in the different phases. You didn't sit there and compare the change orders to, you know, typically, a change order, as an architect representing the owner, if a change order came in, I would look at it and say, you know, is it or is it not part of the original scope that's already in his contract? And if it wasn't, then it's, and I thought it was a legitimate change order, we'd process a change order. If it was already in the original scope, or part of it was, you wouldn't accept it. And a lot of times, contractors will, by mistake or by design, include things in change orders that were really, should have been part of the original scope, but oops, we forgot it in the bid, so let's see if we can get it through. Did you guys have any of those as part of your review? Did you take the time to go through the 800 change orders and compare them to the original contract?
A sampling of the change orders, but...
The first issue that we had was all the subcontract packages that we received from C.W. Driver's files. None of those had the request for proposal, or requests for quotation in those files, so we don't know what was actually provided to people to provide pricing on. So without that information, we can't do the type of analysis that you point out, which is proper analysis, because we don't know what to compare it to.
You're talking about backup from subcontractors that would have been part of the bid?
Because in all the GMP submissions, a fair amount of those costs were, had been competitively procured at that point in time. So there were a number of different bid packages that were put out to various subcontractors for pricing. So we would need those requests for proposal in order to evaluate, to do that analysis, because we'd have to compare it on a subcontractor-by-subcontractor basis.
Because the nature of the GMP and the phasing, where basically, whatever that bid was, became part of the GMP.
Exactly.
So you have really no way of going back, or at least no apparent documentation showing where you started, where the city started.
Exactly.
So we don't know whether the change orders are legit or not, other than what you did in your review. You looked at the change order on its face, and the sampling that you looked at showed things like allowances, and we paid on the allowances without ever backfilling with actuals, actual numbers.
In, by and large, yes.
Okay, and so the documentation, is it just plain gone, tough luck, we're never going to be able to get it, or is that something we can actually review?
We've asked, it hasn't been produced.
Okay. Table 2? I don't know, I'm not at table 2 yet.
We had one more clarification as Mr. Piotters will get it. Dan's pointing out back on the cost of issuance issue, issue, on the financing costs. We think, Derek, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we think you may have included the library COPs refinancing in that number. Remember, we refinanced library bonds, too.
Yeah, the source of the information was a spreadsheet...
Okay.
...that was provided by finance.
Okay.
So we, I took that 4.7 million, or 4.8 million directly from that spreadsheet. If some of that money's been moved around, I, you know, I didn't see that on that spreadsheet. But through the draft, through the review process, if there's something that needs to be adjusted there, you know, we strive for accuracy.
That's appreciated. It sounds like 1.3 million was our cost of issuance, 3.5 of that was the refunding of the library bonds. But thank you for being open to accepting that.
Oh, so it's way off from the 5.6. You know, I find it rather embarrassing to have a project of this magnitude and not have the documentation like you discussed. You know, even small projects that I've done, you require to put that kind of documentation together. Table 6, Tony, you'll be glad to hear. The city kind of went through a, I'll call it a beauty contest, when they selected their architect. And they selected arguably, probably, the most expensive design, but the estimate that everybody provided, it was actually the lowest estimate. In fact, it was really close to what the city's target estimate was. Did anybody ever provide any backup in any of these numbers, as far as, you know, should the city have relied on that number?
Well, if you look at Table 6, essentially, in looking at the details of that, RW Block was able to identify where there were distinctions between the different numbers. So excluding the site preparation cost would leave out a chunk of money for that quote that, in comparison to the next quote, that includes that site preparation, those numbers would be comparable.
But these are still architects, you know, we used to call them WAGs, wild-ass guesses, because it's very, very early in the fit, in the construction and the design. But there was no backup provided for this, and what backup you found, you saw, you found these distinctions of problems. It almost makes me feel like, you know, BCJ, the architect they selected, was a little bit of a, well, optimist, or bait and switch, if you're cynic. Talk to me about value engineering. How would value engineering normally be done, and how was it done on this project?
Well, one of the key things for value engineering is to look at a project that, as it's moving forward through the process, how it's tracking toward a budget. And really, it's driven by how seriously a client is adhering to a number that's set aside, or whether they're interested in saying, you know, I'm going to add budget to the project because I really want these additional things. When a project is moving away from an allocated set amount of funding, then you're looking at, okay, we need to get back in line with this particular number, how can we get there? Value engineering is not simply just cheaping out on materials, that's not what it really means. Value engineering says, let's look at all factors like life costs, let's look at the alternatives to materials that'll give you the same architectural look, but may not be as expensive. So it's looking at a lot of different factors as you move forward to achieve the same, excuse me, the same end result by analyzing components of a building, the size of an air conditioning unit, for example, where, you know, being super, super conservative, a mechanical engineer might say, well, we need a three-ton air conditioning unit. But really, you know, a two-ton will get us the cooling that we really need, we might have three days out of the year where it's really working hard, but, you know, the rest of the time, it's fine. So it's looking at, you know, can we get a little, you know, tighter on our allowances and look closer at the material selections and the options, and pricing that out without taking the design intent out of the situation, maintaining that and maintaining the quality.
And what did you see as far as what happened on this project for value engineering, if any?
Really didn't have any records of the value engineering effort. We saw references to value engineering components at different places, but none of the detail about how it was undertaken and what components fell into that. So it was one of those areas where we didn't have enough information to evaluate how the value engineering process went, and how much might have been, you know, cut from the overall anticipated cost of the project. There isn't enough detail to show that.
So it doesn't appear as though people evaluated less expensive alternatives, they just adjusted the budget and kept going, or really, they didn't even keep a good budget, so they just kept going.
Or there may have been a value engineering effort and no records.
No documentation on it.
Right.
Mr. Piottar, I do think that would be a nice thing for us to try to track down and provide to you as the finalists prepared, because I wasn't at all of the meetings, I was probably at a quarter of them, but I remember there was a pretty robust discussion of how to scale back aspects of the project. Everything from different types of art that weren't appropriate in the park, to a roof of the parking structure, to the size of the community room. So somehow, that's been lost in the documentation, and we should provide that. That's our error.
I think that'd be good to include in the report. It would, you know, you could start looking at comparisons as, you know, when we were asking about comparable city halls, there are no real comparable city halls, because we've got the top of the line of everything, from mechanical, electricals, you know, we've got windows that open automatically, depending where the sun is and what the temperature is inside and out, and the blinds go up and down automatically, and not very many other city halls have that.
That's correct.
We have floor HVAC rather than ceiling. I mean, it's like people went through a box and said, okay, which one's the most expensive one? Oh, I'll take that. So that's a little harder, that's a bigger, harder analysis to make, and I could see why your conclusion would be is, we got what we paid for at the end, because it would be very, very difficult to go back and say, gee, you could have had a building that looked as good and performed as well, but you could have gotten it for 25% less if you would have just changed these systems, value engineered this out. And morning quarterbacking is always fun, anyway. You had the, you talked about the subcontractors, and how they normalized the bids. But was there any documentation as to why they normalized them? I mean, typically, you would, you'd get a couple of bids, and they weren't apples to apples. And they said, oh, we're going to build this, and the other guy said, we're not including that, and so you add or subtract out. But the general contractor could also use that to manipulate to get the subcontractor in there that he wants. Did you have any backup or documentation that you could review to see whether or not those choices were made?
There really wasn't, there really wasn't a lot of documentation on why the normalization took place, and a lot of times, it's taking scope from one subcontractor, putting that scope in someone else's, it's very difficult to tell.
Okay, is that something...
Normalization didn't, there was nothing to look to.
So again, lack of documentation, unless we start, you know...
Yeah, all we saw were the numbers had been, you know, here's the vendor, and then here's a change in their number before the contract was awarded.
Again, a lot of these problems go back to the fact that the program manager was not really doing his job right, and helping us rather than helping C.W. Driver.
We would just like to see the records that would show that the program manager was effectuating this, and that's the part of the documentation that's really critical for us to do an analysis, is to know whether or not those efforts were done. But if the documents aren't there, we can't tell.
Right. In Table 10, you had, you come to a conclusion that there was almost $30 million in budgeted price overruns. Can you explain that? Is that all scope creep? Because you really didn't evaluate any value engineering on it.
Yeah, the significant factor here is the, you know, you're looking at 22,000 additional square feet. That's always going to be a significant change in pricing of an overall job. It isn't necessarily scope creep if, during the course of the project, you determine that there are other needs that you need in the building that need to be accommodated as part of the structure.
Yeah, scope increase, not necessarily a creep.
Correct.
Hopefully voluntarily increasing the scope. So the square footage went up 20%, or 25%, and then the cost per square foot went up from 450 to 640. So you had a double whammy. You added square footage, and then you added, you added 25% more square footage and 50% more cost.
And that's comparing, you know, original budget to the actual completed work, yes.
So the city had no records, but now we have as-built, is that actually something that Public Works or City has now, Dave? Do you know? Do we have all the closeout documents?
Just to make sure we're clear on documents, when we refer to documents, we're not just referring to plans and specifications, we're referring to payment applications, subcontractor files. It's a much broader scope than just the plans and specifications. So when we say we don't have all the documents, the bulk of the documents that we're missing are not associated with plans and specifications. They're associated with budgets, payment applications, you know, and the list is, the list is extensive.
And that list wasn't a part of your draft report? You said you'd put a couple of tables together, showing which documents you had and which ones you didn't have, but it wasn't included in here.
I guess...
I guess it would have doubled the size of the report, so...
You just had the executive summary of the report, so there was a table that did have that.
Page 28.
In the full report, or the draft full, excuse me, the draft full report.
So we did have it, it just wasn't included in what was distributed.
It's not in the executive summary.
Got it. Dave, do we have as-built drawings? Do we have good records as far as what's on the ground here?
I believe we have everything we need in terms of the as-built, yes, but I need to verify that.
And is that something MODS got or Public Works?
I think it's stored electronically, actually, but let me get, let me get back to you and make sure that that's part of the final document, too.
And you guys bring up a good point. Construction documentation isn't just plans and specs. You also have your contracts, and in this case, because everything was done in phases, and it was a GMP based on subcontractor bids, every subcontractor's contract ended up being part of the contract documents. So the list of contract documents that you have on this job is excessive.
Lots, submittal... Lots, submittals, requests for information, meeting minutes, monthly reports, that all of those records, as you progress from the earliest date to the end of the job, should paint a picture of what happened throughout the course.
Can you explain the process of RFIs, how they turn into RFQs, how they turn into change orders briefly?
Really simply, if there's something that is appearing on the drawings or specifications that the contractor needs to clarify, they just submit a request for information, that request for information goes to the program manager and to the architect for review and for response. Sometimes they turn into change orders, sometimes they're just clarifications.
Right, so the architect issues supplemental instruction, and then the contractor decides whether he wants to do a change order.
Correct.
The fact that we had 1,724 RFIs on a project this size, excessive?
Well, I think it's a reflection of the fact that the project was pushing forward into construction before 100% documents are complete, that would be a reflection of that.
And it continued to push ahead, and the architect was continually trying to make up, apparently.
It will generate a lot more questions when you don't have 100% completed design documents.
Okay, in.
It's a complex, you know, set of buildings, so.
Can you explain the difference between a change order and a field order?
Field orders typically don't involve any change in time or cost, a change order means you need to amend the contract.
The field order is more of a go ahead and do it, it's authorized, but you're not getting, necessarily get paid for it. If you want to get paid for it, the contractor would flag it and say, hey, you're going to, I'll do it, but there'll be a change order following.
You can get a field order, for example, on which color a paint, you know, paint's the same price, you know, but you can get a field order same color.
In this case, it wasn't, it wasn't just change it, and typically, they're a no-cost item.
For field orders, yes.
Try to do it that way. Thank you. You said in your report that a CMAR makes sense, knowing what you know as far as the way we did it, the fact that there was not a clear procurement between program manager and CMAR, you've already stated that having the same person do it was a bad idea. CMAR makes sense, and the reason you say that it makes sense is because of our.
For the city of this project and for the nature of what needs to happen, a construction manager at risk makes sense in terms of the delivery method, it's just the procurement and how it was procured, and the separation between the oversight and the delivery is the only question, but a CM at risk is a good delivery method, particularly for a large-scale project like.
And one that was progressive on the scale, because you could issue basically bits and pieces of the contract and know that you're going to control the cost in each situation.
Correct.
Was the architect backcharged for anything?
Not that we've seen in the files, no.
Personal admission charges?
Actually, for at least one of the final change orders, I believe there's a contribution from the architect, I'd have to go refresh my memory on the amount, but I do recall seeing something on that, maybe, I don't know if the city attorney may remember those negotiations. So I do remember seeing at least one, but I'd have to go refresh my memory on the value and what it entailed.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Curry.
I'll be brief. The gentleman from Block, if you just come back again, again, on page nine of your report, you say, "Based on the documents reviewed, it does not appear that the relationship between the program manager and the construction manager at risk negatively impacted the city in a significant manner." That's under bullet point number three in the middle.
And actually, that was language that you, there were two different drafts to the report, the initial draft and the draft for issuance, that language, I thought, had been struck from the final drawing, or from the final draft that was supposed to be issued. That was.
Did someone direct you to strike it?
That was during our internal review at RW Block, when Roy and I reviewed that, we thought it was best to let people reach their own conclusion in the totality of if they thought there was a.
But apparently, your initial conclusion was it wasn't a problem.
Well, we didn't, the initial conclusion was, we didn't see some huge issues that would say, this was clearly because they were in conflict. You know, when you look at the totality of invoice reviews and change order reviews, it would suggest that it could have been better, but I've seen things a lot worse as well, so.
So this mayor may not be the final draft that we're looking at, that we have in front of us?
And if it is, it could be, it could be something that didn't get struck in the editing process, again, because it's a draft report.
Okay.
But again, that change, and that change was a conversation between Roy Block and myself, it was not a conversation between us and the city.
And then, just very quickly, if we were to bring in somebody independent to have been a project manager, sort of hindsight is 2020, what would be the order magnitude of cost for services like that, somewhere a million bucks, million-two, somewhere like that?
The numbers that I recall, I'd have to go back and look at percentages, but what you were paying for those services didn't seem out of line.
No, no, if we'd add, if we'd taken this idea and brought in our own separate oversight reviewer, what would we have paid for that?
But you paid for that, you had two separate contracts.
Okay.
You had a program management contract, and you had a construction management at risk contract.
Right, your view was that they were the same people, we should have brought in somebody else different?
Right, you knew somebody instead of, you know, a separate entity doing the PM, you would have had the results.
It was the same, it was the same, we were pointing out the same firm.
Okay, so, and then, you reviewed the city's material that we provided you, is there anything that's inconsistent in what the city provided you in your report in terms of lessons learned and approach and all that?
I haven't, I haven't seen the full.
The two feet of paper that Mr. Muldoon referred to.
Actually, I do remember reading that very early on in the project. At the end of the day, I didn't go back and cross-reference that with the information that.
But you're not aware of anything that's inconsistent in?
No, off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from up here? I just have a couple of questions and kind of a final comment, just to clarify, so to just follow up on your comment, both of you, that we did pay for as part of the contract, the project program manager's responsibilities, right? We paid for that as well as the CMAR, correct?
Correct.
We didn't get our money's worth, right? If you didn't, if this person didn't do all the documentation, all the project, I mean, I guess it's more of a rhetorical question. This is more of a yes or no question, would there be any value for us to do a slightly deeper dive on change order, on the change orders, not all 800, but 10%, or do you think we've gotten a good reflection of, and there's nothing more just to obtain from looking at change orders? I'm just looking, is there any more money to collect anywhere?
I think that, you know, a deeper dive would really depend on what the city would like to do. If the city is looking to say, we want to get back, you know, every dollar that might be in question, then you'd have to do a deeper dive. If you want to get an overview of where the issues were and the potential there, I think you're there with what you have.
So wouldn't add that much, is what you're saying?
No, I think, you know, you wouldn't gain much out of, you know, that additional expenditure to do that, when you hit, that sampling really kind of tells you what you need to do, it's where do you go from here, which is really, which is really the question for the city to answer.
Wasn't there on something that, anyway, we paid more than, there are instances where we paid more than what the invoice was or what the estimate was?
Those were the comments that Derek was making about the accounts receivable, payable, and the invoices. So the payment applications should match up, when you add all the payment applications up and everything that they've built.
You think that's a significant issue that would require us to do deep dive if we paid more than we were supposed to?
I think that's a significant issue, is paying more than.
Right.
Yes.
What, do you think there's something to go after there to recover?
Well, the 1.2 million, the question is, if there's documentation or justification for that?
So that would cover?
We don't have that, so maybe it exists out there, but we've been told we've received everything.
Well, to that point, I mean, you obviously have extensive experience dealing with construction companies, and CW Driver was a major contractor.
Yes, they.
It seems to me, anyway, unusual that their files were not as complete, I mean, I mean, they're really in the business of maintaining documentation extensive for the project, typical project that you describe in terms of how the accountability and reporting, anyway, that's a surprise to me. All right, it's very late, I know we all want to move forward, let me just make a few comments. First of all, thank you both, thank you to Harrison Associates and RW Block for the preliminary report, we know it's a preliminary report, and your report has identified clear problems with the city's handling of this project, I think that's clear, and there were many oversights and irregularities that could have contributed to higher costs, lack of proper professional oversight on both, every, all parties, lack of proper cost control and accounting oversight by the project manager, lack of a third-party cost estimator, lack of procedural checks and balances, the use of the same company as lead contractor and project manager, the large number in complete documentation and delayed processing of change orders and irregularities and poor documentation in subcontractor bidding and billing, so all of this is ripe for opportunity for improvement. We know that the city hall building exceeded the design basis cost, unit basis cost, we know that. Meanwhile, as the project progressed, reporting became less frequent and more inconsistent, so it is what it is. I'm not here to play a blame game, the past is past, and what is done is done, I'm focused now, as I was at the beginning, that led to commissioning this audit, that there are lessons to be learned from any project like this, and I think that there are several lessons. Clearly, going forward, the city needs to put in place a comprehensive set of policies for the management of large and small capital projects, and then make sure that we, ensure that we meet industry standards for cost control, accounting, reporting, and procedural checks and balances on all approvals related to design, and finally, a contingency budget reserve, and also, just a budget. Did you ever find an actual budget? There was a budget? Was it, okay. And I would like to move that we move expeditiously, as Mayor Protem suggested, to recover the 1.2 million in apparent overpayments. So I'd like to put these last two points in the form of a recommended future action based upon receipt of the final report or sooner, to direct staff to prepare a set of policies that address the concerns and points in this audit, as suggested by the auditors, and that the city attorney's office review the apparent overpayments, identify and seek appropriate remedy or reimbursement. Let me be clear, this is not about the size of the civic center or its component parts, it's not the design, it's not the add-ons that we're addressing, I want, I spend a great deal, I spend most every day here, part of most every day, I find it highly functional, it's convenient parking, I'm glad to know the parking lot was appropriately costed, access to the library, and most importantly, I see it as a growing and enjoyable community gatherings place, so that's where I am, it's here, we enjoy it, it's well-built, it's expensive, but it is what it is. So I'm looking for increased transparency, fiscal stewardship, budgeting principles and accountability, financial controls, budgetary controls, contingency planning, I mean, this is standard operating procedure, but I'm just saying this for the record, and my objective in pushing for this audit has been satisfied, I hope the audit would return mostly positive comments, and it has, and we can move on, and we can allow you folks to finalize your recommendations before memories fade and documents even disappear more fully. One thing I do want to end with, I encourage the public, the few members who have lasted here tonight and those who are maybe still be listening on television, to read this preliminary report, and when it's final, to again, read that, I think it's really informative that the public understand that we, this project can be improved going forward on subsequent projects, and let the community see for itself what this audit was all about, my words and opinions are just that, I recommend that everybody read these reports, and they will have the facts themselves. And as your elected representative and your mayor, my job, our job is to protect the taxpayers of Newport Beach, and we show respect for our residents by treating the city's budget as your wallet, and we must be careful with every dollar spent, leave no stone unturned when identifying lapses in financial and budgetary controls. And again, I thank the council for supporting this audit, and believe when it is completed, we will have an opportunity to consider and adopt new policies and procedures to improve our financial management and budgetary processes for future capital projects. Our standard should be to do what's best for the people in Newport Beach, I often say, we are here to do the right thing, and this preliminary report does just that, and I appreciate your good work, I also appreciate staffs working to support the documentation and how you worked independently, and I think that is very positive. And so if there's a motion, let's summarize where.
Any public comment, sorry.
Excuse me? Anybody would like to make a public comment?
You can still make the motion.
I could, can I still make the motion, just to?
Just make the motion.
Yeah, so to adopt this preliminary report, number one, I was going to expand the examination of change orders, but I don't think we need to do that, and direct the consultants RW Block and Harrison Associates to complete their final report as quickly as possible. Are there any others suggested?
Have city attorney, yeah.
And that, well, I was, that's where you.
The amendment I'd like to offer is also to have city attorney seek the 1.2 million in unaccounted for payments.
How can you adopt a preliminary document? Why don't we allow the consultant to finish their work?
Well, I'm recommending that we continue to do that, sure, that's.
But you don't adopt a preliminary document, why don't we direct?
Your script is wrong.
Yeah, receive and file, and then allow them the time necessary to complete their work.
Okay, I accept that, okay, thank you, Mr. Petros, but I also would like to support Mr. Muldoon's motion to start expediting the process for that, I don't see any reason to delay on that.
Well, before we go sending our lawyers off to collect imaginary money that we think people owe us, what we probably ought to do is give CW Driver the opportunity and our staff the opportunity to react to the draft that we got, you know, five or six days ago, which apparently may or may not be the actual draft that we're supposed to be looking at, and answer some of these questions before we decide that, you know, a million-two has been lost, which, by the way, is eight tenths of 1% of the project cost.
Point of order, do we have a second on that motion? Mr. Harp, is that correct?
I don't believe we had, you offered an amendment to it.
Okay, I offered the amendment, she proposed, offered amendment, do we need a second?
Yes.
So we need a second?
Second.
All right, so essentially, the motion is that we continue to proceed, finalize, finalize the numbers, and to the extent possible, if we could start proceeding and identifying the correct and accurate number, all right, that's the motion on table, let's vote.
Hold it, I've got a comment, and public hasn't commented.
I thought we did that, excuse me, does it?
I'm first in the queue.
I apologize, Mr. Curry.
Well, I, thank you, I got most of my comments in there, but we should, again, let's just let staff and let the driver and let the rest of the world who's affected by this, that's what the consultant wanted to do in the first place, have the opportunity to react in this, I think we'd find that the issues that they have identified may very well be addressed beforehand, number one.
Why do you think that?
Because that's, I think if you ask the consultant, he'll tell you that's normally the process, they take four months, they write a draft report, people who are impacted by the data in the report react and provide additional information, so we'll see what happens, we've already seen.
Well, they also said that Mr. Driver.
I have the floor, Madam Mayor.
All right.
You've already heard Mr. Kiff respond to three or four different points on why costs were the way they were, that the consultant was unaware of or didn't have the answer to, because Mr. Kiff didn't have the opportunity to respond to the information in the report. I mean, you're trying to drive this train because this is really a political deal.
Oh, all right, all right, you're, let's keep moving forward.
But let's just, let's just take the draft report, make it a final report, let the people who are, who have comments made about them respond to them, and then we can determine a thoughtful course of action of where to go, as opposed to a political charade.
I object to those comments, all right, well, let's step back, where do we stand? Was that an alternate motion? Or what was that?
I think we should receive and file. Back to us, to finalize the report and respond to the.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that.
Madam Mayor.
This is Mr. Pieter, oh, sorry, yeah.
One of the other things I think that came up that I would love to see pursued, too, is you talked about not drilling down on change orders, even if you don't go and evaluate the change orders compared to the original contract documents, because, you know, for some reason, the company who was paid to do all the documentation doesn't have the documentation, oh, and they're also the ones that we're targeting evidently, but a lot of the change orders by, according to this report, were paid based on estimates and not actual. I guarantee you that if the actual had come in higher than the estimate, there would have been documentation. I suspect that there was a lot of money left on the table there because we paid on estimates rather than actual, and I think at the very least, we ought to drill down on those change orders that basically were not properly processed because they didn't include actual documentation and actual costs.
Are you suggesting a certain percentage, or all 800?
Sorry, before, Derek was kind of, I don't know, shaking your head at what you were saying, I don't know if that's worth a conversation.
But, please speak if you want to.
The change orders that we reviewed, for the most part, had, there were a few missing change order requests, which would, and usually, they bundle a number of change order requests into a larger change order, but by and large, the change orders that were provided had supporting. But by and large, the change orders that were provided had supporting documentation. Some of them were based on actual costs, some of those were based on forward price estimates that were reviewed by the project staff, you know, appeared to be reviewed by the project staff throughout the course of the work. And forward pricing change orders is a standard practice in the industry, you know, so therefore there's some risk transfer in theory when that process is used. We didn't see, or I should say, I didn't see any change orders where support, you know, that weren't missing support, that didn't, that appeared to be outlandish based on my initial review. Again, we don't have the original contract documents that those were bid off to compare them to, but, you know, the unallowable costs that we pointed out, you know, roughly 2% of the sample size, would take into account things that we thought may or may not be questionable. Does that make sense?
Let me try and clarify it. So there were some change orders, you only sampled 2% of them?
No, no, we sampled, my memory is failing me, but we sampled a significant portion of the dollar value of change orders.
Okay, so you sampled the change orders and you found that some of them were executed based on estimates?
Yes.
But follow-up change orders adjusted those because of actual numbers?
Those would have been agreed to at the forward price numbers, so that we wouldn't have expected to see a true-up because they were, they were forward priced and agreed to at that forward price.
Explain forward price.
So if the work hasn't been performed and they're asking you to price the work, the contractor will come in and provide a price before the work...
It's a bid.
It's, well, it's not really a bid because it's, because it's a sole, you know, it's...
It's not competitive.
Yeah, it's not competitive, but they're preparing an estimate in accordance with the contractual guidance around how you prepare change orders or change order estimates, and then those are reviewed by the project staff. That appeared to be, that appeared to occur on this project. Now, because of the timing of the final execution of some of the change order requests, some of that work that may have been forward priced and agreed to may or may not, you know, have been done at that point in time. We can't tell because we don't have...
Which means you couldn't have argued or negotiated, you just had to pay. But you didn't see anything that was actually done on an estimate and then paid on an estimate but not adjusted later?
Exactly. It was things that, I'm not sure that we saw anything that needed to be trued up, because we saw the allowances were trued up at the end. So I'm not sure that we saw anything that we thought needed to be trued up that wasn't.
So really, the only thing you could do to go down deeper on the change order would be is if you actually got the documentation that you had, where you could compare original pricing to change orders to see whether scope had been doubled up?
Correct.
And I don't know, is that something you could subpoena CW Driver for, or is that something that we're just out of luck?
Well, CW Driver was, eventually, they were fairly willing to give us the documents that were requested. They said they gave us everything. If we wanted more documentation, I would assume they would provide it like they did the other documentation.
But they didn't give, they didn't get all the documentation they needed to be able to do this kind of evaluation?
Well, we got all the documentation that CW Driver said they had, but I think what you're asking for, I'm not sure if we ever asked for that specific documentation.
We asked for complete change order files, and that would...
It would be in there.
Yeah, and also the subcontractor bidding award files, the original bid document should have been in there, so we would have expected to see those.
Yeah, so CW Driver says they've given us everything that they have, so I don't know...
So the guys that we paid to keep the documentation straight evidently didn't, but we're out of luck. Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so just to restate, based on what Mr. City Attorney just said, is that if CW Driver has given us everything in their files, is that correct? Okay, so going back to the original motion of commencing, going after with the actions, the steps necessary to secure return of the 1.2 million dollars, CW Driver had the opportunity to submit all the documents they had. If they still have documents that they are withholding, they can certainly provide them to us in the course of that action. I just would like to start the steps on that, and if they want to provide substantiated evidence to reduce that amount, then they certainly would do that in the course of that action. So let me restate, I do want to adopt this preliminary report, point number one. I do want to certainly move to complete it expeditiously. This is a preliminary report, and I have the floor, excuse me. And then direct our city attorney and our, to start the process to justify or substantiate the return of that 1.2 million dollars. That is my motion. Do I have a second? Okay, let's have public comment.
Mayor Dixon, members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. On page 28 of the not always reliable minutes from your last council meeting, the city attorney is quoted as saying the council would be seeing the audit on September 9th, 2016.
September 9th?
September 9th, so I was a little surprised to see it on this agenda. So is what we're seeing on September 9th going to be this report? Is that, that's still the date?
That must have been a mistake in the minutes.
I think you said July 9th, but anyway.
Well, I said the not always reliable minutes. Yes. And I'm dimly coming to the understanding that what we're seeing tonight is the executive summary, so at some later date, we're going to see the body. I'm a little confused how you can have the summary of the body of the report, it has not been completed yet, but I will be interested to see the report when we do it, when we do see that. Speaking of what is done is done, I don't know how this is related to the 1.2 million dollars, but I do recall there was a council meeting at some point about closing costs, and there was some dispute about whether the bills coming from CW Driver were correct or not. And the council members who were sitting there at the time, I vaguely recall it was at the old council chamber, thought the proper, the best course for the city was to just pay that rather than litigating, because it would probably be more expensive to litigate than to just pay the bill that was presented. That may factor into this in some way. As to the preliminary report that we're seeing here, I did want to call your attention to a footnote that I saw on page 21-11. Mr. Hennessy and Mr. Block had these 11 points that Councilman Petros said they were supposed to pursue, and he was hoping to see the results from them, but I noticed there's a footnote, the last one down here at the bottom, footnote 6. One of the things they were asked to do is to assess whether the contracts and the amendments thereto complied with California law as well as industry standards, and the footnote says that they were not able to complete that task because the laws that they were to check compliance with are not identified. Now, I don't think that's up to CW Driver to identify the laws that we want verified, so I'm wondering why the city attorney managing this didn't provide that information to them. Another thing I'm curious about, we've heard repeatedly about the program manager and the construction manager at-risk and how they interact and approve things and interact with the council. I have not heard mentioned here at all, and I do hope when we see the body of all of these error bookmark not identified yet, when we see the body of the report, it's going to finally tell the public what role the city council's own supposedly Brown Act immune ad hoc building committee had in all of this.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do you want to just make a comment on the laws, California laws or the state laws, just briefly?
I'm pretty sure that Ms. Gibson said that they did that part of the review in her summary. I'm not sure why the footnote's there, but I'd be happy to talk to them about that so it gets clarified in the final document.
Okay, any more public comments? Seeing none? Bring it back?
Madam Mayor, I will not be supporting this motion. I do not find it appropriate to be adopting a draft executive summary of a preliminary study we haven't seen. I think it would be more mature and appropriate for us to direct the consultant, as I am, and when I put together drafts, I expect to get comments back on the draft, direct the consultant to complete their work, and whatever their work is as completed, which will have the benefit of many of the questions that have been asked here, we will see a full and complete report, not an executive summary. To adopt an executive summary of a report we haven't seen when all of the 11 items haven't been addressed yet and we even hear from the consultant that there may be sentences that they should have taken out but aren't in, seems foolish. So I will not be supporting the motion.
All right, thank you. All right, it's formal process to adopt, to receive, but formally to do that, so it is put into the record formally and then the actions that we said. So let's do the vote. Oh, Mr. Selig, did you want to say something? All right.
Are we also adopting the erroneous footnote in the sentence that wasn't supposed to be there?
I guess. It's a preliminary report. Things get amended when they become final. This is a report that was submitted to us. Let's vote.
With council members Curry, Petros, and Selig voting no, the motion carries 4-3.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider item number 28 from our July 14th meeting. That was the Irvine Avenue pavement and median rehabilitation project.
From the meeting of June 14th.
June 24th, or June 14th.
Oh, June 14th, I'm sorry. June 14th.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yes, you need to vote.
Okay, so that's your motion, anyone?
Is there a second?
I think I need a second.
Has to be seconded by somebody from the prevailing side?
No, it wasn't.
It was a 4-3 vote.
I don't hear a second.
I think only the maker needs to be on the prevailing side.
That's what Kevin just said. He thinks it's just...
That's my recollection.
What? I can't hear you.
Technically, the city clerk's supposed to be the parliamentary officer, so I'll just kick it to her.
You know, I got a feeling, this is something that's important to Tony on his way out, so I'll just second it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have a public comment on this? Do we do that? No? Okay, all right, let's vote.
All we're voting on is whether we want to reconsider it at our next meeting.
Correct, not the item itself.
Yes.
And is everybody clear as far as which item this is?
It's item 28, which is the Irvine Avenue pavement and median rehab. Is that the type of item?
It was a contract with a bidder.
Award of contract.
Right, and we approved it without the landscaping, as I recall.
You are amending the landscaping, so I believe the scope of work was changed.
Total...
And it was not approved. It was rejected due to, potentially rejected, because the scope has changed due to the landscape.
So it's already coming back to us?
Yes, so let's vote.
Councilmember Duffield? Edith, with councilmember Pieter voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all for your endurance.